Good evening, everyone. Welcome to tonight's City Council Regular Meeting for Monday, July 17th. We have two study session items to start off the night. Up first, the Director of Public Works, Victor Rochelle, Deputy Director of Public Works, Tim Hoos, and Concrete Utilities Street Maintenance Manager, Phil Neal, with Deputy City Manager, Tim Dodd, to discuss the street plan overview.
Evening, Mayor and Council. I'm just gonna really quickly do an overview, and I'm gonna turn it over to the team that's behind me. So what you're gonna see tonight is a plan that is organic and one that really was driven by the team itself. So this process started a few months ago by doing a SWOT analysis, strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and strengths analysis to, probably got that wrong, strengths, opportunities, weaknesses, and threats, excuse me, analysis about the street program. We looked at some data from past years and also developed some goals and ideas on how to move the program forward. And so, just like it was developed organically by the team, the team tonight is going to present this. So I'm gonna turn it over to Public Works Director Victor Rochelle, who will kick it off, and then the rest of his team will go through it as well. Thank you.
Hi, Council. Thank you for letting me come and kinda giving an overview of the Street Department. I got a few of the guys here today. Got Jerry Weir, 16 years with the City of Inglewood, John Patterson, who's actually stormwater, but we've been working collaboratively since we're shorthanded and trying to get things accomplished. And Tyler Colte is the lead worker for the Street Department. Just a general overview of the Streets Division. We are responsible for repairing potholes, utility street cuts, and other various issues with the asphalt. We proactively drive the streets looking for potholes. As we know, there's quite a few out there now. We conduct annual median cleaning, perform crack seal and other related maintenance programs, maintain and repair alleyways, and do a citywide street sweeping program. Some challenges we faced the past year: staffing levels and assignments. We have aging infrastructure, funding limitations, and some equipment that's also aging and not as reliable or made for the actual purpose we're using it. We have complex process and procedures, the way we go about getting repairs done. Communication between the Streets Maintenance Division and other departments, working collaboratively with them on projects, and also some challenges of access to materials. And I will turn it over to Victor.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. So I'm gonna cover the Streets Program Overview section of the presentation here tonight. So our philosophy, you've probably seen this before, but completing the right repair on the right road at the right time. Overview of our street network. So we have a little over 30, and this is center lane miles, of arterial streets, and then we have approximately 90 center lane miles of collector and local streets on our network. This graphic here represents the preventative maintenance versus reconstruction approach. The red lines on the graph are reconstruction, and what you'll see is, on the left-hand side, everything starts at 100%. And then as you move to the right, the reconstruction at approximately 20 years is what's anticipated, then you jump back up. This is a very expensive model to follow, reconstruction only. We follow the blue model, which is the preventative maintenance, and what we're able to do with that is extend the pavement life approximately 35 years before reconstruction is needed of the pavement. So some of our methodology here, programs, we have a routine maintenance program, we have preventative maintenance, and then we have corrective maintenance. As you're probably aware, we have a five-year cycle for local and collector roadways, and then we have a separate multi-year pattern plan that we do for arterial streets such as Broadway. Covering routine maintenance. Routine is planned and is cyclical, and we try and be reactive to some problems out there, identify deficiencies, et cetera. This routine maintenance does not extend the service life of the pavement. For 2023, we have approximately $150,000 allocated. And just some quick examples are crack sealing, pothole patching, leveling low spots. For preventative maintenance, this is work that's done to protect the wear surface of the asphalt, and this does extend the life of the pavement, but doesn't add any structural strength to the pavement section. And this is applied to pavement that's in good to fair condition to bring it back up. We can't save pavement that's gone, is too far gone in the cycle. For 2023, we have approximately $400,000 allocated for preventative maintenance. Some examples there are slurry seal, chip seal, and micro-surfacing. Last is corrective, and this is reactive. This is basically resurfacing the entire top level of the asphalt. You got mill overlay, full-depth reclamation, and hot mix overlay. This is obviously one of the most expensive things that we do. For the 2023 budget, we have a little over $4.4 million allocated to this effort. And to drive it home, we have to slide twice. So in summary, you know, we are looking at correcting street segments before they become so deteriorated that they require that more expensive strategy. And again, that's back to treating the right road at the right time with the right treatment. We're looking to use the most cost-effective use of our funds to stretch it out over the city and get the most bang for our buck. This does allow improved coordination with public and private utilities that are in the areas that we're working, and also allows for savings and mobilization if we're doing it in specific areas on a rotation, and then also allows better predictability based on the program. And then, real quick summary, this is our zoning for pavement. It's broken into five zones, and you can see in the chart there kinda how we have it broken off, what zone gets what treatment on that five-year cycle. So each zone receives routine preventative and corrective maintenance once every five years. Of course, if there's a special circumstance, we're on top of that, trying to evaluate and address if needed. And I should note that not every street receives a treatment every year. And with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Tim Hoos.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I'm gonna just briefly go over the work we're gonna do in 2023 on these different zones. We'll go over the routine preventative and corrective here. So for 23, we've got Zone 5 is our corrective maintenance zone. That's the area west of Santa Fe, the north and south parts of town west of Santa Fe. And then the preventive maintenance is in Zone 1, kinda northeast area, and then the routine maintenance is in Zone 2 there, kinda the red southwest part of the city. So this slide here shows the slurry seal work we're going to be doing. This actually shows the crack seal and the slurry seal here in Zone 1. We had to have the contractor do a little bit of the crack seal this year to get it all done. We had a little bit more than the crew could handle, so we ended up contracting a little bit of that out. But then the, so the dash lines are all the crack seal, and the red is all the stuff that's getting slurry seal in that northeast part of the town this year. So that work is underway. The crack seal's all done, and the patching's been done up there, and now we're just waiting for the slurry seal should happen here in August. The contractors told us they should be available early August to get the slurry seal done on all those streets for us. And if you see there, we did increase quite a bit on the slurry seal from last year. We're basically doing double the amount of slurry seal that we did last year, so we've definitely stepped that up. That's definitely a cost-preventative way to get a lot more life out of the streets. So we tried to increase the funding on that just a little bit to make sure the streets last a little bit longer. So the Zone 5 is the mill and overlay zone this year, and the stuff in red there is everything that's getting the milled off and repaved, so that'll be resurfaced with new asphalt, the top two inches. So we've also got, we've got the residential, the industrial streets there, as well as some of the collector and arterial streets there, that we've got two sections of Broadway, the north part of Broadway from Yale down to Dartmouth. And then we've also got the south part of Broadway, south of Bellevue there, we're gonna finish up. And then we've got Floyd Avenue between Broadway and Inca, as well as Dartmouth there, west of the Bridge Project there, west of the Platte River. So those are our collector arterial streets as well this year that we're gonna do. And we are still working with the contractor. If you recall, we've got the good bridge prices from the contractor, and we're working with him to add some more streets. We do think we can do a pretty good chunk of Broadway with the additional money this year, so we're hoping sometime in, probably the first meeting in August, we'll come back to you with a proposed change order to add some more work to get more Broadway done, as well as a few more of the streets there in Zone 5 we've identified that need some work as well. So it's nice to have that extra money. We can do a little bit more work than we expected to be able to do this year. So with that, I'll turn it over to Phil there to talk a little more about the vision and goals.
And I apologize for not introducing myself last time. Phil Neal, the Concrete Utility and Pavement Maintenance Program Manager. Talk a little bit of vision and goals. The City of Inglewood Streets Maintenance Vision, collaborating with, through collaboration, efficiency, and teamwork and partnership, will focus on proactively, innovatively, and safely maintaining the rights and way of the City of Inglewood. The Streets Division strives to be more proactive, increasing the percentage of service requests entered from staff and decreasing the number entered by the public. Some of the goals we've come up with is effective, efficient, and available equipment to perform our job, a strong engaged team, deliberate, meaningful collaborations, safe working environment, meaning and proactive community engagement, transparent and efficient customer service, efficient and effective processes, available and usable materials. Efficient, effective, efficient, and available equipment. Equipment that is purchased with employee input that is available, easy to use, and meets the needs of the Street Division and the city. We're gonna create a process to ensure division team members are involved in reviewing equipment before it's purchased. If deemed necessary, get some vendor training when we purchase a piece of equipment. Partner with the Fleet Division on a process of regular updates on equipment status, repairs that are being made, what we need back, when we need it back fast to continue our work. Create an online form to proactively inform the Fleet Division of maintenance needs and breakdowns, and partner with the Fleet Division to actively decommission old equipment so we can use some of that money from auctions to purchase new equipment. And with that, I'll let Tyler Colte present a few slides.
Good evening, Council. My name is Tyler Colte. I'm the Lead Equipment Operator for the Street Department. For a strong, engaged team, we partnered with Communications and Human Resources to develop a brochure specific to the recruitment for streets, set up and structure weekly team check-in meetings, and develop a training program to ensure that team members are exposed to all pieces of equipment. For deliberate, deliberate, meaningful collaboration, we developed a snow plan that includes partnerships with other divisions, cross-trained with these other divisions, and each spring we'll be holding a meeting with Engineering Division and Construction Inspection Divisions to discuss upcoming projects, and invite each team member of the Engineering Department to conduct at least one ride along with a Street Department employee. With that being continued, improved collaboration with Traffic Division, implementing processes for signages and road projects, reached out to other cities to collaborate with Sheridan and Cherry Hills on additional projects, and review all street maintenance functions and determine which should be done internally and which one should be contracted out. A safe working environment. We'll hold tailgate talks for major projects to discuss safety issues, review safety courses by SERSA, and each team member will participate in at least one SERSA safety course each year, and partner with Communication Department on issues regarding safety on the city's right of ways. And a safe working environment, safe use guide for each piece of equipment developed, and then developing to implement a protocol for traffic control during projects, and proactively offer trainings to other divisions from CDOT-certified employees. Thank you, City Council, and I'll turn it back over to Phil Neal.
Next topic is meaningful and proactive community engagement. Engage members of the Inglewood community in maintaining clean and safe roads. We're planning to participate in at least two of City Inglewood-sponsored events, like the Celebrate Inglewood. Reach out to Inglewood Public Schools. We think it'd be nice to visit those schools, take some equipment, and every time you're by a school, you see kids really enjoy seeing the streets go out there working. Partner with Communications Department to publish at least three videos a year highlighting the work that we do. Partner with the Communications Department to proactively share information about road projects and initiatives. Partner with the Communications Department, IT Department, to post more information on the city's website, kind of a real-time, up-to-date map to show where these projects are going on. Participate at least one community volunteer opportunity each year as a team. Transparent and efficient customer service. Ensure that all requests from the public are responded to effectively, timely, and efficiently. We plan to develop an internal process relative to closing and finalizing queue alerts. Write a common response for frequent IngoFix request. Develop a business card with phone numbers and information of who people can contact for different issues. Create a tip sheet with call numbers and information on other departments to answer basic questions, and implement automatic surveys upon the closure of tickets in IngoFix. Efficient and effective processes. Streamline the process to create efficiencies, including reduced processing time. Streamline the process to identify staff members who are responsible for what task, completing what task. Review IngoFix data to ensure that only one task is entered for an issue. Develop data entry standards. And available and usable materials. Work to obtain and utilize high-quality, long-lasting materials. Develop road-based standards to ensure we're getting top-quality materials, and develop a strategy to extend the time of year when hot mix may be utilized. And with that, I guess we are open for questions.
Mr. Neal, thank you very much for the presentation, as well as everyone else that stated a portion of it. Any questions for members of Council? Go ahead, Member Russell.
Thank you. Thank you very much for the report. I greatly appreciate it. I greatly appreciate the teamwork and all of that. I just have one question, and that is, the presentation that Director Rochelle gave about, the paper packet didn't have that presentation. Was that posted after Thursday?
Yes, Councilmember. We can check with the Clarkson Office. That should have been part of the package, that section about the street maintenance. If it's not, we can make sure you get a copy of that.
That would be great.
Apologize if that wasn't included.
All right. Thank you.
Member Nunkamp.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you so much for the presentation and for the thoughtfulness that has clearly gone into this action plan. I especially love those words, "customer service." Our residents and our taxpayers, in many ways, another word for them is customers, and I appreciate the way you've been engaging the community, that they can help let us know where there are problems, where we need to pay special attention. I think it's a thoughtful approach. One piece that you mentioned, and some of the challenges that we're facing, is access to materials. Can you speak a little bit more about some of the struggles we're actually having, just getting the materials we need? Have we had significant delays due to that?
I can speak to it a little bit, and then I'll turn it over to Phil to jump in. So it's really getting the materials from the plants and sourcing that. It's kinda fierce competition right now for those materials. Lots of other communities are experiencing similar challenges that we are with road maintenance. So asphalt in particular, hot mix, things like that are in high demand. So we're competing against other local communities and having to get in line for those materials. There are multiple plants in and around, and we're able to go to those various plants, but we certainly need to call and try and reserve material for known repairs in advance. Phil, anything you wanna add to that?
I'll just think, for the usable materials, like a road-based material that we put underneath the asphalt, we can pack that after a water main break or something like that. Some material we had was some recycled road-based material that had other clays and stuff in it that just didn't cut it. So we're ordering up new material now, checking on it before we get it, making sure we're getting the right stuff. And as far as the asphalt is, winter time is the tough time to get it. So we're looking to line up multiple vendors, because one of them is always gonna be producing hot mix. Well, 99% of the time. You get to 30 degrees or colder, they're not producing hot mix asphalt. So I'm looking to line up multiple vendors, because one of them will be up running, we can get it, rather than having to wait and wait and wait to complete these patches. So it's more about getting more options lined up, so we can have that.
And are these, like, delays from the pandemic still, or are these general supply and demand challenges?
No, I don't. I think it's just, right now, the amount of people looking for material. Right now, it's not a problem. The biggest problem is waiting in line to get the asphalt. I mean, trucks line up, everybody's getting the asphalt. So trucks line up. We can be there sometimes for an hour. So it's nice to have multiple vendors, so we can go, we like to keep it close. There's a plant on Oxford that's five minutes away, which is perfect. We try to use that because of the location. But it'd be nice to have multiple vendors, so we can get it somewhere when we need it.
That's great. And then one other question. You mentioned also in challenges, some of the staffing turnover and staffing challenges. I also saw in the action plan, a lot of intentionality around team culture and team building. Do you anticipate some of those efforts will help with some of the retention and recruitment in the department?
Absolutely, absolutely. I think we're getting plan and process and procedure, more method to our madness, so it's a more fluent, flowing kinda process.
That's wonderful. Thank you.
Member Anderson?
Thank you, Mayor. And I guess my question's probably for Director Rochelle. On the, just looking at the finances, the budget, the allocation here, we have $150,000 for routine, $400 for preventative, and $4.5 million for corrective. Can you give us a little context on that? What have we done in years, past or recent years, and how did we decide to allocate, or to kinda allocate it this way this year?
So we're continuing the five-year cycle on which zone gets which treatment. We do have in this year's budget the increase from the past sales tax increase in November of last year, which is bringing in approximately additional $1.9 million. So we're allocating that across all the resources, and it's based on the zone. So we try and forecast what the zone needs as we move through the cycle, based on the pavement condition index for that zone, and then allocate appropriately within those three buckets, the preventative, routine, and the heavier maintenance.
So the, all three of these categories went, increased this year?
Based on the zone, I would say yes. They probably all increased, one, because we had a little bit more budget, but then, two, it's gonna depend on the zone. You will, from 2022, going back to that budget, you'll notice we did return some funds, because we did not find the level of a need for repair in that particular zone.
Okay. Now, the routine maintenance, do you do that within the zone, or is that, is that where, I mean, are you fixing potholes that are outside of the, you know?
Yes. Yeah. Potholes are citywide. The other routine maintenance is within the zone, as identified in the graph there.
So my question is around potholes, and I guess there's, I don't know, you know, what the hard data says, but there's, I think there's kind of a sense in the community that the number of potholes is increasing. I don't know whether that's, you know, that could be proved, but I think people kinda feel that way. Do, are we confident that we've increased that particular line item, the pothole filling, sufficient to make up for that? Do we have, you know, I think we do that work, staff does that work, right? That's not something that's contracted out. Do we have sufficient staff and materials and equipment to do that at an increased level with this new increased budget?
Yeah, great question. So a couple of things there. With the current weather pattern, we have seen an increase in potholes. I would mention, and just be sure to mention, that 285 is a CDOT roadway, so potholes on Hamden are not Inglewood. We do have a number of potholes from past applications of cold mix instead of hot mix. Cold mix is particularly susceptible to temperature changes, heavy rainfalls, things like that. And we are tracking those now in Cartograph, and so we have a good map of where potholes are at, what we fix them with. If it was cold mix, it will automatically spin up a task for the team to go out and do hot mix, which is a more permanent patch. And so now that the team is fully staffed, at the moment, we do believe that we have the resources necessary, but we're gonna continue to evaluate. As was previously noted, you know, the plan with us is really around culture and building the team. This is the first time our team has been fully staffed in a number of years, and so we're really looking to see what the team can do and get out there. So we're gonna continue to evaluate that, but currently with our resources and staff, we believe we're on the right trajectory.
Okay. Very good. Yeah, that's just something that I'd like to keep an eye on, is how are we keeping up with those potholes, and do we need to allocate more funding next year, or, you know, or even if it's something beyond what staff can do, could this be something a contractor could take on an additional load to, you know, to really see? I mean, some of these, some streets you go down, and there's, you know, multiple potholes on every block, and they seem like they've been there a while, so I just wanna make sure we're really paying close attention to that. So, thank you, Director Rochelle.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Member Woodward?
Thank you, and thank you for your presentation. Question regarding alleys. What is the program now for alleys?
So we are currently maintaining alleys. Recently, Council approved our mill and overlay project. As part of that project, we will be applying some of the millings to selected alleys that are a maintenance problem. And we do have some money in the budget, I believe also, for outside assistance on alleys as necessary. The large rain that we recently had did create additional challenges in alleys, and the team is currently kinda dividing and conquering. We have certain staff that are out working alleys and regrading those and bringing them back into conformance.
Okay. So the program we've had the last two or three years, we've stopped that program. Am I correct?
I believe almost all of the alleys were V-channel graded, and so now we're more in a maintenance pattern for alleys, and then we're gonna be applying those millings. And then, in the 2024 budget, there was a proposal to start looking at a paving program for alleys.
Okay. On the maintenance of the current alleys, the present alleys that we have, does staff have the equipment, specifically the blade, to keep that channel, or to make that channel, or are you using?
We're using what we have, and we are also looking at if what we have, if there's a better blade for the V-channel.
Okay.
And we're coordinating, I would, should mention, we are coordinating with other departments as well. Parks has equipment maybe that they're not using. We collaborate with Parks and make sure we're using any and all available equipment to achieve the goal there.
Okay. Last question. Are we in need of, in your opinion, any equipment right now that Streets Department, for example, could really utilize?
Yeah, there's probably a list of things that we could put together, but again, with the staff resources just now getting to full capacity, we don't wanna look for equipment that we, you know, won't utilize in an appropriate manner. So it's something we are evaluating. I don't have a firm list. My suspicion is there are a few pieces of equipment that we'll be looking at in the near, very near future.
Actually, one other item. We have two graders, right?
I believe so, yes.
And they're both fully operable now, and, or is one in need of replacement?
They are. One of them's a little larger than what is ideal for doing the alleys. So we do have two operational ones, last I knew. So, yeah, one is just larger, and it's difficult to do the V-alleys with that larger one. It's hard to even get in some of these alleys with the larger one. It's got the larger board on it, 12-foot board, so makes it a little more difficult. So that's part of the process we're doing now, is sitting down and going through all the fleet stuff we have, what's useful, what's not useful, what would be better, what can we use that we're not currently using that we already have on hand. So we do have two blades and some other equipment that we're feeling our way through of what works, what doesn't work.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Member Russell?
Thank you. I just have another question for Director Rochelle from, is it true that not all alleys should be V-graded?
I guess it would depend on the alley. I mean, from a general standpoint, the V-grade is extremely beneficial to get, and depending on the drainage pattern. That is what we have found, based on analysis and review, to work best. But there, I'm not, that's not to say there couldn't be an alley out there somewhere that would benefit from a different style of grading.
So, I mean, I understand that when there's grade in the alley, when it's going up or down, but there are a lot of alleys in Inglewood that are flat. And I mean, in the past, they always graded those alleys down to the sides. And the reason I'm asking that is I know that for a while there, there were, I had several calls from constituents where they had graded the dirt up against their fences eight inches, so if they had a gate going out into the alley, they couldn't get them open.
Yeah, that's certainly a challenge. They should not be pushing dirt up against grates and things like that. Yeah, that's certainly a challenge that they should not be pushing dirt up against grates and things like that. And that's one of the things about the V channel is you're trying to, trying to maintain the grade at the property lines, not push water, you know, left or right, so to speak, on, on a property. But keep it in the right of way in the alley and convey it to an appropriate drainage structure.
Okay, thank you. And actually, um, they were doing Dartmouth just a couple of days ago, the sealing the crack, so I appreciate that. Thank you. The crew was doing a great job.
Thank you.
Just two quick questions for me, Director Rochelle. One, um, you mentioned that we're looking for co- uh, cooperation or collaboration with Sheridan and with Cherry Hills. We currently have collaboration with Littleton and Denver. Am I right about that or no?
We have some collaboration with Littleton. Uh, there was an agreement, uh, many years ago on sharing some resources. And we're currently in discussion with the, uh, City of Littleton. The director there and I are talking about, um, how that looks going forward. Given the age of the equipment.
Okay, and then la- last question is regarding Q alerts. Does everyone have a license to that or do we norm, or are the comments, once a Q alert is done, does that, does that get filtered to someone in the middle and they fill in the information? I'm just trying to figure out that process.
Yeah, so, uh, Inglefix is an app that can be downloaded to any phone. I believe it's available on Android and iPhone. That gets put into the system and then gets routed to the appropriate team. Staff then have the ability to add comments, close and modify. And that should be available to whoever put it in, provided they provided their contact information.
Perfect, all right. Thank you, Director. Uh, Mayor Potem?
You have a question on zone-based plan of attack. You know, I, I kind of understand the structure behind zone base, but the one thing that I can't really wrap my head around is that it, it doesn't seem to acknowledge the fact that some of our roads get more use than others. You know, for example, Dartmouth and Oxford see a lot more cars and a lot more traffic, a lot heavier traffic than the street I live on, South Delaware Street. How, how do we ensure that, you know, all of the roads, particularly the ones that get more use and are therefore prone to more damage, Broadway being the prime example I can bring up? Get the attention that they need in a timely manner so that our roads are always in a condition that makes them pleasant to drive?
Yeah, a great question. And, um, uh, an example, Broadway, uh, tonight, we covered that a little bit in the presentation. We're looking to add that exactly for the reason that you mentioned. While it may not be in the zone for the particular maintenance that's being provided, it has reached a, a point where we need to give it some attention. And so what we try and do is monitor those heavy roadways. And if we need to apply something out of step from the zone plan, uh, that's completely appropriate. But again, that takes resources to monitor and identify and then plan and then look at the budget as well. So we have to kind of weave all of that in. And theoretically, based on the five-year plan cycle, we should be accounting for that. And that section of those heavier roads should be thicker and account for it. When you design a, an asphalt section, it should account for ESOS, which are the number of axles and the weight load going over, uh, over that asphalt. So it should have a thicker section, but we will continue to monitor those across the city for those heavier loads and apply treatments when necessary, even if it's out of step, it's something we're looking at.
Thank you, that, that clarification is helpful. When I, I think about what our residents were, were likely thinking when they went to approve the additional funding last November. And what I was thinking about is, you know, the roads that the most residents drive on are the ones that should be receiving the most attention. And that's not to say that we don't grade alleys or we don't monitor neighborhood roads, but, um, establishing the main thoroughfares as the biggest priority would be something that I would like to see in the future.
Thank you.
Any further questions from council? Thank you, Director Rochelle, and to your team for, for all the work and for partners of blue, uh, or a blueprint for what's coming up and in the future. So thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you.
Perfect, and coming up next is, uh, Director Utilities of South Platt and South Platt Renew, uh, Peter Van Rye and Deputy Director Sarah Stone here to discuss the lead and copper municipal code changes. Good evening, Director.
Forgot the green, oh, that sounds better. Good evening, Mayor and Council. We're here tonight to present, uh, ano- on another of a number of, uh, presentations on the lead removal program that we're working on for the city. And this is, uh, a specific presentation relative to code changes that we need to make in order to assess an accurate inventory of the lead service lines throughout our service area. So to make that presentation tonight will be Sarah Stone, so I'm going to turn it over to her for the presentation.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. There we go. Um, yeah, so as Director Van Rye, uh, stated, we are here to discuss some code changes related to, um, our lead reduction program. So these are code changes that we're proposing, uh, to Title Twelve, Chapter One. So first, I just want to take you through our lead reduction program schedule. In March twenty twenty-three, we contracted with Hazen and Sawyer as our program manager for the lead reduction program. Tonight, we have Steve Price with, who is with Hazen and Sawyer, um, here to answer questions as well as we go through the, um, recommended changes. Uh, so through that first hundred days since March, Hazen and Sawyer has been evaluating, um, our policies, looking at our city code, trying to understand what kind of changes we may need to make so that we can inventory lead service lines accurately. The lead and copper rule, which is administered by the Environmental Protection Agency, has a regulatory requirement that all cities must have a lead service line inventory developed by October twenty twenty-four. So we are getting a jump on that. We plan to have our inventory complete by the end of this year. But in order to do that, we need to pothole, um, and physically verify the service line material of up to five hundred homes in the service area. So, um, in order to do that, we are proposing, um, city code amendments in August. We will bring those before city council. And then in early September, we would hold a public meeting. This meeting is to inform, um, customers of the lead reduction program, answer any questions, provide information. Um, and then it is also a requirement of our state revolving fund loan program application. And then starting in mid-September, we would begin that field verification of lead service lines. And as I mentioned, we plan to have that done by January twenty twenty-four, at which point we will start the development of our lead replacement plan and work with CD PHG as we also need to have, um, the plan developed before we begin construction, which we are anticipating to start in March twenty twenty-four. So the physical verification of service lines, um, that involves, um, three points of physical verification. And CD PHG is following the State of Michigan's, um, guidance on this, where they do require three physical verification points. So the, um, graphic on the right shows our points that we would use, which is potholing on either side of the curb stop and then, uh, visual verification of the service line material entering a home. So our customers would be asked to sign a, um, acknowledgement, just letting, you know, us know that we were there, we were on their property, we verified what the service line material was. We then inform the customer of that. And if it, if it is a lead service line, we would provide a Brita filter, uh, upon request from those customers. So the proposed code amendments, um, will come in two phases. The first phase is to support the verification of lead service line material. And those are required to meet the federal regulations of the lead and copper rule, it is administered by the EPA. And that would provide us access or our contractors' access to private property, uh, for service line inspection and potholing. And it would clarify the customer's side of the service line, what their responsibility is. Currently in code, um, that language is a little, um, unclear. So we are proposing to add definitions that would then support lead service line, the lead service line reduction program and make sure any inconsistencies in that language are cleaned up. We were also proposing to define unauthorized use and waste of water. Again, that language is just a little, um, unclear in code as it currently reads. We will have a future phase of code amendments. Those are related to the financial conditions of the lead reduction program, as well as define customer responsibilities, uh, related to the financial portion of lead service line replacement. That really needs to be in conjunction with our inventory. So as we understand how many lead service lines are in the system, we can then further define those financial responsibilities. I'll just note that we did present these, um, the same presentation to the Water and Sewer Board at our meeting last Tuesday night, and they were in favor of bringing this to city council. So with that, I will open it up for any questions.
Thank you very much. Deputy Director, any questions from council? Go ahead, Mayor Potem.
This may be a silly question, but participation is voluntary for residents?
So, um, we have five hundred homes that we've randomly selected throughout the service area. If someone told us absolutely not, we would find another home. We're trying to get a representative sample of homes. So they were randomly generated, um, based on construction date, um, known materials and they, when the, um, homes were constructed, um, that kind of thing. But yes, in, we would find another home if we were told though.
The reason why I ask is because I, you know, I, I see that one of the test locations is by the meter, which I believe in my case is actually inside my house. And so, you know, in the event that I don't want to invite people into my house for whatever reason, um, how would I participate or would I be ineligible?
So, um, there is a little, um, but there could be some updates to the guidance. So currently CD PHG is requiring three verification points. And so, yeah, on that figure, just go back to that. There's the two on either side of the curb stop and then, yes, the one entering in the home. We're hoping, we don't know if this will happen, but if we have lead on either side of the curb stop, we would assume that it's lead entering in the home. So until we get those two positive, you know, I guess hits of lead, we would then have to do the third one inside the home as well.
Okay, thank you.
Can, may I add to this too?
Go ahead, Director.
So to be clear, the, the code changes give us the access to be able to make this verification. And so the reason we need that is because in order to meet the regulatory requirement, we have to have a distributed sample of five hundred homes. So I mean, in theory, if you have a whole pocket of people who say, no, you can't come in, we need the ability to verify these things. We essentially have three different types of, of service lines. So there's the flat rate, which doesn't have a meter, so that's a line right into the house. You've got the outside meter set, which is a meter pit in the yard, which many people have, and then you have an inside meter set. So anybody who's got a minute, inside meter set is already allowing access because we have to change out the ERT, which is the signal sender. And sometimes we have to change out the, uh, meter itself. So for someone who has an inside meter set, this is no different than we, the way we just typically operate because we have to, uh, maintain the meter. What this clarifies in code is that if there's a point in time where we need to verify that line because we are regulatory, regulatorily required to verify whether it's lead or not, this gives us that ability to do that since it is connected to the system. And the goal of the program and the regulatory driver of the program is to remove the lead out of the system. And so that's what these code changes do, they clean that up and they give us that ability. Now, we are planning to work with people to the degree that we can, but realize that we also need, we also have a regulatory driver, uh, that, um, ultimately, uh, drives this. And if someone does have a lead service line, we are intending to remove all lead from this water system over the next ten plus years.
Uh, Member Woodward and then Member Russell?
Thank you. Uh, there, there was a certain year when regulatory law said that you needed to not use lead anymore. Is that correct?
That's correct. I'm going to invite Steve Price up here to give us that date.
Yes, um, there was a EPA regulated no more lead after nineteen eighty-seven.
Okay, so anything built after eighty-seven, we wouldn't be checking, I assume?
That would still be involved, but those homes are still involved in the, uh, randomized selection of the homes, just to make sure there wasn't like a scrape off of a house and they left a service line there. So we're still checking a few of those, not that many.
Okay.
We're focused on a lot of homes in the, that were built in the forties, fifties and sixties.
Okay, and beyond the stop and waste valve, which is, is the residents or the, the pro- owner of the properties, that's their line, correct? I mean, they're the owner of that. They would be responsible for replacing any piping or anything.
So definitely inside the home is the homeowner's responsibility. Right now, the way it's written in code is essentially from the curb stop to the home is the resident's responsibility. So including the curb stop. So that's the way, that's the way the code is written right now. So the city is responsible for the, the stub that goes from the water main to the curb stop. At that point in time, it becomes homeowner responsibility. That's when, when Sarah talked about in a, in another slide, the potential next round of, of code changes is as we look at how this program is ultimately implemented, we're going to be looking to figure out how to fund it. And so the way Denver Water funded this is they said, we're going to just pay for the whole thing. We need to figure out how we can do that. That involves the SRF, that involves the money that we're, um, that we're going after for the, uh, infrastructure bill. There's, there's grant money in there, but there's also loan money in there. If we ta- if we take loan money, that increases our principal, so we will need to be able to figure out how to pay all that back. The first thing before we know any of that is we have to know what our inventory is. We have to know how many we have. Because right now we estimate between four thousand and eight thousand based on the year of installation. And so we have a number of still moving parts on this. This just helps us nail down what that first, that first step, which is how many lead service lines do we have in the city that we need to address?
Okay, thank you.
Director, actually, do you mind introducing Steve? Are you with Hazen and Sawyer or?
Yes, sorry, Steve is with, uh, Steve Price, he's with, uh, Hazen and Sawyer. He is our, um, he's the lead for our program manager for the lead program. So a few months ago, we came and, uh, issued the contract to Hazen and Sawyer to essentially manage this program. This, they have, uh, extensive in-house expertise. Steve is actually with Denver Water during the development of their program. So he brings a whole lot of expertise from his time at Denver Water to Hazen, which then translates to, uh, efficiently building our program without necessarily reinventing the wheel on a lot of things. So.
Perfect, thank you, Director. Member Russell?
Thank you. Thank you very much for the presentation. So when you go into a home, so I think that, um, Director Van Rye just explained that they don't know yet, you don't know yet whether you're going to be paying for the curb stop through the house or up to the house. So if you're going to enter into homes, is this going to, would the inspection involve like, um, copper pipes that probably would have lead solder? Will there be requirements for the homeowners to take care of that as well?
So right now, so right now we are not dealing with lead solder. Uh, lead solder has been shown to not, um, contribute a significant amount of lead based on the data that, that Denver Water, um, looked at. So the real goal of this program is to remove the, remove the lead service lines. What I will add to that is some, some people have galvanized lines and those galvanized lines are, they're bad too. And so we, if we detect a galvanized line, we're going to get that one removed. So ultimately, when we're done with this program, everybody has a, has a copper line that's providing their, their water service from the main to their house. What happens in their house, some people have galvanized piping in their house, that's a homeowner responsibility.
Okay, I, I, the thing that I'm struggling with, because I've heard from a couple of constituents, is allowing anybody in my house to inspect what I have. And I, I have trouble, um, with council giving you the authority to do that if it's not done willingly. I mean, obviously from the outside inspection, you're going to be able to tell if there probably is lead going into the house. If there's a lead pipe running for, on the other side of the curb stop to the house.
Right, and so this gets down to, um, we have a known, um, we have a known historical hazard in the system, which is lead. And that was, because that was a construction technology from seventy years ago. So that was a technology of the day. When Inglewood was built out, that's when it was, um, being developed. So we are a public water provider that needs to provide water through that system all the way to the house. This is like the last mile of that, you know, in, in, uh, in, um, uh, supply chain terms. This is the last step of getting it into the house. And so in order for us to be compliant, as the state has taken the guidance from the Michigan rule, and everybody knows about Michigan, because that's what probably triggered lead service lines nationally, was the stuff that occurred in Flint, is we need to understand all. was the stuff that occurred in Flint, is we need to understand all the way into the house, into that point just inside the wall, whether it's lead or not, in order to protect the water system, the community and the water system, from the potential of that lead service line still being there. That's the reason why they have taken this approach. That's why in this instance, recognizing that sometimes people don't want us coming into their space, that there are times that it's a matter of public health, that we would come into a space, we would give substantial notice, we would give opportunity for them to get ready for us to come in. You know, it's the kind of thing that we would, we go in, we quickly assess, take that information out. It's for the betterment of the community through improvement of public health because even if you don't allow that, that there could be a hazard still in there that the water is going through. And so the reason for this is because that's a public health need over a potential property access need.
And I totally understand that. I guess what I don't understand is this is water coming in. How is it going to impact the rest of the city?
Because if there's, the thought is, is that if you have any kind of lead in the system, that there is somehow a potential that it could potentially get back into the rest of the system. That's the theoretical approach to lead service lines, which is why one of the most aggressive approaches is to remove the lead from the system. Not all cities are doing that. There was actually an article just last week of a city that is choosing not to do all that, and they're actually experiencing more lead hits in their community than if they had just removed all of the system. So if someone leaves a lead service line and there's a sample taken at that location and it hits for lead, that affects the whole system. Even if it doesn't get into the system, it affects the whole system because it is a hit for lead, which then drives a whole lot of regulatory oversight of what's occurring with the rest of the system.
So, okay, I appreciate that. I don't have a problem with it being voluntary. And hopefully, you would get the first five hundred people you called to allow that. But I still have trouble with giving the government permission to go into my home and inspect. I just see a lot of problems with that, and I think there may be a lot of people that won't do it. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
Any other members have any questions? Some good questions and answers there. And with that, thank you very much, Director, for your presentation tonight, as well as Deputy Director. And with that, we'll take a seven-minute break, and we'll start up again at the top of the hour. Thank you so much, everyone. Thank you again to all the summer interns this year. Up next, we want to recognize Water Production Supervisor Dave Chapman for the many years of service. And before I get to that, is there anyone here recognizing the many years of service for Mr. Chapman tonight? If you're able to please stand, I'd like to recognize those as well. There we are. Thank you so much. All right, perfect. Mr. Chapman, there he is. All right, so tonight, we are here to recognize Dave Chapman, Water Production Supervisor in the Utilities Department, for his forty-five years of service to the city of Inglewood. Dave started working for the city in high school and spent five years working for the Parks, Rec, Library, and Golf Department, and forty years in the Utilities Department. Including his brother Les, a construction inspector in the Public Works Department, the Chapman family, Les of six years, Dave of forty-five years, Dave and Les's father thirty-six years, and Dave and Les's uncle fifty-two years, has dedicated a hundred and thirty-nine years of service to the city of Inglewood and originally moved to the city in nineteen fifty-eight. During his time with the Utilities Department, Dave has many accomplishments and contributions to the city's vision, mission, and goals, including managing- including managing water resources, accounting and optimization, mentoring, excuse me, mentoring many Utilities Department employees and helping them with their professional growth, overseeing all aspects of operations, including keeping the department moving during a time of slower, of lower staffing, and critically supporting, coordinating, and managing components of the major projects such as Big Dry Creek and the city ditch piping. Deputy Director of Utilities Joshua Roach said this about Dave's contributions. "I would say his accomplishments and experiences are only secondary to the person Dave is and the exemplary character he demonstrates daily. Very positive, very supportive, and a constant force of good at the Utilities Department." In addition to his years of service to the Utilities Department, Dave can be considered Mr. Inglewood for his many contributions to the community. He attended Inglewood Public Schools from kindergarten through graduation, and was involved in athletics through his years in school. He married his high school sweetheart Connie White in 1978, whose father worked for the Inglewood Fire Department for 50 years. And together, they have three children and several grandchildren of whom they are extremely proud. Dave started a competitive youth basketball program for boys and girls in middle school, which led to him helping at the beginning of the Gold Crown Foundation, one of the largest youth sports foundations in the nation. In 1995, he started a girls' fast pitch softball program at Inglewood High School and coached for 22 years. Dave, I want to thank you for your incredible legacy and the commitment to the Inglewood community, and I wish you the best in your future endeavors. Mr. Chapman, thank you very much for your years. Mr. Chapman, are you able to come up? I do have a certificate for you. Are you able to come up and take a quick picture? Thank you again, Mr. Chapman. All right, and with that, I think we will now move on to Agenda Item 7. And this is recognition of scheduled public comment. The deadline to sign up for, sign up to speak for scheduled public comment is Wednesday by 5:00 PM prior to the meeting through the city clerk's office. This is an opportunity for the public to address city council. There is an expectation that the presentation will be conducted in a respectful manner, and city council may ask for questions for clarification, but there will not be any dialogue. And please limit your presentation to five minutes. Up first is Denver Ma, here to address council regarding private activity bonds.
Mayor?
Go ahead, Member Anderson.
Before we begin, if I could, I know we normally, we often ask our audience to refrain from cheering. I'd like to just, you know, give this group a chance to cheer tonight. I know some people may want to do that, and I don't see any problem with that. And I think we can grant them that right if council is willing to. I don't know what our policies does on that, but if that's something council's okay with, I'd like to do that.
You just want to waive the, our just council policy in terms of?
Yeah, just waive the council policy in terms of cheering.
Okay. Anyone in disagreement with that tonight? Go ahead, Member Noonan Camp.
I'm hesitant to change policy on a dime. Can you give us any more information about why you're wanting to change policy tonight?
Sure, I think that, I suspect that they're going to anyway, and I don't want to be sending people out of the room for cheering, so I think it's an acceptable thing to allow. And actually, I was looking in the policy manual, and I couldn't actually find that provision in the policy manual.
All right, perfect. I'm good with moving forward as stated, so. Mr. Ma, thank you very much. Coming up tonight, if you could just state your name and your address or cross streets.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name is Denver Ma. I am from Colorado.
Sir, I'm sorry to interrupt. You want to make sure that your microphone is on.
Should be, there you go.
There we go. Does that work? Thank you. Thank you. My name is Denver Ma. I'm from Colorado Housing and Finance Authority. I'm the Director of Finance there. I live in Golden, Colorado, and I'm just here as a representative for CHAFSA. A little bit about CHAFSA. Colorado Housing Finance Authority was established 50 years ago, and we've invested over $30 billion in Colorado over the last 50 years in an effort to maintain and build affordable housing for those residents in Colorado. As part of that, we utilize private activity bond cap. And private activity bond cap is what I'm here to speak with you today on. Private activity bonds are basically a federal tool that allows a borrower or lender to borrow or lend at a tax-exempt rate. So on an annual basis, the federal government will allocate $120 per capita, per state, for private activity bond cap. To that end, Colorado received around $700 million and change last year, and that allocation then comes to Colorado. It is then divvied up within Colorado. Once it comes to Colorado, Colorado can decide what they want to do with that private activity bond cap. What Colorado does is basically split that between Colorado Housing and Finance Authority and amongst the local municipalities. To that end, I'm here to speak to you, Inglewood, about possibly transferring that private activity bond cap to Colorado Housing and Finance Authority. And I will explain the reasons why. Private activity bond cap is basically, as I mentioned, the right to borrow at a tax-exempt rate. Their actual issuance of bonds and the actual issuance of the bonds takes economies of scale to really make this work. And therefore, we have gone to Colorado Housing and Finance Authority and asked municipalities to possibly transfer that cap to Colorado Housing if they don't have a particular source or need for that. If they were to transfer that to Colorado Housing and Finance Authority, they would come into a general fund that Colorado Housing would then allocate on an annual basis, private activity bond cap either to multifamily housing projects, or we also use it for single-family home finance or homeownership production. With that, we basically use that private activity bond cap. We issue bonds in the market at a tax-exempt rate. That tax-exempt rate is a lower rate than what the market would see. We then pass that savings on to our borrowers, including homeowners within Colorado or multifamily developers within Colorado, and pass that tax-exempt rate on to them. So they are able to develop or purchase a home at a lower rate than they would otherwise a market rate. One other item of note with private activity bond cap is that it also unlocks a great federal subsidy. It's low-income housing tax credits. Using private activity bond cap and financing your project with 50% of private activity bonds will unlock low-income housing tax credit, which could possibly finance that affordable housing project up to 30% or provide 30% equity for that project. So it's a great resource, a great way to unlock lots of dollars from the federal government. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions about this transfer. This is up for, I believe this is ordinance 11A1, and I'd be happy to answer any questions regarding that ordinance or private activity bond cap. Right now, I have an engagement that I'll be going to after this, and so I'd be happy to answer any questions if there are any.
Thank you very much, Mr. Ma, for your topic tonight. Go ahead, Member Russell.
Thank you for your presentation. So what does CHAFSA get out of this? Do they get a percentage of the bond money or?
Well, Colorado, CHAFSA is founded, and our mission is to provide affordable housing for everyone in Colorado. We do charge a fee when we issue the bonds. It is a fee, which is 50 basis points in issuing of the bonds, but that is really just a fee that we do to administer in the process. It's, we, the IRS does not allow transferring of private activity bond cap for fees for any other reason except just for transfers amongst municipalities, so.
So it's mostly the administration fee that you're charging?
It is a fee. If we happen to be the issuer and we happen to also be the lender on the project, we would issue bonds, and I'm just throwing out a random example, at a 5% rate, and then we would lend money at a 6% rate, so we would make a margin there. And that's really how CHAFSA stays in business. We don't receive an allocation from the state. We are not a, we don't receive allocation from the legislature. So we just really stay in business ourselves through that margin.
Okay, and how many projects do you anticipate would happen in Inglewood itself?
Inglewood itself, I believe in your packet, there is some information about the single-family home financings we've done through 2020 through 2023. Those have ranged, those have been about a dozen a year. The most recent project in Inglewood was Trails at Lehigh, which broke ground last year. That used $17 million of private activity bond cap. And what I'm asking, I believe Inglewood currently holds is $2.3 million private activity bond cap. So that was other CHAFSA bond cap that we use and utilize for that Trails at Lehigh project. $2.3 million would probably, as I said, would probably work towards homeownership. And then it could also be aggregated with a larger multifamily deal as well, to like the Trails at Lehigh, which required $17 million.
And the Trails at Lehigh, you partnered with the Inglewood Housing Authority?
That's right. That's correct, and that was using private activity bond cap. But CHAFSA helped issue, was the issuer of that cap.
Okay, and are those for homeownership? I mean, can individuals own those, or actually the housing authority is going to?
No, this, so private activity bonds of their nature, they are a private ownership. So as opposed to governmental bonds, where you'd issue bonds for a library or a road, that'd be governmental bonds. Private activity bonds means the final owner is a private entity. So that would be the homeowner themselves or owner of a multifamily project.
Okay, is it, is it going to be the Inglewood Housing Authority? Is it going to be homeowners themselves, Trails at Lehigh?
Well, with Trails at Lehigh, there is a developer that will, I do not know the developer's name offhand, but it is a private entity themselves. Homeowners, when I speak of homeowners, I mean as an individual home or buying, going and getting a first mortgage. That, that sort of homeownership is also supported by private activity bond cap.
Okay, thank you very much.
Any further questions for members of council? Go ahead, Mayor Potem.
I guess I'm just going to ask the stone-cold question, which I think is, is revealed in the numbers here, but what, what's in it for Inglewood? Why would we do this?
Well, I am here to request you transfer your cap. CHAFSA receives an allocation of cap just as Inglewood does. What happens to the cap if Inglewood does not take action is that it reverts back to the state and goes back to the state anyway. I'm asking to transfer it to CHAFSA where we try and add a little bit of nuance and try and allocate a little bit more strategically with our cap. Other than that, there, we're not offering any funds for Inglewood, but we can, we can show that we have invested in Inglewood over the last several years, including homeownership and Trails at Lehigh. And so the one thing I can obligate is that CHAFSA will invest more PAB back into Inglewood, and that is transferred to CHAFSA from Inglewood.
And does Inglewood get a seat at the table when CHAFSA is considering these projects? Or do you just decide where to put things and?
What we do when this happens is that if Inglewood has a particular project in mind, you are welcome to state that particular project. When CHAFSA allocates private activity bond cap, only those that receive tax credit awards get that private activity bond cap. So if that particular project that you have chosen did not receive that award in a particular year, then that cap goes back to the general fund within CHAFSA, and it can be redeployed somewhere else. So we can set it aside for up to a year, but we like to get the PAB out into the community as soon as possible, and so we don't like to hold on for longer than that.
Right, so you're, you have sort of a regional, regional pool of various municipalities that are contributing towards this larger pool, which is why we got $17 million for Trails at Lehigh.
Yes, exactly. You'll have a situation where there's an affordable project in a particular community. Several communities around that affordable project may donate private activity bond cap for that particular project, or they may receive 100% of their private activity bond cap from CHAFSA. CHAFSA receives $345 million of cap from the state, and so we use all of that within Colorado, and so.
So let me give this money to CHAFSA. It saves us the difficulty of managing it ourselves, and it also keeps it out of the hands of people who we may or may not trust in the state.
I wouldn't speak to that. I would say that I would promise you that we would be a great fiduciary for that PAB and make sure that it is invested well and that Inglewood receives more than ample, more than commensurate investment.
Okay, I think that's all the questions I have for you. Thank you.
Okay.
Any further questions for council? CNN, Mr. Ma, thank you very much for your time tonight.
Thank you very much.
Up next is Kathleen Bailey here, an Inglewood resident to address council. Good evening, Ms. Bailey. If you could state your name and your address or cross streets.
Kathleen Bailey, Jason and Union. I am here tonight to again alert families in the upstream half of the South Inglewood Basin. Quick review. After Sean Lewis quite ignorantly declared to me that not many people were impacted by the 7/24/18 daily flood, it was clear he had absolutely no intention of spending the multiple millions of dollars to protect those under-valued families from a 2% annual risk of a major rain event. Instead, he and his staff in their in-house consulting made a big show and sales pitch to city council, including animated videos, and easily convinced our brilliant council members that their cheap tweaks and enlarged inlets in the two-year rain event capacity system would amazingly protect those families from a major 25-year rain event and simultaneously save the city multiple millions of dollars. And our city council celebrated staff for being smarter than all the previous studies, including the urban drainage of Flagato District. Fast forward to 6/22/23, and city staff are now lying to everyone and scrambling to protect themselves from liability for their previous lies. Victor Rochelle immediately posted on the website on 6/23 that this city was hit on 6/22 with a major 25- to 50-year rain event and identified the sinkhole. And later subsequently, subsequent study sessions, CM expressed that their tweaks and enlarged inlets worked to significantly minimize the flooding to just two inches deep in some basements. But in fact, it was a 10-year rain event that hit Inglewood on 6/22/23 and caused flooding in the same area where the young woman drowned in the upstream half of the South Inglewood Basin, completely exposing their lies and claiming their touted tweaks and enlarged inlets would protect against a 25-year rain event. And the 10-year rain event easily overwhelmed and blew out the aged, neglected two-year rain event capacity Oxford pipe, creating another sinkhole in Oxford in the downstream half of the South Inglewood Basin. I will skip describing how staff skewed their data analysis, and I'll go directly to sharing the MFD, Mount High Flood District Analysis of the actual rain gauge data taken in the same three locations city staff used, Rotaro Park in Inglewood, Union in South Platte, Sheridan, and Powers Park in Littleton. The Mount High Flood District Analysis included rain gauge records across a full hour series of data and a summary analysis of those actual rain gauge measured values when compared with the NOAA Rain Event Frequency Table. Their written analysis states the following. One, the frequency analysis for Rotaro Park shows that a particular, in that particular location, the gauge recorded around a 10-year storm in 30 minutes, and the associated table reflected a 10-year storm in 60 minutes. Two, the frequency analysis for the South Platte at Union again shows that that particular location, the gauge recorded around a 10-year storm in 30 minutes, and the associated table reflected a 10-year storm in 60 minutes. Three, the Powers Park gauge in Littleton, just south of Inglewood, had the maximum intensity in the area. The frequency analysis for that gauge just south of Inglewood did show 50-year event up to the first 15 minutes of the event, and the associated table refers to the, reflects a 10-year rain event at 60 minutes. I believe the MFD rain gauge analysis, and for city council to believe staff, they would have to believe that a major rain, the major rain that dropped in Power, Park, Littleton drained due north towards Inglewood instead of west towards the South Platte River, then crossed Bellevue into Inglewood and then into the South Inglewood Basin and blew out the Oxford pipe and flooded the Tacoma-Bannock area. Someone in the city, on this city council or the next city council, needs to wake up and actually invest to actually protect those families in the upstream half of the South Inglewood Basin. Thank you for the five minutes.
Ms. Bailey, thank you very much for your time tonight. Any questions from council? CNN, Ms. Bailey, thank you. Up next is C.N. Dickerson, here to just address council. C.N. Dickerson. Good evening, Ms. Dickerson. If you could just state your name and your address or cross streets.
C.N. Dickerson, Bates Logan. Laws, the founders said, should be simple, few, and easy to understand so that we would all be inclined to follow them. The right to life is the fundamental right upon which all other rights are derived, and the right to property is its only implementation. Citizens have a right to their property and a property in their rights. The reasons government exists is to protect the rights of citizens, particularly our property rights. You all took an oath to do so. You are not our masters. You are supposed to be our representatives. Your recent actions in attempt to destroy our property rights have underscored why the recall petitions have so far succeeded. We are not happy with four of you. I have lost trust in the integrity of council. I have lost trust in the integrity of council, and I never had much trust in staff as a result of the thoughtless and rash decisions, spending taxpayer funds and taxing us to make up for your poor irrational decisions, both overt and covert, even to the point of trying to deny our right to speak and express our disapproval or approval and always ignoring us. Case in point, we have home rule charter. Your blatant actions deferring to state law in some matters where state law is not controlling is unconstitutional and destructive. Our home rule status needs to be bolstered, not diminished. Four of you are under recall. You have no business putting charter amendments on the ballot or ignoring citizen protests. The only charter provision that needs to go is Article thirty-two. It is unenforceable, ambiguous, and unnecessary. You should not be making any amendments to charter when it is already in conformance with state law, where state law is controlling or a primary concern, and when the majority of you are under recall. Do not put these charter amendments on the ballot. Another case in point, you should not be paying consultants to direct citizen committees and the P and Z to replace the UDC code Title sixteen with a draft unfinished, contradictory, poorly written, rife with typos and violations of citizens' rights, and fundamentally destructive of residential zoning. You should, however, prevent your acolytes on P and Z from denying citizens First Amendment rights to protest and object to the code next draft. More than one, but one in particular, needs to be removed for malfeasance, conflict of interest, and blatant violation of the First Amendment. Another case in point is the Tri-Cities Homeless Initiative. There is an extreme lack of transparency, no public engagement, spending ARPA funds on untried or unknown and unproven programs. The best estimate right now is they've received eight million dollars of ARPA funds from various sources before they've gone into operation. There will be operating costs on top of that for maybe fifty homeless people to be housed and fed per year. That is obscene and stupid. You need to stop what you are doing. You are not our masters, not our spiritual rulers, not our controllers. Forgive them, Lord, and stop them. They know what wrong they do.
Ms. Dickerson, thank you for your time tonight. Any questions from members of council? Sina, thank you for your time tonight. Up next is Chris Dewis, an Inglewood resident to also address council. Good evening, Mr. Dewis. If you could state your name and your address or cross streets?
Yes. Yeah, I don't, which one do I click on? I don't see them. Oh, okay, thanks. Is there a way we can open all these pictures at once? Why are they allowed back? Stop that, okay. Is there a way that, um, you can put a grid of the pictures? Let me see, if I want to get rid of that, how do I go back? Oh, those little things? I'll just, I'll just. You're doing it with large icons? So I can pick out? Yeah, there we go, thanks.
Mr. Dewis, if you could state your name and your address or cross streets?
Yes.
At this time.
Chris Dewis, born and raised, Inglewood, Bellevue and Broadway. Stephanie, before you start my time, I'd like everyone to take a thirty seconds of silence to reflect and memorialize the loss of Rachel Haber that passed away five years ago in a flood that was caused by Inglewood's inadequate infrastructure. Now, I'd like to do what the mayor's done on many occasions, give accolades to people that have worked tirelessly for the last several months, walking neighborhoods door to door, getting signatures and compliance of Inglewood's self-governed rules to express our dissatisfaction with certain elected representatives. Citizens exercising their rights, sharing facts among the community, to hold certain council members responsible for their incompetent actions. Please applaud yourselves at this time for getting the city back on track. I've lived here my whole life. I'd like to bring up some facts. If I'm wrong, please correct me. The citizens of Inglewood have been complaining about the quality of their drinking water for the last forty years and still do. Five years ago, you said you would fix the problem with the stormwater pipes from Broadway to Oxford. You went on to say they were safe, yet three weeks ago, the same house that Rachel Haber died in flooded again. Two big sinkholes opened up along the same stormwater pipe system you said was safe. One at Rotolo Park, that's in between houses with kids in it, compromising the foundation of the residents. As you can see, you have a big pipe going into a little pipe and the water's going into the little pipe. That's what created that sinkhole. So up there at Oxford, the construction site is unsafe. The logistics of this operation is a nightmare. This is an ongoing problem with the way this council manages our cities and invest in our infrastructure. Mayor Sierra, you were adamant on spending millions of dollars on biogas facility that didn't work in other cities. Now XL Energy won't buy the gas because it's too dirty, another waste of our taxpayers' money. That could have been spent on our infrastructure like stormwater and streets. Our streets are worse than they have been in sixty years. Numerous potholes have endangered the public for months, especially to motorcycles, and our own police department on their motorcycles that I've interviewed personally say it's, it's dangerous. Let's skip forward to the cities, citizens complaining about the problem. For the last ten years, the EPD has had more calls than they could count. One officer told me while I was videoing and observing, I asked the fire chief why we'd let tenants that built the bombs back into the house that he condemned. He said, quote, "I'm letting them clean up their own mess." I said, "You're letting the guys that made the bombs clean up their mess?" He said, "They weren't there." I have proof with a video that one of them was there cleaning up the mess. What has Matt experienced, does any of these tenants have cleaning up a bomb mess? Was the house tested for meth? Why not? Citizens are tired of watching our once-beloved city fall into disrepair, disrepair. I have lived here my whole life and have never seen such poor management on so many levels. I met with Sean Lewis, Director of Public Works and the head of Parks Recreation a few weeks ago to discuss the matters of cleaning the grade and fixing streets. They seem a little confused on what to do to get the problem of Little Dry Creek. So they're going to meet with Mile High Flood District to spend millions more on a third design. When is this going to end? Use some basic sense, it's not rocks, rocket science. If you can't even clean the simple grade, that's insanity. So let me see if I show you a couple pictures here that I took. This is at the Oxford station. There's no barriers to keep the people out. I need to click out of this picture. Um, let's see. There's the barrier laying there. There's the water that anybody can walk and fall into. And this gentleman here, how do I turn the sound on here? Can you turn the sound on for me, please?
I can't even get in the backside of my building, and the sinkhole is all the way up to here. So, you know, my kids live here. There's a big hole right here. My kids could run in there and die very easily. You know, kids get away from you very easily. They run and jump. They could easily go into that hole. I just looked in there, it's raining. There's a bunch of running water in there. That's scary to me. I pay all this money to live here at this place. I can't even get in the backside of my building, and the sinkhole is all the way up to here on, on the property. So that's serious business. Plus, when I have people to come and pick me up to go to work or to leave, they gotta go all the way around and waste all this gas when they could just turn on Oxford and boom, and be right here. Now they gotta go all the way around. So they're gonna pay for my gas, too? I don't understand it. I thought this was a good area to live in. That's why I chose.
An Inglewood resident here to address concerns about a business.
My husband's been out for a week. We're gonna do switch room. She's just got.
Are you James Cooper or?
I am.
Okay. Come on, yeah, that's fine.
Okay, thank you.
You're next on the list, Mr. Cooper. If you could just state your name and your address or cross streets?
Uh, James Cooper, Radcliffe and, uh, Radcliffe and Lincoln. Good evening, my name's James Cooper. I'm here with my wife, Lauren. We live in the, uh, we've lived in Inglewood District three for six and a half years. While living here, we've tried to be as active as possible in the community to help build a community by volunteering at city events, serving on a city commission, doing what we can to improve our community. Here, uh, excuse me, we're here this evening to express concerns about Broadway Custom Motorcycle Shop located catty corner to our house. Since they've moved into the neighborhood about three, four years ago, the quality of life and safety of our neighborhood has dramatically declined. Some of the continual and escalating issues we and our neighbors have observed from both employees and patrons of the business, as well as employees who live behind the business include, excuse me, driving vehicles at, uh, excuse me, driving the vehicles at excessive speeds back and forth along Radcliffe into and throughout the neighborhood, driving through stop signs, including at Sherilyn Elementary. Just note that that's one block from the shop. I apologize. Revving their engines excessively loud, excessively loud volumes, this could be while they are parked on the street, on their property, in their shop, or while driving through their neighborhood. Recklessly driving on the streets, recklessly, uh, driving, I swear this is not for show, I promise, uh, driving motor, uh, motorcycles along the sidewalk, driving unlicensed vehicles into the neighborhood, includes OHVs at night without headlights. Lastly, operating a vehicle diagnostics machine. From our understanding, the diagnostics machine itself is not the issue, but in order to run the test, you have to operate the vehicle, motorcycles, at full throttle for an extended period of time. This creates high level, uh, high levels of noise, which is allow, above what is allowed by the city ordinance and easily can be heard from three blocks plus, uh, even with their garage doors closed. We feel these act, uh, activities constitute a life safety issue for nearby residents. Though these are not daily occurrences, they most certainly are not isolated. These occur during business hours, late at night, and/or on the weekends. These issues arise from both patrons and employees as they enter and leave the premise. Most of these seem to be testing or showcasing, uh, the custom work that they've done. We do appreciate the skill and craftsmanship it takes to complete the work that they do. We don't feel a residential neighborhood is appropriate testing ground for their work. During their bike nights, an event that's held most Thursday nights, the number of vehicles, patrons, and previously listed activities increase significantly, further amplifying life, excuse me, life safety issues for nearby residents. Since the business has moved in, we've talked to the owners on multiple occasions, expressing our concerns. Conversation started out cordial yet ineffective. There was a willingness to have an open dialogue and hear our concerns. However, when we called out various activities, there was little if no accountability. Most of the responses were along the lines of, well, that wasn't us, that's not, uh, one of our employees, that's just a random person. If accountability was taken, usually around the noise, a response would be, well, there's no law against it. Unfortunately, events dramatically escalated last summer to the point of confrontation between myself and a group of patrons, employees of the business. This resulted in a direct threat to myself, my family, and our property. Yes, we did file a police report just to document. In fact, uh, since that time, we've not talked to them directly. We engage with Inglewood Police Department when the issues arrive. Most recently, on July fourth, above-listed activities ensued. We reached out to the police department to address the issues and they responded. However, after the police left, those gathered at the business turned their attention to us, pointed, uh, actually, excuse me, to the point of harassment. As we went into our yard, they started taunting and berating my wife as they held her infant. The reckless driving and noise continued and culminated with them shooting fireworks at our property and even striking our house. Throughout the last two years, we've discussed the issue with multiple city departments, including police department, code enforcement, licensing, and our city council representative. None of these avenues have, uh, have been affected because of technicalities and loopholes in the city law, blatant lack of response as well. The police are challenged as they do not witness the reckless driving and because it is a group of people versus an individual, that's very hard to identify, uh, little can be done. Brings us here tonight so that you can hear firsthand the life safety issues that Broadway Custom brings into the community. Sorry. Ironically, uh, last quarter, the business was featured in Inglewood Cities Magazine, highlighting the sense of pride it brings to the city and our interaction with them. This is furthest from the truth. We want to be supportive of businesses in the city and, sorry, uh, honestly, would rather see a motorcycle shop in the building than a vacant space. We don't feel that a business though should thrive while survive and thrive while harassing and putting its citizens' safety at risk. We're here to ask, what's more important to the city, business or citizens' safety? Thank you guys for your time, I appreciate it.
Mr. Cooper, thank you very much for that tonight. Uh, you have your hands full. Any questions for members of council? Member Noonan Camp?
Mr. Cooper, thank you so much for being here. Hi. And I apologize for the challenges that you've experienced, including with the city. I'm curious, uh, in your engagements with the city, have there been recommended code changes? You talk about loopholes or technicalities that you think would help the situation that you've experienced?
Noise ordinances is one that we're having troubles with. Um, we feel that it exceeds the decibels allowed, but as we've talked with code enforcement, there seems to be little provided from an enforcement of that. They have a testing mechanism, but it doesn't seem to be plausible to actually test.
Okay, that's very helpful. Thank you very much.
Any further questions for members of council? Sina, Mr. Cooper, thank you very much for your time tonight. And Ms. Cooper, were you not gonna speak tonight or?
No.
I know the hands are full, so, thank you so much. Up next is Charles and Sandra Fleming here to address council regarding a condemned property on Delaware. Good evening, Mr. and Mrs. Fleming. If you could just state your name and your address and cross streets?
My name is Charles Fleming. I live at forty-nine fifty-five South Delaware Street.
I'm Sandy Fleming, same address, cross street is probably Shenango and Delaware.
Thank you so much.
And the, the concerns that we have to discuss tonight with the board, and I appreciate your willingness to listen and I, offering us the opportunity to speak, are that there was a property at forty, forty-nine forty-five Delaware that was condemned by the, um, by county, Arapahoe County?
Yeah, well, this is the zoning department.
By the zoning department. And that property is the property just north of us.
That's right next to it.
Next door. And it's a property that has been problematic for years in the neighborhood. It was, um, there has been refuge and trash in the backyard and the front yard of that, of that, um, property for over five years. That, that, we've, we've been there since two thousand sixteen and the problem's been in effect since then. The city condemned the property. There was a, a group came in and cleaned, cleaned off the refuge from their, from their backyard. Now that's just plain dirt. Unfortunately, our yard, which is just south of there, we now have a trail that runs through our backyard that is now grass where grass won't grow. And I'm afraid that maybe that soil in the yard next to ours is contaminating and leaching into our. into our, into our properties. And I don't know, I've talked to Arapahoe County, they don't have a program for testing that soil to see if there are contaminants in there and I'm, and I don't know that the city does or not, and that's why I'm here to talk and ask. There are also propane tanks still in evidence in the backyard of the co, property. There's a non-permitted building back there. It was built by the previous residents, no permits, no nothing. It's still there. So like I said, I guess what I'd like to do is request that we have some soil testing in the area. I've talked to Arapahoe County, they, and to the zoning folks, and they said that they don't conduct tests, that I could do one privately, and that doesn't seem to be a, a reasonable request. It would seem like that would be something that the zoning folks or the folks who handle enforcement on this type of thing would take care of. Let's see, there's also, uh, my, my, my final request is that there's a, the fence between the properties, they had leaned things up on it. My fence is now collapsing and heading towards their property and I'd like permission to go over there. It's now fenced off and quarantined. I'd like permission to go over and stake down my fence posts again and get us back to level. And I thank you for the opportunity to speak, to speak with you. I appreciate your efforts. Do you have any questions?
Thank you so much, Mr. Fleming. I was gonna ask if Ms. Fleming had anything to add, but, okay. Anything to add, Ms. Fleming or?
Um, actually, he gave the wrong, um, timeframe as far as, um, living next to them. We've been living next to them since two thousand twelve. And the issues that I, um, my biggest concern was, um, all the stuff that was in their yard and some of the stuff that is still left there, especially the propane tanks or whatever it is that's on the porch, that's a big concern to me because I'm still having issues of, um, there's people that shoot off cherry bombs late at night and just the thought of there was pipe bombs right next to us is a big stress factor to me. And I would like those to be removed as quickly as possible. I'm not sure if that's in the, in the plan of, for them to do, if there's someone special that has to come pick those up, if it's a hazardous committee or et cetera. And, um, it would just be, help me sleep at night. That's all I really have.
No, thank you very much for that, Ms. Fleming. And thank you very much, Mr. Fleming as well. Give one second, Mr. Fleming, we still have questions. Go ahead, may your pro temp start us off.
Yeah, so, uh, first of all, thank you all for welcoming me into your home and into your backyard when I was walking your neighborhood about ten days ago. Um, I, uh, I wanted to ask, you mentioned that you've had contact with some county officials and some other officials. Do you have a list of the people that you've spoken with in the city to date, or can you just recall off one hand, how many government officials you've talked to about the situation that you're facing right now?
Yeah, I don't know that I've spoken with anyone in this, in the Inglewood city government, but it was more the Arapahoe County government, it was the Department of Health.
Okay.
And, um, also I had, I had requested information about the, the inspection and that led to the, to the, um, to the condemnation. Now, the, the residents there went, when all this started, the police were there also, they had found pipe bombs in that residence and there was evidence that there had been some drugs, drug production or some sort of, um, meth labs going on as well. So that's what raised my concerns.
Okay.
Is that information leach, leaches over or is in the air or things like that, mostly health concerns.
And just for clarification, you, you requested the information on the condemnation from the county or did you talk to someone in city?
Well, actually, what I did is I went up online, I Googled where we could get soil testing done in Arapahoe County.
Okay.
And there was a, a name of a company called Holg, Hawthorne or Holigan, I'm not for sure, that's located on, um, Oxford. And we called them and they said they don't do, they told you they don't do private residence, is that correct?
Okay, and then my second question, I, I know that we spoke about this personally earlier this evening, but I, I do wanna get this entered into the record. Uh, you did, no one contacted you in regards to the community meeting that's going to occur on the twentieth?
No.
Um, and, okay. Um, yeah, um, and then lastly, and this may be the privilege of whoever has the task of responding to public comment tonight, um, but I, I did inquire with the city attorney's office on the possibility of testing after I spoke with you folks. And I, I'm wondering if the city attorney, it, has an update or can even provide one, um, given the potential legal issues, uh, moving around, uh, this property.
City Attorney, you able to provide a response now or?
Uh, sure. I'm, um, I, I don't know anything new since we last, um, discussed it. We did have a meeting among city staff to discuss, um, the, the status and then, um, what we will present during the public meeting, which unfortunately I'm unable to attend. But, um, there are, um, multiple city actions happening. Multiple city staff is very dedicated to, um, ensuring a safe environment for our citizens. Um, we've authorized emergency actions, expenditure of city funds, we will seek recovery of that, um, because our main priority is to protect the public. And, and if, if our citizens are in danger, we will do whatever it takes and whenever we can legally to, um, to provide that layer of protection. So, um, there's, uh, criminal prosecutions, um, currently pending that are outside of our jurisdiction, uh, in Arapahoe County District Court through the district attorney's office. We also have a concurrent pending prosecution in municipal court for nuisance, uh, emergency abatements. And, um, so we're, we're trying to, uh, not trying to, we've utilized every potential angle that is available to us under law to ensure, um, that your neighborhood is safe. And we, uh, have taken an, an aggressive approach, um, because of the level of, of danger that, that you and your neighbors are experiencing.
Okay, cause my, the only other concern I would have is, since it was probably the garage where a lot of this activity took place and nothing has happened with the garage, it's been all shut up, my biggest concern would be what's still in there and what needs to be hauled out and is that something that we should as neighbors be alerted about if we need to not be home when that is emptied out or et cetera? Same thing with the house.
Well, uh, uh, everything is shut up. Um, we have a, uh, we retained a contractor to ensure, um, everything should be shut and locked. No one should be on the property except for, um, qualified city contractors. Um, there shouldn't be, uh, the homeowner shouldn't be on the property because we've determined it is an immediate hazard. Uh, and we have also added extra police patrols to ensure that, that that happens. Um, we also have additional testing that we have retained, um, third-party contractors to go in and test. Um, we're also seeking assistance from other government agencies that have specialized expertise in this area. Um, and so, so now we're just in the, the testing, inspection, and cleanup process to do, uh, everything we can under the law to, to make sure that immediate hazard is abated.
Okay, because our bedroom windows are on that side. That's just a big concern to me.
Thank you. Uh, that's all the questions I have. I, I hope to see you on the twentieth and if you need any information on that, uh, please contact me.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you for that. Actually, Mr. Fleming, we still have, uh, Mr. and Mrs. Fleming, still have another question. Go ahead, Member Woodward.
Well, I, I wanted to, uh, ask city attorney or city manager or both if we can allow Mr. Fleming in the backyard to repair his fence, at least in an area along his fence to get that repaired.
I, I haven't actually inspected the property, um, so I haven't been on site to, to give you an opinion on that on the fly. What I'd like to do is reach out to code enforcement, uh, as long as it's safe and it doesn't pose a hazard, um, to you or the cleanup activities. Uh, I, I can't imagine that would be a problem, but I'd like to get authority from them because they have been on site regularly and, and been overseeing these activities.
Okay, sounds good.
Okay.
Thank you.
And so the abatement of some of things like propane tanks and that sort of thing, if they're still there, do we have to wait on the courts or something to get rid of those?
Uh, no, because we're currently acting under an emergency abatement order. Um, we actually have multiple avenues available to the city based on the severity of the danger to the public. So because we are operating on an emergency abatement order because it poses an immediate hazard to, um, citizens in the neighborhood, we don't have to wait on anything. Um, we have this emergency order authorizing us to go in and abate everything. Now, once the emergency is passed, um, then we will have to reevaluate. We have administrative processes, we can seek judicial orders, uh, so, so we have some other options now, but as long as the emergency is there, that's all we need is the emergency order, which we have.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
No further questions. Mr. and Mrs. Fleming, thank you very much for coming tonight. Up next is Benjamin Ben David, any Goad Resident here to address counsel. Good evening, Mr. Ben David. If you could just state your name and your address or cross streets?
Uh, Benjamin Ben David, cross street is Amherst and Lincoln. Um, there's a one and a half mile paved alleyway that runs from Yale Avenue to Hamden Avenue in between South Broadway and South Lincoln Street. That alley, that alleyway is used by many transients coming in from Denver into Inglewood. Over the past six years, the number of transients has increased. Uh, on average, there's about twelve people per day using the alleyway, sometimes as many as twenty-six and sometimes as few as five in a twenty-four hour time span. I did an informal poll along the mile and a half alleyway as a reference point. It invited three businesses and three residents that all faced the Broadway-Lincoln Alleyway to participate. All six agreed and I asked one simple question. What are your concerns about having your business or home facing this alley? Here are the results. Everybody agreed that the traffic has increased over the past six years. Sixty percent had been the victim of a property crime. Ninety percent had noticed drug paraphernalia in the alley, alleyway had seen this increase over the years. Eighty percent reported witnessing subjects in the alley under the influence of an unknown substance or possible mental illness, where both, as demonstrated by the subject staggering, falling, yelling, and screaming loudly. EMS services were called in some instances. The businesses reported having customers, employees complain about being harassed for money or food by alleyway users. One person reported being assaulted. All parties stated this increase in this type of alleyway traffic is decreasing the quality of life in Inglewood. All parties stated their experience increased anxiety, stress, and fear. One business was considering leaving and relocating to a safer location for their employees and customer base. The next information was provided by Neighborhood Scout, Area Vibe, and the U.S. Census. These webpages provide all kinds of information about cities throughout the U.S. For purposes of this presentation, I selected stats for Inglewood, Denver, the state of Colorado, and the national median. Here are the results for summer twenty twenty-three. Reported violent crime per thousand residents: Inglewood, seven point three one, Denver, nine point seven, Colorado, four point eight one, national median, four point eight zero. Chance of becoming a victim of crime per one thousand residents: One in thirty-seven in Inglewood, one in a hundred and three in Denver, Colorado, one in two hundred and eight, national median for, for some unknown reason, no data. Property crime per thousand residents: Inglewood, seventy-two point eight nine, Denver, sixty point three two, Colorado, thirty-one point three five, and the national median, nineteen point zero. Crime per square mile: Inglewood, four hundred and four, Denver, three hundred and twenty-two, Colorado, fifty-seven, national median, twenty-six point eight. Police officers per one thousand residents: Inglewood, point, uh, three point two, Denver, two point six, Colorado, nine point six, national median, three point three. Residents per square mile, U.S. Census, twenty twenty: Inglewood, five thousand one hundred twenty-seven point eight, Denver, four thousand six hundred seventy-four point three, Colorado, fifty-two, and the national median, ninety-three point eight. And just as I think about the code index, in the process of being constructed on thirty-four forty-four South Emerson Street, Inglewood, Colorado, there's gonna be a fourteen-story condominium complex, complete with underground parking. The complex will be called the Emerson, a mix of small to medium and large apartment square footage to luxury condominiums. This will add hundreds of more people into the city and create even more traffic tie-ups in the area with Swedish Medical Center directly across the street. This will add perhaps an additional hundred or more vehicles per day to neighborhoods that were once quaint, um, even quiet. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Mr. Ben David. Any questions for members of council? Go ahead, Member Russell.
Thank you. So what was the, what was your source of those crime statistics?
Uh, they were, it's, it was interesting. There's this, um, there's three different sites. It's Neighbors, it's Neighborhood Scout, Area Vibe, and the U.S. Census. And it's just common information that you can find about any city, anywhere in the United States. You, you can ask them anything. You know, how many kids in the school? How many are doing good, not so good, um, things like that.
All right, thank you.
Any further questions? Uh, Member Woodward?
Yeah, um, are you aware of, if that site said City of Inglewood?
Mm-hmm. City of Inglewood, Colorado. Yeah. Yep.
Okay, because the reason I'm asking is, there's a lot of s, police, especially crime sites, that talk about Inglewood. In their analysis, Inglewood goes from our western border out to Dove Valley.
Member Woodward, do you have a question from this or?
Huh? Well, I, I question those.
Okay.
I would like to see those verified by Inglewood Police Department.
Okay, thank you, Member.
But lots of times you're gonna have a, a disparity between what your local police department is going to report to exactly what you're gonna see on a national reportage level. So I've, I've seen that quite a bit. I, I, I looked at these and I tried to average these as much as possible, you know, but, um...
Mr. Ben David, do you have another question or, or sorry, actually another, we're in the Q and A portion here, so, um, any other questions for members of council? Sorry about that.
That's, that's okay.
See now, Mr. Ben David, thank you very much for your time tonight.
Thanks. Okay.
Uh, up next is Mary, I think it's Mary Reagan. I may be incorrect on that, so. Did I get it right?
Yeah.
Oh, there we go. Good evening, Ms. Reagan. If you just state your name and your address or cross streets?
My name is Mary Reagan and I'm at Grand in Delaware. I am here also to, um, get some information about the meth bomb house that has been on my block for over sixteen years. Fifteen years ago, it was raided and it was condemned. Nine years ago, it was raided and the, um, DEA told me that Helen Keller could find drugs in this house. And, um, my question is, how does a house that has been condemned twice in fifteen years, how does the owner be able to continue to keep renting this out? I, I don't understand. So this house has been a nuisance, has been dealing with people, dealing and making drugs, and dealing the drugs right in front of my house. They would not do it down in front of their house. They chose to do it in front of my house. The police were called multiple times and they would come by and nothing was done. They would also use the alley as well. And now it is ex, escalated is the right word, to making pipe bombs. Um, I was hearing explosions in the backyard and normally they're about one o'clock in the morning. So they were done in the morning, they were done in the afternoon, and nothing was being done. When, um, the police were called, we were corrected because we would say that you need to do something with that crack house. And they said, no, we correct you, it is a meth house. So that makes no sense. There have been, um, dog attacks. There were people that were over at the school, walking their dogs, and the dogs from that house would go over and they would attack little old lady. She, I mean, it wasn't elderly lady. She had to keep her dog up over her head and she was undergoing being attacked because they were trying to get her dog. The other time was in the alleyway and, um, that was because somebody had kicked a hole in the neighbor's fence and their little chihuahua got out and endured, um, multiple bite marks before they were able to get, and actually shot. There were, police came because they heard the gunshots. They didn't reply to the dog attack, but the gunshots they replied to. Then, um, I would, um, say, I would like to give a big, um, kudos to the bomb squad and tell them thank you for taking the health and the safety of, um, everyone in my neighborhood first and foremost. There were many homes with children, not to mention that the school that was being used at that time for daycare for the low-income families. So, um, I did buy my house- So, I did buy my house 10 years ago, and for the first time, it is calm, thriving, and non-threatening environment. So thanks for decluttering and cleaning up the mess that they have left behind. But I don't understand why they were allowed to clean up their mess. They just basically took all the paraphernalia and all the stuff that Inglewood didn't want to clean up, they allowed them three days before they fenced in the property and allowed them. Now it's been sealed, so they can't. But they were allowed to clean up part of, I guess, the mess. I don't understand that. And then, I've got here, "You raised my property taxes and have let Pandora and Mayhem out into this city to run over by homelessness, breaking into garages." When I went around telling people about this meeting that I told them to come and voice their opinions, there's an elderly man that lives over off of Shenango and Fox. He had to sell his truck because it keeps getting broken into, and he got tired of it. There have been multiple break-ins over there, and they, right directly across from him, they broke into the garage, they moved in, and they had to call the police to a victim. So this homelessness is, it's running rampant.
Ms. Reagan, your five minutes are up. Thank you very much for your time tonight.
I have so much more to speak.
Ms. Reagan, before we go, any questions for Ms. Reagan? Seeing none, thank you very much for your time tonight, Ms. Reagan. Up next is Marcy Brown, here to address council as well.
The name is Marcy Brown, and District 1 will suffice. So, there's cocktails with council tomorrow, I understand. And it is on your city calendar as a meeting. So I would assume, since there are going to be more than two council members, under the Sunshine Law, it will be recorded. Also, for about a year now, I have not shopped at all in Inglewood because I am sick and tired of people coming up to me from the back, from the side, knocking on my windows in my vehicle, asking for money. So about a month and a half ago, I came out of King Supers on Broadway. I wasn't shopping there. I went to my bank, you know, the one that got held up about a year ago. And I come out of the front entrance with a young mother, with her young daughter, and we're walking out of the entrance, and there's a homeless guy vomiting in front of King Supers. And this mother was trying to shield her daughter from seeing it, but unfortunately, on the other side of her was a guy wrapped up in a blanket with a bottle. And I looked out at my surroundings, and I think I live in a dump. District 1 is a dump. And that's due to council members. You don't care what we think, so you're up for recall. And there, I have a question also for any of you who want to respond or who's ever going to respond tonight. I've been walking the city for a while now, and I have heard unbelievable stories that have gone on in this city. And one of them is, why are developers buying in R1 zoning? That's my question. I have heard from neighbors, citizens, that developers have come up to them wanting to buy their home, and when the citizens ask, "What for?", they say, "Because we're going to scrape it and do a duplex or a triplex." There's a vacant lot that a developer bought. He's been sitting on that for about three or four months. He's told the neighbors he's building a duplex on that. Now, how would he know to buy a lot, a vacant lot, in R1 thinking it's going to be, that he's going to make a buck on it? Developers do not sink hundreds and thousands of dollars into property that they don't think they can turn a buck on. So I'd like to know who's telling them R1 is going to be rezoned, because they're investing in R1. So to me, you know, it doesn't take a PhD to know that 2 plus 2 equals 4. Oh, and also, I would like to just point out that our little city here in Inglewood has made the national news. NBC picked it up and said that, yes, four council members are being recalled. But you know, we're not the only city that is fighting developers. And I think that the city of Inglewood should be a model for other cities to fight these developers. there are cities in Texas now, small cities, there are small cities in Phoenix that are doing the exact same thing we are, going after council members who don't listen to us. And, you know, a lot of you that are being recalled, and even some of you who aren't, should be ashamed of themselves for the quality of life that you have diminished. You have hurt so many people in this city by taking away their privacy, by drainage problems, parking problems, the homelessness. You have invited all this in. Not us. You have. And that's because you don't listen to us. So we need a change up there on the dais, and that's it.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Any questions for members of council? Seeing none, thank you very much for your time tonight, Ms. Brown. Up next is Jan Wyper, an Inglewood resident here to address council. Good evening, Ms. Wyper. If you could just state your name and your address or cross streets.
Jan Wyper, Federal and Bellevue. Well, I have lots of little things. One is, I was at the P&amp;Z meeting this last week. No pledge of allegiance. No pledge of allegiance. I thought quasi-judicial should do that. One of the things I've noticed between planning and zoning and city council is that definitions change. So when all this zoning stuff started coming up, Code Next, you were talking about fourplexes on corners. And then I heard you say, "I thought, we're going to scrap that. We're going to do away with that." Now, guess what they're coming up with? Let's take corner lots, let's divide them so they can have two units in the front and the back. It's a divided lot. It's not a fourplex anymore, but let's add some ADUs. Now, how all of a sudden, how many is that? One ADU maybe? Four. That's a fourplex. Maybe not designed as a fourplex, it's a fourplex. You guys are directing, changing definitions. We're smarter than that. We hear it, we see it. The planning and zoning person said, "We have to look at what's right for the future." Okay, then do coding, do things that are good for the future of everybody. Look at, is the electrical code correct? Is the water being taken care of? Is the plumbing code correct? Is the sewer correct? But stop messing with how many units. You just heard Benjamin Ben David talk about density. I pulled the same figures. They're correct, Mr. Woodward. I pulled the same figures, and I've talked about them in front of here. You've heard all these people talking about crime. More density increases crime. More density increases crime. More density increases crime. You're talking about what to do with solar, what to do with electric vehicles. Well, I got a solar contract on my house, and I canceled it because after I signed it, I started looking at solar. Do you know it costs, it causes more damage to the environment? As those solar panels quit producing so much, they have to go into landfills. They don't just disintegrate. Kids are out mining battery crap for electric vehicles. Kids, little kids, do some research. You're, you're out here, you're saying this is all okay. We don't have to agree with what the New World Order is doing. We do not have to agree with that. That's why we're home rule. Start doing your research. Quit destroying the world. Especially this world. The Election Commission is supposed to be involved if there's a special election coming up, and as far as I know, they haven't been called to order. And you're voting on this tonight? Uh-uh, uh-uh. Follow your code. Follow your business here. You guys are doing whatever you want to. It's called kangaroo government. Who is telling R1 is being rezoned? Somebody stood up here, Chelsea, Jim, Joe Anderson, I can't remember which one of you it was, and said, "We have four votes. We're going to do it." Somebody up here told everybody that. Who was it? Will you admit to standing up here and doing it? This stuff is being done for developers and investors, not for the people of Inglewood. The other thing I want to say real quickly while I have 15 seconds is, there is such a thing as civil disobedience, and I think we need to start looking at that nonviolent civil disobedience. And if we have to group together to go to neighborhoods where a family is being threatened because our city can't stop it, we need to have each other's phone numbers so we can show up and stand in front of their house and take pictures of these thugs that were being put under their thumb. Thank you, please. You know, please, we've tried to tell you we don't want this. Please, vote this crap down. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wyper, for your time tonight. Any questions for council? Seeing none, thank you very much, Ms. Wyper. Up next is Gary Kozak, here to address council regarding the referendum.
Gary Kozak, Inglewood, Colorado, Oxford and Lepan Street. My partner just issued a notice of intent to sue the city of Inglewood. A judicial review on Sam's Auto PUD. It's very self-explanatory, and it's by the law, the United States government law. Anybody out here that has, anybody from the Sam's Automotive approach your house with a banner, a sign, knock on your door and/or call you? I ask you to call the Attorney General and put in an argument, put in a complaint. And the reason is, that's referendum tampering. It's a Colorado state law to stop things going on like the Sams went out and tried to tell everybody that happened to be, we were trying to get them to re-sign the petition, where a group that was not qualified was able to throw it out, and a hearing judge that was biased, absolutely biased. So we were forced to turn around and give you that notice. The date's on the petitions. By state law, you have to authorize it if there's a date on either side. 38 of those are thrown out. I put over 500 petition numbers on. I missed one page, one page on packet 40, and the hearing officer threw out all 50 people's votes, their signatures. Now, is that representation of our residents? No. It's somebody coming in and taking over. The city of Inglewood and their staff that's trained turned around and approved our referendum. A protest came about, and that protest was filed late, but somebody was able to try to manipulate it around, so that's already been turned over. Yes, we've gone in the state of Colorado's government, and there are several aspects of all this that's being investigated. You can stop it by going ahead and withdrawing that protest and let the people in the city vote for that development. Now, talking about traffic studies.
Mayor, I forgot to do the timer, but I do think the timer is up.
No way, no way. I've timed this, I've timed this, so you're sorry. Start it right now.
Actually, Mr. Kozak, go ahead and keep speaking. I'm keeping a time here once she let me know the timer is up, so, go ahead.
Okay. Cora is a great thing. Cora allowed us to go in and find out that there was not, there was not a traffic study. It was the developer put up a proposal of the impact study. Wait a minute, oh, well, it's our property, so we'll just make this kind of a review on the impact that this might cause, the traffic down there. We got licensed snake. You just had somebody talk about the hole we got down there that still isn't getting filled up or protected. Here again, Cora law allowed us to find out a whole lot of communication going on in this city that was being covered up, allowing things to go on that are illegal. And lo and behold, Cora, we went another direction and happened to uncover some of it. Yes, we got a whole lot that we can introduce in a court of law. Now, you've had somebody come up and talk about the neighborhood problems. We've had lots of them. My neighbor had his fence burnt down. If they could have got in the fence, they would have burned his house down. Okay? I got kids crossing that street every day. We had somebody run over the sign again. When are we going to go ahead and say, "Okay, how do we control it?" Well, maybe we got to increase our police force to give them a fighting chance, because we don't have any traffic speed controls anymore like we used to have at the bottom of the hill. At one time, we had to cut the hill down because it was so steep. I served on city council when this was developed and put forward from the Highway Department, the Santa Fe Corridor, Oxford Connection. I know all the stats. I was representing the city, and we got a whole lot better project than what they were proposing, a flyover at Windermere, and that hole, right there where that hole is, would have been 16 feet deeper.
Mr. Kozak, your time is up.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Kozak, thank you very much for your time tonight. Any questions for members of council? Seeing none, Mr. Kozak, thank you for your time.
God bless you all, and good luck on your recall.
Thank you, Mr. Kozak. Up next is Kevin Wright, here to address council. Good evening, Mr. Wright. If you could just state your name and your address or cross streets.
My name is Kevin Wright. I live over in Inglewood. I'd like to thank Carl Adams for all the work you've done on the Planning and Zoning Commission. You've done a great job, my friend. Thank you. Tonight, I would like to discuss the Planning and Zoning Commission and responsibilities they have as volunteer members. As volunteer members, we understand that each member has volunteered, is contributing to their time for free with no compensation from the city of Inglewood. I am grateful for people willing to volunteer services and for those of you who devote your time to help run the city with little compensation. Thank you. As a citizen of Colorado, my family chose Inglewood as our home, and we love this city. My wife, Kim, and I, as well as all the people who have attended city council meetings, study sessions, planning and zoning meetings, all have something in common with the Planning and Zoning Commission. We volunteer hours of our life to help the city. We love to be a better place than we've ever been. I attended the Planning and Zoning Meeting last week, where they planned the pass Title 16 in Code Next. It was apparent that not all members of the Planning and Zoning Commission have a full grasp of all the details involved in UDC and Title 16. With the blank stares, changes to the zoning, several questions were asked from a concerned community met with blank stares and shuffling of papers, leaving the public with the impression that all members on the committee are not fully informed of this project, a project that can change the lives of every citizen of Inglewood forever. that can change the lives of every citizen of Inglewood forever. I would like to use the following example. Let's say you go to the hospital for surgery, a surgery that will change your life forever. You start asking the surgeon and his team that are going to operate on you specific questions regarding your surgery, and you're met with blank stares and watch them start shuffling through their medical books. To find the answers, the doctor and his staff feel threatened and become defensive, no longer wanting to give you any more time to ask questions, questions that can be life-threatening as well as life-changing. You're scheduled for surgery that month, and those that you have entrusted your life to operate on you have placed doubt in your mind about their capabilities for performing this surgery. Would you find a new surgeon or let them operate? I use this example because I actually had the same thing happen to me. I had a doctor tell me I had a double hernia, and one word changed to where I went and asked for a second opinion, and it turned out to be my hip. The people on the Planning and Zoning Commission are all good people with good intentions. They're not specialists in the field pertaining to changing the zoning of our neighborhoods. And after being interviewed for a planning and zoning position, the question of my experience was not taken into consideration. I read the bylaws and requirements of the Open Meetings Act. All meetings shall be open to the public and carried out in compliance with Colorado Open Meetings Law, CRS 246-401. The board members, the board member that wants to limit our time to two minutes and not allow us a chance to talk at the meetings are balancing on breaking law granted to the citizens. All meetings should be live broadcast in accommodations for the disabled and hard hearing. Tonight, I hereby call for the Planning and Zoning Commission to be removed in its entirety from any decision regarding Title 16 and Code Next project. After reading the 2023 capital improvements, budget, and recommendations, it becomes clear that the Planning and Zoning members have been distracted by this project and have lost sight of the needs of the citizens of Inglewood, Colorado. We are spending more money on a golf course than what we has, has been allocated for our safety and well-being, and I refer to the sinkholes and deterioration of a 92-inch storm sewer in the South Inglewood as a missed opportunity to receive $1.6 million in funds to build a pedestrian bridge over Oxford and Abode that was never put up. And the postponed delayment of the project until 2025 and 2026. It's clear to see that the PMZ Commission was not working in the best interest of the citizen, but the best interest of the city council. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Mr. Wright, for your time tonight. Any questions? Seeing none, thank you very much. Up next, we're gonna have Kim Wright go, and then we'll have Laura Jordan go from online. Is that correct, city clerk? But normally, we have the people in person speak first, and then we have those online. So we'll have, we'll have Kim Wright come up. And Ms. Wright is here to address council. Good evening, Ms. Wright. If you could just state your name and your address or cross streets.
Good evening, Kim Wright, Inglewood, Julian and Tufts. Thank you for having me, although you don't have a choice. I stand before you to address a matter of utmost importance, the election laws that govern our democratic process. The signature collection to recall began May 7th, and petitions had to be submitted by July 6th. This was completed on two different times, the same dates, and it was not planned initially in 2018, again in 2023. Compared to 2018, there are a number of differences than in 2023. In 2018, the recall election was September 18th. This recall may be scheduled for October 3rd. Did cancel taking two weeks off in July contribute to the delay in this year's recall election? In 2018, the clerk's office only had one clerk, whereas now we have four capable clerks. These clerks play a pivotal role in overseeing the election process, and their increased number should lead to a smooth and efficient procedure. It appears that the city is not adhering to established rules and procedures. Moreover, there are questions surrounding the possibility of confusion resulting from having three separate elections. Did the Elections Commission have a say in this decision? We need to understand the perspective and where they would have, whether they would have supported such an arrangement. Lastly, did I skip a page? I skipped a page, I'm sorry. There has been suspicions regarding the lack of transparency in the current proceedings, specifically referring to a postcard that was sent out by the city and coincidentally mirrored, it mirrored the postcard and flyer distributed by two council members. This raises questions about whether the city is trying to influence public opinion and protect certain council members from being recalled. We deserve answers about the reasoning behind this alignment. Another concern lies in the absence of any cost analysis from the vendor and the identity of the vendor responsible for the recall election. In 2018, all this information was readily available to the public. We need to understand this data and why it is not being disclosed and the implications of such secrecy might be for the integrity of the processes. Where is it? I must also bring attention to the fact that the Election Commission was not consulted during the recall proceedings despite its role in overseeing elections. It is essential for us to know why they were not involved in such a matter of this significance. It appears that the city is not adhering to established rules and proceedings. Moreover, there are questions surrounding the possibility of confusion resulting from having three separate elections. Did the Election Commission have a say in this decision? We need to understand their perspective and whether they would have supported such an arrangement. Lastly, the timeline for the recall election in relation to the November general election warrant examination. With the recall election set for October 3rd and a 10-day curing period, there seems to be a tight schedule for printing and mailing the November election ballots by mid-October. We must understand how the city plans to manage the situation, ensuring that accuracy and legitimacy of both election results. The citizens have entrusted the city council with the responsibility of upholding transparency, integrity, and fairness in all matters of governance. It is crucial, crucial that these hard questions be addressed and answered honestly. Our community deserves a clear explanation and assurances that our democratic processes are being upheld to the utmost integrity. I'm sorry if there's some confusion there and skipping a page.
Anything else, Ms. Wright?
No.
Thank you very much for your time. Ms. Wright, any questions from council? Seeing none, thank you very much for your time. And sorry about that, city clerk. We're now back to Laura Jordan, and she's online, correct? Okay.
Yes.
Ms. Jordan, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you. Can you hear me?
I can hear you, Ms. Jordan. If you could just state your name and your address or cross streets.
Sure, my name is Laura Jordan, and I live on the cross streets of Delaware and Grand.
Perfect. You may begin, Ms. Jordan, with five minutes.
Sure, thank you very much. We bought our home here in 2013, and our health and public safety has been in question ever since. Over the first couple of years here, we started noticing the selling of drugs on the corner of Delaware and Grand. We used to have a chain-link fence in the backyard, and we would notice all the vehicle traffic in the alley to buy those drugs. We found needles, people's stolen wallets, billfolds, places where items are stashed in the alley behind the fence. And back when our neighbor Mary moved in, she noticed that there, what was going on and was informed by law enforcement to not record, approach, or call the police on these people because they were being monitored and that the situation was in their control and that they were aware. Back in 2015, 2016, that same house was raided by the DEA. We thought the clemency was over, but a month or so later, it was like nothing ever happened. Now, these days, there's so much foot traffic of junkies in the streets and in the alley going in and out of that house. All the folks panhandling money at the nearby intersections funnel into this home and get their fix. There have been a couple of occasions around 2:00, 3:00 in the morning where my husband has seen a particular vehicle parked on Grand next to our house. Two individuals got out of the car, walked across our lawn with two medium-sized duffel bags, walked up the street to that home, and an hour later or so, walked back to their truck with the same bags in hand. The home has been a drug-related civil nuisance for over a decade. It had to go this far for an abatement order to be issued, and now to find out that they were experimenting with explosives like pipe bombs is completely unacceptable. There is a reasonable expectation of health and safety for the tax-paying homeowners of this neighborhood to not have to put up with this continual illegal activity that is coming from this particular home. The appearance of this home and the property has been on site leak with refuge in waste storage containers, and the overall poor condition of the property looking like a junkyard is absolutely unacceptable. The guy who rides the motorcycle is coming and going all hours of night into the early morning, and now, because it has gotten to this point and has come this far, we fear for our health and our safety in regards to a possible retaliation from the homeowners or others involved with their crime. If this cannot be eradicated, we are prepared to take further action so that we can bring peace and healing back into this community and make it safe for our children, our families, and for all the tax-paying homeowners here who put everything into making this a beautiful, welcoming community for our children to be raised. And all I ask from you today is to please consider everything that we have all spoke on tonight and help us eradicate the situation. Thank you so much.
Ms. Jordan, thank you very much for your time tonight.
You're welcome.
Mayor Protam has a question for you, Ms. Jordan. Go ahead, Mayor Protam.
Just a couple of questions, Ms. Jordan. First of all, you may or may not know this, but was it your husband that I spoke to when I canvassed the neighborhood about 10 days ago?
Yes, sir. He's unable to attend because he's at work, so.
Okay, that helps me. And then the second question, you may have heard me ask this earlier of your neighbors. Have you been contacted regarding the community meeting on July 20th?
No, sir, I have not.
Okay. Just to elaborate on that, there is a community meeting at 6:00 PM at Colorado Spineist, where the police department and several members of city staff will discuss the situation on your street.
Mayor Protam, did you give it to him?
6:00 PM, July 20th, at Colorado Spineist.
Thank you.
Any further questions for members of council? Go ahead, Member Woodward.
I'm sorry, I didn't catch the name of who was speaking.
Oh, sorry. It is Laura Jordan. She is listed under M on the public comment. M as in Mary. All right. Any further questions? Ms. Jordan, thank you very much for calling in tonight and letting us know about the situation on Delaware. Thank you. Up, that concludes scheduled public comment. We're gonna move to unscheduled public comments. Same rules apply, but you're limited to three minutes. I believe we have four names on the list, five. We'll start off with Pamela Beetz here to discuss housing update. Good evening, Ms. Beetz. Sorry, I wasn't able to read the handwriting. If you could just state your name and your address or cross streets.
Good evening, council. Pamela Beetz, Delaware and Floyd. I'm going to quote some of the R2 descriptions of zoning from Code Next. R2 districts 16-4-A-1, quote, "The R2 districts provide living in mixed-density neighborhoods with a mix of houses and small-scale multi-unit buildings and include subclassifications of graduated intensity reflecting in a wider range of building types," end quote. Do you understand that? I don't. What does it mean? It's so vague and open-ended, a developer could build most anything they like anywhere in an R2 district. My feeling is, until each of you can define what that means, explain and define how this will be applied in reality, actual building and development, this should not go forward in R2 districts. What I know, this will effectively end single-family home neighborhoods in R2. I also have significant concerns on the timeline of the change of zoning and multi-density housing and units in R2. When you look at all of our infrastructure problems, there, in my opinion, is no way you can rebuild our neighborhoods, because you're not gonna wait for all us old people to die off or move and do this one or two lots at a time. I suspect we'll see significant parts of R2 bulldozed, and you're gonna start over for what you want our neighborhoods to look like. Despite your protests, I believe there are a large number of householders, homeowners, business owners, and other residents that are uninformed about these zoning changes that will so drastically affect their lives. I talked to one of my neighbors, and he said, "How did this happen? You're depressing me." I think you can do a mailer that should contain maps, zones, and districts, zoning changes to single-family home districts, whether it's R1 or R2. You can tell people about end-of-lot development, expanded ADU and short-term rentals, parking limitation, courtyard homes, et cetera, and how to contact you. I believe if you stand behind this zoning, you should not be afraid to completely inform every household in the best way possible before moving set forward. This affects every single person in this city. This must be an ballot issue. We have a say in our future. We own Inglewood, house by house, and you were elected to serve our best interests.
Ms. Beetz, thank you very much for your time. Any questions from council? Seeing none. Ms. Beetz, thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you.
Up next is Mike Jones with no topic given. Good evening, Mr. Jones. If you could just state your name and your address or cross streets.
Good evening, council. Mike Jones, Duncan Park, District 3, Joe Anderson's district currently. It's unfortunate that I find myself here this evening in front of you having to address the ongoing issue of density, which is being pushed forward by the Code Next effort. I want to thank Mr. Ben David and others for giving me a segue to discuss the problems that our city's going through and that this Code Next will propagate. Most of Code Next is good. However, the creation of density in our city is not. I was shocked when I went to P&amp;Z the other night, first time I've been to a P&amp;Z meeting. However, I knew that the, that the company that you have contracted with was gonna get up and actually discuss Code Next. As previously mentioned, Inglewood is already one of the densest cities in our country for a city of its size. Actually, in Colorado, we rank 11th for density. Denver is 17th. This is clearly, with regards to Code Next and the density portion of this code change, is an ideological position with no benefit to our citizens, but exactly the opposite, as has already been discussed this evening. You bring in out-of-state consultants to tell us what our city should look like. Shame on us, council. Inglewood continues to, Inglewood continues to fail to do the due diligence when it comes to projects. I've spoken to a number of people a couple of times about this very code change and the fact that this consultant has not done their due diligence. I sit on the South Inglewood Sanitation District as a director. We manage half of Inglewood's sewer pipes. We manage half of Inglewood's sewer pipes. No discussion's been held with us. So how do we know that our infrastructure is actually going to support any of this code change that you're talking about? I wanna know, have you guys not learned over the past five years with regards to the tragic flood that happened and what our infrastructure inadequacies are causing our citizens? Stop wasting our money on pet initiatives and start fixing our city where it needs to be fixed. Finally, to say that this code update is about affordability is a ruse. It's a lie, and it has been all along. Council has not provided any data to support that statement. Now we've shifted from that to ADUs, which we know are not affordable housing.
Mr. Jones, thank you very much for your time tonight. Any questions? Seeing none. Thank you very much, Mr. Jones. Up next is, is it Ivan Irwin? Here to speak about Code Next. Good evening, Mr. Irwin. If you could just state your name and your address and cross streets?
Ivan Irwin. We're on Jason Street between Mansfield and Oxford. Uh, my wife sent a very detailed, uh, text or email. It was addressed to council and the city manager and a number of other people. And I hope you've all read it. And I don't have a whole lot to add. This, the presentations tonight have been super. I don't know how you can leave this meeting and say you haven't heard from the citizens, and I sure hope you take it to heart. That's all.
Thank you very much, Mr. Irwin. Any questions from, from council? Seeing none. Mr. Irwin, thank you for your time tonight. Up next is Barry Lancaster with no topic given. Good evening, Mr. Lancaster. If you could just state your name and your address or cross streets?
Good evening, Mayor. Barry Lancaster, uh, Cross Streets, University and Dartmouth. Counsel, I'm here to address a similar issue. I had spoken with you all, had the privilege to speak with you all roughly a month ago, maybe six weeks ago, about our courts and the fines and systems that, that are being looked at. Uh, I was alerted by a friend that tonight there is a, a possible vote on the ordinance, CB 22 regarding reimbursement of police. And in, in a quick read, uh, that I did of this at, at 5 o'clock, it is structured, it is stated that it is supposed to mirror or be much akin to the state statute that reimburses sheriffs for their costs of, for example, serving subpoenas, et cetera. The problem is, the way this is written, it does the opposite of what that state statute does. What that state statute does, and, and I pulled it up here, uh, for example, for serving and returning each subpoena in other than a criminal action on each witness in counties of every class, actual expenses, but not more than $60. Uh, for making a return on a subpoena, in counties, $5. For making a return, there's, it's a, it's an entire list throughout the statute that is listed. And the, and the state statute is CRS 30-1-104. And, and that's fine. But what the code you are voting on tonight does is not that. What the language, and, and language is important, as you all know, what the language of this statute or this bill does is it creates minimums, not maximums. My 10-year-old daughter, I had her check my logic tonight. The, the language here is, and I recognize we are close on time, the, the language of this bill states every private party requesting or person whose criminal violation mandates for investigation or prosecution, the following action shall pay to the City of Inglewood the greater of the amount established by city council or actual costs for the following services by or on behalf of the Inglewood Police Department. Folks, it's not what the state statute does. This creates a minimum amount. We have judges that can help determine these things, and I know I'm at 10 seconds and I'm sorry, but I was just alerted to this. You need more time. I am happy to assist with this language, but more time is needed, sir.
Thank you very much, Mr. Lancaster, for your time tonight. Uh, Member Russell does have a question for you.
Actually, I would like to give him more time this evening since we're looking at it, if that's possible.
I think we've allotted three minutes here. Members of council want to change from our normal protocol here. Anybody wanna give more than three minutes, but I'm fine to keep it as is. Go ahead, Member Anderson. Let's see you reaching.
Yeah, I, I'm, uh, I'd be interested in, in hearing more, but I don't think it would be fair to other citizens to add, add time on for one at the end.
Thank you. Is there anyone in disagreement? Go ahead, Member Russell.
Um, actually, then I think that we need to look at, um, tabling this if we're not gonna give him more time.
Thank you, Member Russell. With no further questions, Mr. Lancaster, thank you very much for your time tonight.
Thanks, sir.
Up next is Idem A Nickel here, uh, no topic given. Good evening, Ms. Nickel. If you could just state your name and your address or cross streets?
Uh, Idem A Nickel, and I live at, uh, the Cross streets, La Penn and Union. Okay. Uh, good evening, Council. I was just wondering if you have ever considered some of these things. The stakes have never been higher if we lose our freedoms here in our little city of Inglewood and all the other cities across our country are being lost. If we lose America, the whole world will be lost. There is no other country with as much liberty as the United States of America. If we lose our freedom here in America, there will be no one left to fight. Big government's rules, big government rulings made up by a few people who make the decisions and intend for us to obey them was never meant to happen in America by our forefathers. I know the history because my forefather, Amos Richardson, and his brothers came to America with the Winthrop family in 1630. It is a great story of history. They left their goods, land, and wealth behind to come here to America for freedom of unfair laws and freedom for religion. All the big colleges in the East were started by the folks who came from the Winthrop's and were Christian colleges. And now look at them, what has happened. Uh, I have another little story. It was about 12, 15 years ago. I'm not really sure how long. I've been doing volunteer work in this city for 63 years, since 1960. This middle-aged man told me a story that he had moved here to Inglewood from a city in Michigan. He was so tired of all the rules the city put in and didn't, citizens didn't pay attention. The city started putting up all these high-rise shelters for homeless, and the city started decaying. The buildings started decaying and the people moved out. He said he wanted to get out, as all he could see are these empty buildings decaying. I wanted to move to a place where I could have a small house, a yard, and a garden, and he found Inglewood, Colorado, and he simply loved it here. So I asked the question, are we going to be into decay someday and people wanting to move out of Inglewood and can't with no other place to move to? I was just wondering. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Nickel. Any questions for members of council? Seeing none. Ms. Nickel, thank you for your time. And city clerk, anybody online tonight? Nope. All right. That concludes unscheduled public comment. I guess I should have made everyone aware, but Member Noon Camp has given the, uh, response tonight, so when you are ready, Member Noon Camp, feel free to begin.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, everyone, for coming out tonight. I'm gonna work through my notes here. Mr. Ma, who's no longer here, we will be discussing that issue later this evening with the private activity bonds. Um, Ms. Bailey, thank you so much for being here and sharing your thoughts with us tonight. Um, also, Ms. Dickerson and Mr. Dewis, thank you so much for being here as well and sharing your thoughts. Uh, I do have a council request based on what Mr. Dewis shared. City manager, can we please look into the safety standards for street repairs, specifically the Oxford site? Um, Mr. and Mrs. Cooper, who I don't believe are here anymore, but perhaps are listening online, thank you so much for coming and sharing about your unfortunate experience with the motorcycle shop that's near your home. Um, city manager, can we also please look into the code enforcement ordinances with this business and to see what we can do about enforcing the codes that we do have? Regarding everyone who, um, lives in the Delaware Street area, I wanna start just by apologizing for your experience. This is, um, definitely not the kind of safety experience that we want for citizens in our community, and I'm sorry for what you've experienced for quite some time. Um, this is a new, uh, experience for me, new information. This is not a residence that I have been familiar with in the past, but I'm sorry that it's gotten to this point. Um, so for Mr. and Mrs. Fleming, for Ms. Reagan and Ms. Jordan, thank you so much for sharing. I do hope you can come to the community meeting on Thursday. Again, that's at 6:00 PM at Colorado's Finest, um, where we can continue that conversation and ensure that we're meeting the safety standards that you have for your street and for your neighborhood. Um, I also would like to offer a council request for Mr. Fleming. We can follow up with him about the access to the property for his fence. Um, Mr. Ben David, thank you so much for being here, if you're still here, and sharing your concerns with us. Um, Ms. Brown, thank you for coming here and sharing your thoughts with us tonight. Um, you did ask us a question. You said, "Why are developers buying in R1 and who is telling them that R1 is being rezoned?" Um, I don't have the answer to that. I, I have not said, I've not spoken to any developers in this process. I have, uh, not under the impression that R1 is being rezoned based on, uh, the information that, that we have said. Uh, we have dropped, tabled the item of multifamily homes in R1 neighborhoods, and so that's not something that I'm sharing, and that's not something that anyone should be under the impression in the current Code Next draft. Um, Ms. Wiper and Ms. Wright, actually, thank you so much for being here tonight. You both brought up the question about the election commission weighing in on the special election coming up. Um, that is a question I have as well, and will be asking that question when we get to that item tonight. So thank you so much for raising that. Um, and I just wanted to concur with Ms. Wright. We do need to ensure we have accuracy and legitimacy in our elections. It's incredibly important to me and, um, can just share from my experience that our staff has been working around the clock to ensure that we are complying with all of the rules and regulations that we have within our charter and have actually also even behind the scenes in ways that the city would never see, operated with the utmost integrity to ensure that staff is not weighing in or influencing elections in any way, shape, or form. Um, thank you so much to Mr. Kozak and Mr. Wright for being here and sharing your thoughts with us tonight, um, as well as Ms. Beats. Um, I do understand that sometimes the language in zoning and in code is maybe not the clearest to the average reader or to the untrained eye, but there is significant information within the code beyond the initial description uh, portion that will ensure that developers can't just do whatever they want, that they will actually be regulated by the code beyond the initial description paragraph. Um, Mr. Jones, thank you for being here and sharing your thoughts with us. And Mr. Irwin, we will be following up with your wife's email as well. Um, Ms. Nickel, thank you so much for your history of volunteerism within the community. I appreciate you sharing your thoughts. And Mr. Lancaster, I know we ran out of time. Thank you for being here. I apologize that we weren't, weren't able to have more time. Um, but perhaps, uh, I'm assuming we'll take a break after this. We can chat over the break before we address that item later tonight. And I believe that's everyone.
Thank you very much, Member Noon Camp. Uh, Member Russell, go ahead.
Thank you. I would just like to thank every one of you for coming out tonight, and I heard, um, your concerns and, um, I do have a lot of the same concerns. Uh, the one thing that I would like is, I, I believe that perhaps we need to call an executive, uh, session for legal, legal advice um, regarding the intent to sue, and I believe it would be wise for us to do that. Um, so if the city attorney could weigh in on that.
Uh, yes, attorney-client privilege. Uh, questions regarding a specific legal issue are an appropriate, uh, topic for executive session. It's not required to be on the agenda for us to go into executive session. Generally, I would recommend if we do that, we do it at the end of the meeting so that everybody knows we won't take any action afterward and they don't have to stay until midnight or 1:00 AM like we occasionally do. Um, but I have received the paperwork. I will report on it briefly in my monthly litigation report to council, litigation and claims whenever we receive a notice of claim. Um, but I, under Colorado law, um, you can issue what's called a, a notice of claim under CGIA, the Colorado Government and Community Act. This doesn't purport to be that, so, um, it appears to me that it's, they're giving us notice of intent to, to file some sort of judicial action, but I'm, I'm not exactly sure what. Um, but, but I have received an email from Mr. Williams, uh, after we received this, and I will, of course, be responding to that.
Thank you.
Uh, go ahead, Mayor Protem.
I have just a couple of small items in response to public comment as well. Some things that struck me during public comment. One of them was the question of cocktails with council tomorrow night. Uh, will we be keeping minutes or recording? The answer to that question as I see it is no, because we're not required to. Um, and that's in the Sunshine Law, uh, 24642D Roman II, um, which says, "Minutes of any meeting of a local public body at which the adoption of any proposed policy, position, resolution, rule, regulation, or formal, formal action occurs or could occur shall be taken and promptly recorded." Uh, it goes on, um, but essentially, that is not what is happening tomorrow night. Uh, because we have multiple members of council present, we are required to post it as, as a meeting. Um, but we are not adopting public policy or taking formal council action. It's an opportunity for the body as a whole to meet with members of the public who are interested in doing so. Um, secondly, um, there was a question about why the elections commission has not been involved in the recall process. And, uh, I was interested in the answer to that question as well, so I looked at the charter and the requirement for the elections commission in the charter. Uh, the last paragraph of that says, "Where municipal election procedure is in doubt, the election commission shall prescribe the procedure to be followed." At no point in this process has municipal election procedure ever been in doubt, which is why the election commission was not tapped to be involved in the process. Uh, we know what our charter requires, we know what our municipal code requires, and we know what state law requires, and we have done those things, and that is why we have not engaged the election commission.
Thank you very much, Mayor Protem. Anyone else? And with that, that concludes the public comment portion of the evening. Do we wanna take a small break? Five minutes, 10 minutes? Members of council, if you could please be seated. All right, members of council, we want to get started again. All right, everyone, we're on to, are we on? We're not on, are we? I guess we kind of need to make sure that that's on. Oh, we're good. All right, perfect. All right, everyone, we're on to agenda item nine, consent agenda items. We have two items polled, 981, 982. Anything else? Go ahead, Member Russell.
I would like to pull 9B1 also.
Perfect. That leaves just 9B2 at this point.
Okay.
Anyone, are we good with 9B2? If so, can I get a motion to approve 9B2?
Salute.
Thank you, Mayor Proton. Could I get a second? Thank you, Member Anderson. Can we please vote?
Member Anderson?
Aye.
Member Noonan Camp?
Aye.
Member Russell? Yes, Member Russell?
Aye.
Mayor Proton Ward?
Aye.
Member Woodward?
Aye.
Mayor Ciara?
Aye.
Let the record show six ayes.
Thank you. Moving on to 981. Member Russell, you have a question for Director Van Ry.
Yes, thank you very much. So how much staff time to implement the requirements of this program?
So actually, the program actually saves us staff time. And the way it saves us staff time is it, WaterSense has water conservation programs that are already established and work and outreach materials and things like that. So as part of the Water Efficiency Plan that we adopted late last year and has gone through the Colorado Water Conservation Board, we have a number of water conservation commitments that we've made in that plan. By partnering with WaterSense, we don't have to individually create those on our own as a city. We can utilize the EPA's WaterSense program. So in actuality, it actually saves the utility staff time because we don't have to develop those individualized programs. So it's actually a time saver for us as opposed to something that costs us a lot of time.
So are we required by law to have a program?
So we have to follow through on our water efficiency program. That's what, if you remember the document that we brought last year, we have to, it's through the Colorado Water Conservation Board. We have to update it every seven years. We were a few years late in updating ours. In there, we have commitments to what we're going to do to improve our water conservation efforts within the city. And WaterSense is an adopted program that's utilized throughout the country to help communities actually do that more cost-effectively so that each city across the US isn't creating their own individualized water conservation program.
So are we required to do the water conservation program, or is that also voluntary?
No, we are required to do water efficiency. We are, our water efficiency plan, we are required to update every seven years. So that is a requirement. We have to have it approved by the Colorado Water Conservation Board, which we are in the process. Has that been approved? They're in their review. Their review apparently takes a little bit of time, but we are waiting for their final adoption, at which point, we have a seven-year schedule of commitments that we've made to the Colorado Water Conservation Board in order to improve our water conservation efforts as a city. This helps us do that.
Okay. I struggle with the EPA and giving them any authority, so, okay.
In this, it's as we think they're helping us. So we think it's a program that actually will save us time and energy. It's a tried and true program that's been there for quite some time.
Okay, thank you. That did answer my questions.
Go ahead, Member Woodward.
Thank you. I went at the CML conference a couple of weeks ago, the state conference. I went to a presentation that was put on by the cities of Thornton, Aurora, and Westminster, I believe it was, that are all participating in this program, what they are doing, and the outcomes. They evidently have been doing it for a while. And Aurora specifically is really serious, I think, about what they're doing. But there was a lot of good ideas there, and I'll be voting for this. So I just thought it was very interesting. Thank you.
Any other questions for Director Van Ry? If not, can I get a motion to approve 981?
I'll move 981.
Thank you, Member Woodward. Could I get a second?
Second.
Thank you, Member Anderson. Any further comments? If not, can we please vote?
Member Anderson?
Aye.
Member Noonan Camp?
Aye.
Member Russell?
Aye.
Mayor Proton Ward?
Aye.
Member Woodward? Mayor Ciara?
Aye.
Let the record show six ayes.
Thank you. Thank you, Director. Up next, we have a question for, or we're back to 982, a question from Member Russell to our city clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. And so one of the questions that I have is, how will the calendar at the back of the packet impact our recall election? As far as, because the ballot for, the ballot deadline, let's see. It is on like August. Where is that? I saw it on here that, hang on, that they're going to set the ballot, the names, they will draw the names for the coordinated election. And because we have a recall election going on, how will those, because we won't be doing, maybe, the election later for the two recalled seats, or actually all four of them? How are we going to generate? And maybe this actually goes for, more for the recall, but this impacts the recall election.
So this is our usual general municipal election that is completely coordinated with this county. So the exhibit and the calendar that you see is for the coordinated election with Arapahoe County for our general municipal election in November. The recall election will be a completely separate, independent, special election.
Right. I understand that. I guess what I'm asking is, will we know that there are seats available or not available? Because the recall election isn't going to happen till later than when the...
So because of the timing, we wouldn't necessarily have that. I mean, per our charter, there's a recall, two recall officers. there's a recall, two recall officers. Even in the case that an officer is recalled, then you hold a completely separate vacancy election. And the timeline wouldn't have worked for a recall to happen, a notice of vacancy, a circulation of nomination petitions. For, I certified the ballot for the coordinated election on November, or I'm sorry, September 8th. So, that is all set in stone regardless.
Okay, so, and I mean, I did see it on here, I don't, I don't see it now, so maybe I was getting this confused with the other calendar. So, the questions I probably have will come up during the other one, so.
Okay.
Alright.
I just want to make sure I understand, so if there's anything else that I maybe just misunderstood.
Right, I think that, that answered my question. Well, I didn't really have a question about this because I, but I wondered if it would impact the recall election.
It should not, no.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions for members of council? See none, can I get a motion to approve 982?
I move to approve 982.
Thank you, member Russell. Could I get a second?
Second.
Thank you, member Noonan Camp. Any further comments? Can we please vote?
Member Anderson?
Aye.
Member Noonan Camp?
Aye.
Member Russell?
Aye.
Mayor Proton Ward?
Aye.
Member Woodward?
Aye.
Mayor Sierra?
Aye.
Let the record show six ayes.
Thank you, moving on to 9B1, um, oh, member Russell, I think this question probably would be for our city attorney.
Yeah, well, yes, and this is the one that I was going to move to table to a future date.
Thank you, uh, member Russell. Uh, I guess, I guess we should probably make the motion then at this point.
Okay. I'm, and do we, can we have discussion first?
Do we make the motion first and then have a discussion? Yeah, let's make the motion first and then...
My question is, when should we table it to? That's, that's my question.
Go ahead, city attorney.
Well, I'll tell you the position of staff. I think, um, if council's not comfortable moving forward with this, we would just ask that it fail at this time and then we'll bring it back if and when we feel that it's an appropriate format that's appropriate for council consideration. I mean, I think this is maybe the fourth or fifth time it's been on the agenda. Um, we've revised it every time and if it's still not in a form that you're comfortable with, I'm not confident that we can get it in a form you're comfortable with in a, in a set timeline. So, um, I would prefer to have, take whatever time we need to get it right.
So, can we, oh, okay, I could make, I still could make the motion to table and then we'll discuss and then...
Table to date uncertain?
Um, you, you could make a motion or it could just fail for lack of a motion.
Yeah.
Um, in which case, we could bring it back at a later date.
Do you mind if I go to Mayor Proton?
That's fine, that'd be great. Thank you.
I would suggest the appropriate outcome based on what the city attorney has stated would be to postpone indefinitely as covered in Bob's Rules of Order.
Thank you, Mayor Proton. Anyone else with any feedback before we make a motion? Go ahead, member Noonan Camp.
I would just say that over the break, I was able to speak with Mr. Lan Castor and he did raise a point that I hadn't noticed before in the ordinance that I would want us to at least explore and potentially amend. So, I'm not opposed to taking some more time on this to make sure we get it right.
Sounds good. And with that, does anybody want to make a motion to postpone indefinitely?
I move to postpone indefinitely.
Thank you, member Russell. Could I get a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, member Woodward. Any further comments? See none, can we please vote?
Member Anderson?
Aye.
Member Noonan Camp?
Aye.
Member Russell?
Aye.
Mayor Proton Ward?
Aye.
Member Woodward?
Aye.
Mayor Sierra?
Aye.
Let the record show six ayes.
Thank you. There's no public hearing items for tonight. We're moving on to 11A1, CB 30. Uh, we have Director of Community Development Brad Power and Economic Development Manager, Mr. Hollinsworth. Good evening, Mr. Hollinsworth.
Good evening, your honor, members of city council. Darren Hollinsworth, Economic Development Manager. I'm happy to respond to any questions that council might have about Council of 30.
Thank you, Mr. Hollinsworth. Uh, any questions for members of council? Go ahead, member Russell.
So, I have a question for you because I don't know that I understood the answer I got in the public comment. Does the Inglewood Housing Authority, um, own the property? Is it going to be, because it's Trails at Lehigh, it came up through the Inglewood Housing Authority. I'm assuming they partnered together to do that. Is it going to be owned by the entity of Innovative Housing Concepts?
Member Russell, I'm sorry, I don't have a response. I just, I don't know. I don't, I don't know the answer to that.
Mayor, I do.
Go ahead, city manager Lewis.
Thank you, mayor, and thanks for the question. Uh, the Inglewood Housing Authority has conveyed to me that they will have a 10% interest in that. That is the extent of their ownership, but as the speaker during public comment stated, it is owned by a private entity, the other 90%.
Okay, so, it was, it's owned by another entity, but it will be a for-sale property or it will be a for-rent property?
It's my understanding Trails at Lehigh is a for-rent property for income-qualified individuals. Um, so you'd have to meet certain federal income qualifications for low and moderate income.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions from members of council? See none, can I get a motion to approve 11A1?
I move to approve 11A1.
Thank you, member Noonan Camp. Could I get a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, member Woodward. Any further comments? Go ahead, member, uh, Russell.
I, I will not be supporting this because I think what we're seeing, we have so many affordable housing situations in Inglewood that nobody is enforcing the rent and people's rent getting raised. And I think we're just continuing to feed this problem over and over again. So, I will not be supporting this. Thank you.
Thank you, member Russell. Anyone else? See none, can we please vote?
Member Anderson?
Aye.
Member Noonan Camp?
Aye.
Member Russell?
Nay.
Mayor Proton Ward?
Aye.
Member Woodward?
Aye.
Mayor Sierra?
Aye.
Let the record show five ayes and one nay, the one nay being council member Russell.
Alright, members of council, I did ask during the break, um, our city attorney and our city manager whether or not there were items that we could potentially push to next week based on what we have left. This is one of them, but I won't be in attendance next week, so if one other person is not here, we won't have quorum. And we really need to vote, uh, have the second reading by August 7th. So, do we want to just continue this tonight or this item tonight or push until next week?
Mayor, I hesitate to jump the gun here, but I, I think what you just said requires a little more explanation. You'll be absent next week. If one more member is absent, then we won't have a quorum?
Uh, well, actually, I did jump the gun here. So, uh, well, I guess I'll, I'll make the notice. So, uh, member Wing did let us know that she was tendering a resignation tonight, uh, effective immediately. So, that would leave us with six in cor, or six members of the body. Uh, with me, uh, out next week, that means that we have five. If we have another person missing that night, then we will only have four and not have quorum. If I understand that correctly, yeah, that's right. Um, so I just, I guess my comment is, do we risk not going through this agenda item tonight knowing that somebody potentially could get sick either next week or on the 7th, so. Should we just continue with it tonight? Anybody? I'm still ready to go, so I got plenty. Alright, we'll continue on with the item tonight. Alright, perfect. So, CB 31, we have city attorney Tamron Nels here to discuss the city charter provisions. We made you walk up. Go ahead, city attorney Nels.
Oh, we have a small PowerPoint. Of course, this is an agenda item that's been overseen by our outside counsel, but she was unable to attend tonight. But to put items on the November election through ordinance, we have to have two readings and then 30 days before it goes into effect. And the deadline for the notifying the county is in September. So, that's why this is coming to you tonight while you're seeing me present on, on something that's been spearheaded by outside counsel in the past. Um, these are largely the same questions that were presented to you during the study session and it's in the proposed ordinance that we have drafted. Uh, we did have some question on the recall language and so we'll just present it to you tonight and, and get some final direction on how you want us to proceed. So, question one, um, that's proposed for the charter amendment to put on the ballot is to ensure consistency with Tabor and the charter, which amends Section 78 to refer to charter. I'm sorry, refer to the Colorado Constitution. Uh, question two, regarding the restrictions on timing and topics for special elections to allow more flexibility in special elections, so to expand the right of special elections for our citizens and for the city to eliminate some restrictions there. Question three proposes an amendment to Section 34 of the charter. Um, and I'm going through this very fast because this has been the culmination of eight months of work. So, I know we've, we thoroughly vetted all of this. Uh, outside counsel confirmed that people can circulate a petition as long as they are at least 18 years of age and that our provision limiting, um, those people to register electors within our city is not legally compliant. So, whether we change it or not, we can't enforce our charter as written. Uh, and then question three is a long one. Here goes into the recall petition. And it attempts to mirror state law on this, that if there is a general election within 180 days, then the recall election shall be held as part of the general election. Uh, and we're having, of course, a special election in October and then a general election in November. Uh, if this were in effect currently, we wouldn't, we would be able to save 130,000 of city funds by not having a special election. Which wasn't the goal when this was written, it was just to mirror state law, but that's, that's what the proposal is. More of question three, it's a long one. It's because this charter section is so long. So, uh, the, um, this next bullet point at the top of the slide also mirrors state law to eliminate the need for a second special election. Because the way the process works now, and this kind of goes to your question, council member Russell, is that we will have a special election in October, we will have a general election in November. And then if anybody is recalled in October, when the position is not filled in November, then we would have another special election thereafter to fill any vacant seats that weren't filled in the November general election. So, potentially, the city could have to pay for two special elections, one for the recall and then one to fill the seat. Under state law, the special election for recall is to both the recall and a vote for a successor. It's a single special election. And it, right now, we're facing the possibility of possibly not having a quorum between the special election and the general election. And if we changed our charter so that it's just one election for the recall and people to fill the seat, A, we wouldn't have the quorum issue and B, we could be perhaps more responsible stewards with city money by avoiding the need to pay for maybe $100,000 for another special election. And I'm using these numbers based on some quotes that we will, council will, receive more information on that when we talk about a contract to run a special election. And then it provides for the same process as in state law to, to be on a petition to fill any vacancy as a result of our recall. Okay, that was a long one. And that was the one that we had some conflicting direction from council at the study session. So, I anticipate that's the one we'll want to discuss in more detail, but it's the highlights. Um, then it proposed, question four, propose an amendment to Section 58 because there is some, some minor plat issues that don't come to city council. So, it, it conforms both with current practice and becomes more efficient so that council isn't, even the most minor of issues isn't brought to city council, so it removes that, that section. Uh, proposed question five, signing of contracts on Section 71. Proposal is to add, except as otherwise authored, authorized by council, that the mayor shall sign all contracts. And council has delegated some authority for minor, more minor contracts by ordinance. So, this also conforms with, with that ordinance delegation. Okay, that was really quick to sum up eight months' worth of work.
Quicker than my preamble, so, thank you very much for that. Uh, city attorney Nels, any questions? Go ahead, uh, member Russell.
One of the questions I have, so the change to the recall process, does that mean a recall could not take place if a candidate did not come up against the person being recalled?
Uh, you mean if nobody ran to, to hold the position?
Well, at the same time.
So, um, and again, I'll refer to this as the outside council's work product, who was unable to attend, so let me read it more carefully. Well, I, I will just tell you based on my legal knowledge, whether or not there is a successor on that ballot, the recall goes into effect if somebody is recalled. So, whether or not their successor is successfully elected, if a majority of electors voting vote to recall, that person is recalled. Whether or not there's someone appointed to fill, or, I'm sorry, elected to fill the position.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions for members of council? Go ahead, member Noonan Camp.
I mean, just following up on that, and I apologize to press on an issue that I know is not your specialty, but if, if no one does run on the ballot to replace the recalled council member, would we revert to the current system, which is to hold another election? Or would the vacancy be filled like council, like a regular vacancy since we're removing that other language?
So, we have a different charter section regarding vacancies. In that case, there would be a vacancy in the office that would be filled by a majority of city council. And then at the next scheduled election, uh, or general election in November, then there would be on the ballot to fill the remainder of the unexpired term. Okay, thank you.
Any further questions for members of council?
I want to be real, real careful here, uh, city attorney Nels, because our current procedure specific to recall says that in the event of a recall, it's not just an ordinary vacancy. It must be filled by the election. So, are we changing that in this procedure? Because if we're not, we're stuck on a river without a boat.
So, the proposal is to delete those provisions regarding the immediate special election. So, and that's what this cross off language is. The cross out language, which is in our current charter, does require us to hold a second special election within 60 to 120 days after the recall election. So, this would eliminate that provision. It does provide for the, on the same ballot, the election of a successor. But because this provision regarding a special election to fill would be eliminated, if no one is elected, the, the fallback provision would be our general vacancy in office provision.
Can you go backwards to the newly proposed language? I just want to look maybe forwards.
That one. Now, it does say there, of course, we work in worst-case scenarios and even though it says there must be the names of persons who have been nominated as candidates to succeed, uh, somebody has to be willing to be on that ballot. And so, if there's not, then what do we do? The only other provision would be there is a vacancy in office, which I think is Charter 28, but I, I know better than to quote charter sections by number when I don't have it in front of me.
You're done. Um, member Noonan Camp and then member Anderson.
Well, just to follow up on that, would it revert to the same thing that would happen if we had a regular election and no one ran for a regular council seat? Would it also defer or default to council appointing someone to fill the vacancy?
Yes, and that, that's my interpretation of it because we're eliminating the need for a special election.
Right.
Because theoretically, they're elected at the time of the recall. And if the recall is not successful, then nobody's elected, obviously.
Thank you.
But yes, with this eliminated, it would fall back to our vacancy provision. And there's a, it says whenever there's a vacancy in city council, a majority of city council within 30 days shall appoint a successor until the next scheduled election.
Great, thank you.
Go ahead, member Anderson.
My question is to apply the same question to our current charter, which requires a special election after recall. If no one was to run for that special election, then would it fall back to our, our vacancy provision? Or what would happen? Would the seat remain vacant?
Yes. Um, I, I mean, it says we, we are required to hold a special election to fill the vacancy. But again, if nobody runs, what do we do? Keep holding special elections for $100,000 each until someone's willing to run? No. I think if, if this is unsuccessful, the only other thing we have to rely on is our vacancy provision, which then says council appoints until the next...
It sounds like we're, we're apples to apples, then, if, just, it's just the timing is what changes. If nobody runs for the special election under our current process, then we fall back to appointing, and under this new one, if no one runs concurrent, then we fall back to our.
Yes, I, I think to be a bit of a devil's advocate, the, the reason this does make sense is because there are people in our community that may not want to be seen as running against someone that's a sitting council member that they perhaps support. And, and you're almost campaigning, or could be, in the position, if you're on the same ballot, of campaigning maybe a pro-recall and instead elect me. So by having the second special election, we eliminate that, because perhaps somebody supports a council member that's recalled, and then they say, well, okay, I, I mean, I would run to fill that seat now that it's vacant, but maybe they wouldn't feel comfortable running against them on the same ballot. So that's, I think that's the reason to keep that language.
Go ahead, Mayor Potem.
The other thing about this change is that it hearkens back to that old legal chestnut that only people who spend a lot of time in statute books know, which is we are changing a must, or we're, we're changing a shall, two shalls as a matter of fact, into a must. And I think any lawyer would tell you, two shalls don't make a must.
No, they don't.
But if you could briefly just tell folks who think those words mean the same thing, how the law delineates them, I think that would clarify some things here as well.
Okay, so shall means it shall be done, we don't have a choice. It shall happen, one hundred percent, it will, it will occur. Must, while normal people think that sounds like the same thing, it's not, it's interpreted as a little bit more flexible. So it says they, there must have the names of these candidates, but if not, it wasn't a shall. So there's a little bit more flexibility, a little bit more discretion. Must kind of recognizes that there could be a circumstance where it doesn't occur, whereas shall means it will definitely happen. Did that accurately summarize it?
Are you one hundred percent confident that you don't have that backwards? My recollection is different.
Shall, shall means we will be holding that election.
Shall means we, yeah, okay, I'll stop there. The, the bottom line is that there's a difference here. I, I always thought that must incurred the obligation, and that's the sticky part. There's also the possibility that, you know, the ridiculous result doctrine would also apply. You can't say we're going to have a recall election, but we're going to prohibit you from, from having the recall election because no one signed up to be a successor candidate. The fundamental right to call the election always applies.
Yes, and, and I should say, my interpretations also dependent, or somewhat shaped by the fact that if there is no one that is willing to run, then whether it says must or not, there won't be anyone on there, because we can't just put somebody's name on there unless they are willing to run and have done the, the petition and the, the laywork necessary to be on that ballot.
Go ahead, Member Russell.
I, I think your example previously is very valid, about somebody not willing to run against a current incumbent that's being recalled but may be willing to declare later. I, I think that's very valid. And so, I appreciate that, thank you.
Any further questions for members of council? See, now, can I get a motion to approve eleven-eight-two?
I'll move eleven-eight-two.
Thank you, thank you, Member Woodward. Could I get a second?
Second.
Thank you, Member Nunikamp. Any further comments?
Absolutely.
Go ahead, Member Russell.
I think this is a slap in the face to the constituents that have worked very hard on the process we currently have. We could do this next year if nothing happens, but if we change the process in the middle of it, and I know this discussion actually started before the recall started, but I think you are all in a very, very, very precarious position by moving forward with this. I do not believe that we should put any of these on the ballot right now. And so, I will be voting no.
Thank you, Member Russell. Any further comments?
Yeah, Mayor, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Mayor Potem.
I, I don't think I understand Member Russell's argument, because this is not changing the procedure that is in effect right now. The ball is already rolling downhill on that. These people have a right to the process being conducted, as do the council members, being conducted in the way the established law today indicates that it should be conducted. That process will change because it's already in, in movement, it's already moving. So all we're doing is asking the question, you know, something that's been exposed recently is that there may be a better process where we can do this in a single election. We're not saying that anything is going to change on this election, and as a matter of fact, legally, it can't. So it has no effect on, on the current election, unless I'm mistaken.
Uh, Member Nunikamp.
That was my clarification for the city attorney. Can you clarify that if the voters approve this in November, and that we would, there would be maybe a special election for potentially open council seats after the potentially special election in October, would there be any change to the process that's already in motion?
Uh, no, no, what's in motion would follow the current procedure as it exists. And, and the way we have implemented charter revisions in the past, if they are approved by the voters, then we bring it to council at a later meeting to then make the changes, and then it goes into effect the next year, which is how we handled it the last time. But so, no, it, it wouldn't affect the, the ones that are currently in place.
And then my second question, I know you and I discussed this previously, but for this body as well, for any council members who are undergoing a recall, is there any legal conflict of interest about voting on to put this before the ballot, put this before, before the voters on the ballot, or any ethical concerns that you have?
No, and it's for the same reason, because this wouldn't affect the current recall. It, it would just, and I know this has been in process long before, but we have seen some deficiencies in the process, and where, I know we all try to be very wise stewards of city money and how we can do things better and, and save city taxpayers' funds, and this, a, a lot of these revisions are meant to do that. And still provide recall, but, but just follow that same procedure in the state law that has been refined to be more efficient, less expensive, because we're, you know, we're trying to do more with less money all the time.
Thank you.
Member Anderson.
I think it's important to remember that we are, you know, that this would be, we're, we're not deciding this, we're putting on the ballot, this is for the voters to decide. If the voters don't like this process and they want to keep the current process, they can and should in fact do that, and that's, that's what, you know, that's, that's what I'm interested is the outcome. What, what, what do the voters actually want? But I think it's a valid question to put before them.
Thank you, Member Anderson. Mayor Potem.
Just one more clarification. City Attorney Niles, I'm looking at a memo from the Legislative Legal Services drafting office, talking about the construction of statutes using shall and must, and your explanation was one hundred percent correct. So I had it backwards. I'm sorry.
I have been here for over two years, and this is the first time I've been right and you've been wrong. So, write it down. Thank you.
I had it backwards because of the way it was applied in, in the case on the memo that I'm reading, it was applied differently, but it, the words are the same, so you are, you are correct.
Thank you, sir. That was the highlight of my day.
All right, Member Nunikamp.
I'll just, before we vote, I'll just say that this has been an incredibly long process. I do want to give, for lack of a better word, kudos to the city attorney and the outside council for the extent of work that's been done on this. This has been a project that we've thought about and worked on for a really long time. And I want to echo what Councilmember Anderson said, this is ultimately just about giving a decision to the voters. This has nothing to do with what any of us, we will all vote just like everyone else. And while I understand Member Russell's comments, at the end of the day, we are all duly elected city council members, and we're here to do a job for as long as we have these seats, and I don't want to delay the work of the people and the work of the city because of some outside political activity. And so I, I'm, we'll be voting to move this forward again, so we know what the voters want to do.
Well said, Member Nunikamp. Over a year, over a year. Thank you so much for that, City Attorney. And with that, can we please vote?
Member Anderson?
Aye.
Member Nunikamp?
Aye.
Member Russell?
Nay.
Mayor Potem Ward?
Aye.
Member Woodward?
Aye.
Mayor Sierra?
Aye.
Let the record show five ayes and one nay, the one nay being Councilmember Russell.
Perfect, thank you very much, City Clerk. Moving on to eleven-eight-three, this is the Council Ball Thirty-three, we have City Clerk Stephanie Carlisle to talk about the recall special election.
All right, so per charter, so four recall petitions were authorized to circulate, they were circulated, timely filed, and deemed sufficient. So per charter, we would, are required to bring this to council to set a date for a special election. We, there, you do have to wait for a protest period to pass, but per state law, it needs to come to council to set a date for a special election. So with multiple petitions being filed, multiple districts, we find it to be best practices to have one election that would ultimately create cost savings, to have one election date set versus staggered or multiple dates. And so, as you can imagine, it's very time-intensive to plan and coordinate and administer an election. And so, given all the timeframes, given within the sixty to one hundred and twenty days, and after discussions with a consultant, we feel the best date for this recall election to be October third.
Perfect, thank you so much for that. City Clerk Carlisle, just, I guess a question for me, and I know I, we had a brief discussion about this, City Attorney Niles since. Member Wink has tendered a resignation effective immediately. We do have to change some language that's currently, some language, and, and can you let me know what language it is that we should change, just so we can, yeah, just make sure that that information is, that she's no longer part of the recall election, because I think our, our statute states that we should not have a person that actually, if such officer resigns at any time subsequent to the call in the recall election, the recall election shall be held notwithstanding such resignation, so.
Uh, yes, because Councilmember Wink resigned before we had this discussion, considered this ordinance, the recall for her seat would not proceed. So it shall terminate. So that would be sections five and six of the ordinance in front of you should be removed because it's no longer going to proceed, given the voluntary resignation. It would also require us to remove some of the whereas clauses and the reference in the title regarding the at-large election.
Thank you. Any questions for members of council? Go ahead, Member Russell.
So, the consultant, I, I guess what my question is, when Councilmember Berentine was recalled, this parameters were the exact same timeframe as Councilmember Anderson as far as when everything was filed and everything finished, but her recall was around the seventeenth of September. So what's different about this? I mean, why, why are we having it a couple weeks later?
It's multiple districts, so it's essentially, well, it was essentially four ballot types for, you know, the administration is much more complicated than one district-specific election, so. And I think too, it was just, it's navigating all of the timeframes, they came in staggered, which, you know, you just have to take that into consideration, and then also find the time that would give us, allow us enough time. I mean, per state law, you have to mail out ballots twenty-two days prior to the election. So everything is, you know, twenty-two, twenty days moving backwards, and so you just have to allow enough time to be able to get it coordinated and get it, you know, up and running.
Okay, I, I appreciate that. Did, I mean, was the fact that there would be no quorum a consideration in this?
No, no quorum, and, and what do you mean?
Like, did, because it, the way the timeframe is set up, we would have, we would be without a quorum for, on October third, it would be about a month, maybe a little longer because of certification days. So it didn't have anything to do with that, it just had to do with the timeframe of how many there were.
Just, yeah, yeah, just to have enough time to get everything, I mean, it's, it's already, so the counties are all running, you know, it's a coordinated election time, so the timeframe is very challenging for just elections in general. We're not going to be able to get any assistance from Arapahoe County because there's a November election. So there's a lot of that happening, so it really just simply was a matter of reaching out, finding out when we could encompass one special election to cover all of the timeframes, and then certainly what, you know, give it, allowing us enough time to be able to meet statutory deadlines, and then the availability of our consultant.
So the consultant, did we get more than one bid, or where did we get the consultant from?
It's a consultant that we've used in the past for one of our EDDA elections. They have administered hundreds and hundreds of elections in the state of Colorado and are highly specialized and trained in the election division.
And is the hundred and thirty-seven thousand for the special election, because that was like higher, I think originally the estimate was like between eighty-five thousand and a hundred thousand, is that just for one election, and then we still will have to pay for a second special election?
Correct. If an officer is recalled, then there would be a vacancy special election, yes.
Okay, and so in the packet, there was no estimate of some cost, or some of the costs set?
We had hoped to get that to you prior, but obviously, we're just still getting those numbers in, so that was going to be coming back to you for approval next week.
Okay.
But I'm happy to answer any questions you might have about that.
Okay, so we, if we pass it tonight, it'll be first reading, and then we'll get the information before the second reading?
Yes.
Is that?
Yes, correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for members of council? Go ahead, Member Nunikamp.
There were a couple citizens sent who brought up the question about the election commission being part of the special election. I know that Mayor Potem Ward spoke to that a little bit, but were they involved in the recall in two thousand and eighteen, and is there plans for them to be involved in this? I'm not sure what your procedure is.
Yep, so do we have a, we have, hope to get a recall, or I'm sorry, election commission meeting within the next two weeks to basically just apprise them of everything. What we do typically is we have a recall, or I'm sorry, an election commission meeting, which we would bring to them the upcoming November election. We were waiting to see what the outcome of the petition sufficiencies would be, so that we can set a meeting that works for everybody on the election commission to just update them, certainly, and give them, you know, input on, have, they can have input on anything, or ask any questions, so. Everything is prescribed by law, so it's, it's very straightforward, it's really just a matter of bringing the election commission in to get them updated, and then certainly there would be a lot drawing for our November election with the election commission at the end of August.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Member Russell.
Thank you. And so, my other question is, and I talked with the city attorney about this, so it's possible that the two positions that are open, I mean, are up for reelection this year, the recall won't be till October third, will those names be put on the ballot? I mean, whoever the opponent is, would be put on the ballot? I mean, how does that all work? Can, I guess what I'm asking is, if a council member is recalled, can they run for the
My office is actually researching that. We understand that some city charters prohibit someone from, from running again if they've been recalled. We don't have any prohibition against that in our charter, and so our office is currently researching the law on that to see if there are any restrictions. At this time, we don't believe there are, but we will finish that analysis and get that to city council.
Okay, so those positions may be able to be put on the ballot. Okay, so those positions may be able to be put on the ballot. Well, they'll be put on the ballot anyway. But the council members would have to declare before they knew if they were recalled.
That's exactly right, because the timing of the to finalize the ballot to the county, the any council member or other person running for those seats or that seat, those seats, will will have to file the paperwork and be on the ballot before the recall election.
And because Councilmember Wink has resigned now, will her position go on the November ballot?
It will. So I mentioned the vacancy provision in our charter. So that applies, given Councilmember Wink has resigned, so City Council must appoint a replacement within thirty days. And then the unexpired term, which I believe is two years, will be on the November election to fill a two-year at-large term.
Okay, thank you. I think that's all the questions I have right now.
Any further questions for members of council? Go ahead, Mayor Potem.
Just a couple of things. So we're paying a contractor to effectively administer this set of recall elections. We're still coordinating with the county for November?
Yes, that the November election is still a coordinated election.
Okay, and then the potential special election, are we have we determined how we intend to conduct that?
So we would like to do that by mail ballot through the consultant.
Okay, great. Thank you.
All right. Any further questions? See none. I guess we still want to make the motion to approve eleven A three, but then we'll make an amendment to section five and six from there, so. Can I get a motion to approve eleven A three?
I'll move eleven A three.
Thank you, Member Woodward. Could I get a second?
A second.
Thank you, Mayor Potem. Could I now get a motion to amend section five and six?
I move to amend sections five and six.
Thank you, Member. It was just those two, correct?
Your Honor, may I also add the whereas is at the bottom of page one, leaving the last one, but the the two above it should be removed also.
At the bottom of page one.
So any language referencing at-large?
The first one is whereas on June twenty-seventh, the petition for recall for Councilmember Cheryl Wink was filed with the City Clerk and no, okay, no, that stuck in the last one is fine. It's the the one I just read.
So just the third from the bottom whereas, the one on June twenty-seventh, has that removed as well?
Yeah, that's the one that needs to be removed there.
So section five, section six, and that third whereas that begins on June twenty-seven, twenty twenty-three.
Correct.
Okay.
So that's included in Member Noonan-Camp's motion?
Can you include that as part of your motion, Member Noonan-Camp?
I move to strike on page one, whereas on June twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three, petition to recall for recall for Councilmember Cheryl Wink was filed with the City Clerk and as well as section five and section six. I'm sorry, section.
Section five and six.
Yes, thank you.
Perfect. So thank you, Member Noonan-Camp, for that amendment. Could I get a second?
Second.
Thank you, Member Anderson. Any further comments? See none. Can we please vote?
Member Anderson?
On the amendment, yeah.
Member Noonan-Camp?
Aye.
Member Russell?
Aye.
Mayor Potem Ward?
Aye.
Member Woodward?
Aye.
Mayor Sierra?
Aye.
Let the record show six ayes.
Cool. Can we now vote on the actually, do we continue? Is that it, or do we? That's it, right? We're good. Vote on the as amended. There we go. Can we vote on the motion as amended?
Yes. Member Anderson?
Aye.
Member Noonan-Camp?
Aye.
Member Russell?
Aye.
Mayor Potem Ward?
Aye.
Member Woodward?
Aye.
Mayor Sierra?
Aye.
Let the record show six ayes.
Perfect. Moving on to eleven C one. This is, actually, keep moving with it, keep moving forward. This is another item that we could have removed. We have Deputy Director of Public Works, Tim Host, here to talk about a request to award a bid for seven traffic signal pole replacements spread across four intersections to Morton Electric. Good evening, Mr. Host.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks. I've got a brief presentation on this item to summarize the bids we got and the work we're going to do, and then I'll answer any questions you have on this item. See if we can get things going here. So this is a signal replacement project. The way this project came about is we had a engineering consultant come out and inspect all of our traffic signal poles in the city and rate them for us and tell us if there's any structural deficiencies. And they did find seven poles that they recommended for replacement. They've got some fatigue and some wear on them that they require replacement. They're they're not able to be repaired any longer, so this project was put together to replace those seven poles. So basically, the the two goals are for infrastructure to to make sure our deteriorated infrastructure is getting replaced when it needs to be replaced, so we don't have any failures or anything. And then the safety as far as these poles, we don't want these poles to fall down unexpectedly, so it's recommended that we get them replaced before they they deteriorate any further. So there is four intersections, three intersections, there's two poles at, and then one intersection, there's just the one pole, so that adds up to the seven. We've got Dartmouth Cherokee and Floyd and Cherokee, and then Sherman and Floyd, as well as down south there at Quincy and Logan. So those are the four different intersections. There's not all the poles are bad, but there's three that have two bad, and then one with the one pole, so. That's what's included in the scope of work. And here's the inspection results, just kind of a summary of the things they look at. They look for cracks in the pole and the base, the loose bolts and nuts, the the nuts and bolts loosen up from the you know, kind of the expansion and contraction from the cold and the heat and the wind and stuff really moves them around, and it really fatigues the the bolts and makes them loose. And then impact damage, if a vehicle is hit or something, sometimes that'll do some some damage to the pole, and that's a concern. And then the standoff is the the distance between the base and the flange at the bottom of the pole there, the as it fatigues there, there's that gap gets to be too big, and the the bolts have to do too much work, so it makes it a little less strong. And then based on that, these seven poles came up as the ones that need to be replaced. The scale is a one to five rating scale they use, and we had most of them were at a two, the ones we were recommending, and there's Floyd and Sherman are at a three. But it's still low enough to where it's recommended they get replaced. So the contractor selection process, we got three bids on this work, and it's it always amazes me sometimes how we get bids so close like this, or three different bids, and those bottom two are within fifteen hundred dollars of a five hundred and seventy thousand dollar project, so it's it's incredible sometimes how the bids come in so close, but knowing the bids are that close, we do know that's the price to do this job. The two different independent contractors looked at it, and that's that's the cost to get this done. It's definitely more than the engineer's estimate. I think there's a couple of things we didn't factor in, the the wiring and the bases of the poles there, the the way the the signal poles were built years ago, the wires come up through the case on, and that makes it a little harder to take them all out and rewire the new pole. They've got to put a new separate box and then it's kind of a junction box to put all the wires in to then connect it to the new pole, so it is a bit more wiring than we anticipated. And then we've also not bid out a signal project for some time, so we don't really have a lot of good data on how much traffic signal poles are going for these days. So now we've definitely got some data on that, and it's definitely more than we expected, but I think it's still fair based on the work to be done. This is the cost of of signal poles these days, so it has been looked at by two different bidders now to to give us that data, so. As far as the funding source, we we do have sufficient budget between these three accounts to be able to to pay for this work. It is a little more than we expected, like I said, but we've got two Public Improvement Fund accounts that have funding available for this purpose. They were they were set up for traffic signal equipment replacement, and then the line item budget there for the supplies for infrastructure for the traffic engineering budget does have sufficient amount in there for the extra to make up the to make us get us to the five hundred and seventy-one thousand. So with that, I'll summarize it. We recommend that contract be awarded to Morton Electric for the construction of this project. We did do reference checks on Morton Electric. It's kind of a new name. We haven't really heard of them too much for signals. We hadn't before this bid, we hadn't heard too much, but they did do a recent project for City of Lakewood, and the Lakewood is very complimentary of them and said they did a nice job, and they would recommend them for this work, so, yeah, we we have no reason to to believe they won't do the the same quality work for Englewood. So we recommend the contract be ordered, and I'll answer any questions you have.
Thank you very much, Deputy Director. Any questions? Go ahead, Mayor Potem.
When we replace the poles, everything that goes on the pole, the arm, the light, all that stuff, is the same? Or are we upgrading that as well?
So I asked the same question, actually. Can we just do the pole? So the the city's poles are a little bit older. You can't get the the arm won't adapt to the new pole, so we have to get the pole and the arm. The actual signal itself will adapt to the new, it's called the mast arm that sticks out there. So we have to buy the pole and the mast arm, which adds cost. We can't just put the old arm on the new pole. The the connection's not the same anymore. So we do have to do it. It's a pole and a mast arm we're buying for all seven.
Okay, and then the other thing I'll I'll comment on just generally is, in the in the staff memo, the words very poor were used. And that that causes me some some pretty significant heartburn when I think about some of the infrastructure that's remaining around our city that we haven't really had in-depth conversations about. Are we anticipating a lot of these coming up in the future, or are we hitting the ones that are critical now in the hopes that we're going to try to stretch out the rest, or what what can we expect to see in the future on this?
So, yeah, that that choice of language was very poor. I'll say they're they're not actually very poor. The rated as a two or one would be very poor, and that we did ask the consultant about that. Well, if they're that poor, do we need to do this tomorrow? How bad are these? And they they did say we have some time, you know, they're fatiguing, and they're getting they're beyond their prime, but they they do have time. They're not in any danger of falling down tomorrow or anything like that, so it's the when you get down to the one rating is one that's kind of alarming, and you want to start thinking about maybe some temporary support or something till we can get a new one, but these are not quite there yet, so we're we're getting them just in time. And and these were the only seven that came up in the report of all the poles that were bad enough to need replacement. The other ones were, obviously, they were out over time, but they were all still in satisfactory condition that we don't need to replace them in the near future, anyway.
And then one more question, if I may. How how often are we inspecting these types of infrastructure around the city?
So these were inspected in twenty-one. It's been a couple of years, so we usually go probably about every five years or so and inspect these things. It it kind of depends on the what they find. Sometimes if they find something that's concerning, they'll they'll recommend they inspect it every year or so. And then like these, I think we've been doing them every six months to a year, just to make sure they're not getting any worse. But the stuff that's in good shape, we usually can go a little longer than that.
Thank you.
Any other questions from council? See none. Can I get a motion to approve eleven C one?
I move to approve eleven C one.
Thank you, Mayor Potem. Could I get a second?
Second.
Thank you, Member Noonan-Camp. Any further questions? Or comments? See none. Can we please vote?
Member Anderson?
Aye.
Member Noonan-Camp?
Aye.
Member Russell?
Aye.
Mayor Potem Ward?
Aye.
Member Woodward?
Aye.
Mayor Sierra?
Aye.
Let the record show six ayes.
Thank you very much. Deputy Director, I think you stay put, because we are now talking about the Hawk Signal at the thirty-four hundred block of South Broadway, so eleven C two.
I'd say this item here is the follow-up. I think in April, we we came to you with the Intergovernmental Agreement for the Hawk Signal in the thirty-four hundred block of Broadway. That's the new pedestrian crossing signal there that's going to be a little more forceful for getting cars to stop and making sure pedestrians are safe in the crosswalk there, so this is now the next step. We've issued a request for proposals for the design of the Hawk Signal, and we ended up getting seven proposals back. Actually, we got a pretty good response on this one. But a little background on it, it's basically the thirty-four hundred block of Broadway at the Paseo there. We've got the reason for the project is the safety of pedestrians there, and the the existing flashing beacon just doesn't quite enforce the the stopping as much as we would like to see there, so this Hawk Signal, we applied for the grant and received it, and that's the next step in the process here is to get an engineer engineering firm to design it for us, so we can build it. So the the Hawk Signal is a little bit different looking signal. As you recall, there, it's got the single mast arm that goes over the street, and it's got the yellow-red, and then flashing red light sequence that requires cars to stop versus the the existing one is more of a warning rather than a requirement to stop. This is a much more pronounced and gets people's attention that you will stop when this lights on. So then the timeline here is a little bit, like I said, in April there, we executed the IGA, we ceded out with council's approval, and now we're we've gone through the request for proposal process, and Peters and Yaffe was the selected consultant. We had, as I said, seven different proposals. We went through the scoring and the criteria, and they came up a lot of experience with this type of Hawk Signal. It's a little bit of a unique signal, but they've done several of these, so we're pretty confident they can handle this work for us as well. So we do have a similar situation on this one. These poles take a long time to get. I didn't mention on the previous item there, those poles take about six months to get a new signal pole just because of the shortage of steel in the country. It's amazing that the signal poles are very difficult to come by. It takes a long time to get. So this project, we're trying to get the design and get it out to bid hopefully early next year, so we can order the poles and have them ready to install next summer. So that's why the schedule stretched out a little bit. It's just because of getting the new signal poles takes a long time to get those these days, so. And then we hope to be complete with construction by next fall. And then the budget here, this one, we did work with the consultant to bring the cost of the design into more of what we need to have for the budget we have available. We think we're even with this cost of design, we'll still have enough to actually build the signal, the two fifty-six based on what we we know about Hawk Signals and the cost should be enough to actually build it here once the design is ready to go and we get it out to bid. So we're confident the the Hawk Signal Public Improvement Fund project should be enough to fund the the work on this project. And with that, we recommend that the City Council approve the professional services agreement with Peters and Yaffe for the design of the high-intensity activated crosswalk signal in the thirty-four hundred block of Broadway.
Sounds great. Thank you very much, Deputy Director. Any questions for the Hawk Signal? Can you answer it all in mine? So I see no questions. Can I get a motion to approve eleven C two?
Move to approve eleven C two.
Thank you, Member Anderson. Could I get a second?
Second.
Thank you, Member Noonan-Camp. Any further comments? See none. Can we please vote?
Member Anderson?
Aye.
Member Noonan-Camp?
Aye.
Member Russell?
Aye.
Mayor Potem Ward?
Aye.
Member Woodward?
Aye.
Mayor Sierra?
Aye.
Let the record show six ayes.
Thank you very much, Deputy Director. Moving on to eleven C three, we have Director of Utilities, Peter Van Rye, and Utilities Deputy Director John Roach. I don't believe he's here tonight, so. Here to talk about contract for services, Colorado Analytical Laboratories.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor and Council. Josh was here earlier, but I I had him. He does a lot of weekend work, so I had him just go home for the evening since it was looking to be a late night, so that I could handle this one.
It is a late night.
It it is a bit of a late night. Um, so the item I have before council tonight is for our laboratory analysis, and so this is compliance samples that we sampling that we have to do. So we take samples throughout the distribution system on a monthly basis. We do this through throughout the entire system to ensure that that we have the right levels of disinfection and that there aren't any contaminants in the water. Planned for twenty twenty-three, we have twenty-four hundred total samples, and they're collected on a daily basis. And the the difference is, we used to take these out of hose bibs. One of the improvements we made over the last couple of years is we installed all new sampling stations, so that eliminates the the issue with the home potentially being a contaminant source. And so so this is where we take those samples now, and that's what some of these samples are. We also have a number of impacts that came from becoming designated as a large system, which means we serve on a daily basis in excess of fifty thousand people. You can see on where on the table, some of the things that increased in terms of the number of sampling. And then on the bottom of this chart, you can see the number of samples that we need to take and get analyzed in order to comply with our corrosion control study that we need to do, which is part of our regulatory requirement. We're on a schedule. We have a deadline that we need to meet with the state in order to complete that study as we move forward with our lead and copper rule and essentially our lead service line program. We went with Colorado Analytical Lab, and we're suggesting an optimal source with them. We looked at other labs, but Colorado Analytical was the only one that could provide all the testing that we needed. And you can see that they're fairly close to the plant. They're only about thirteen miles away. They submit their results directly to CDPHE, and so that's an important thing, so that that whenever this sampling is analysis done, it automatically goes to the state as opposed to just coming back to us, and that's a requirement that those of CDPHE to have the lab submit those samples directly to them. They also gave us no cost on sampling bottles. A ten percent discount was also given to us through this, the doc to exceed on this is a hundred and thirty thousand. And it was brought to Water and Sewer Board and recommended for approval. Questions from council?
Thank you very much, Director. Go ahead, Member Russell.
Thank you. Thank you for the report. My only concern is that it's a hundred and twenty-three thousand over budget. I mean, at least it shows negative a hundred and twenty-three, almost a hundred and twenty-four thousand.
I'm gonna defer to Sarah, Deputy Director Stone, on this one since uh she may have an answer for that.
Yeah, so um the designation as a large utility didn't come in until September of last year. So at that time, we had already proposed our budget for this line item. Um we will not go over appropriation for the entire water fund. We can absorb this in other line items.
Okay, and so next year in the budget, it will go up because we've been designated a large?
Yes, correct.
Okay.
Um and I also I'll just add on the um corrosion control study, that was some sampling and things that were added as a part of that designation as well that we will not have to continue to do.
Okay.
Some of that will shift that budget.
All right, thank you.
Any further questions? Seeing none, can I get a motion to approve eleven C three?
I'll move eleven C three.
Thank you, Member Woodward. Could I get a second?
Second.
Thank you, Member Russell. Any further comments? Seeing none, can we please vote?
Member Anderson?
Aye.
Member Noonan Kim?
Aye.
Member Russell?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Ward?
Aye.
Member Woodward?
Aye.
Mayor Sierra?
Aye.
Let the record show six ayes.
Thank you. Uh Director, we have the pre- uh professional services agreement with Hazen and Sawyer for the consulting services for the solids handling improvements project project for a two thirty-eight, seven twenty.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is a a continuation of a uh project slash program that we've been working on over the last couple of years to uh remove the solids out of the South Settling Basin, which have accumulated for what we believe to be decades. Um so essentially, what the solids handling is, is at the Allen Treatment Plant, we pull solids out of the water. So there's tilting things that the contaminants that come out of the water actually get uh sent to that south pond at the Allen Plant. And so they are collected there. It's a solid settling pond. And um it has accumulated solids for many, many years and is um more than full uh in the sense that it's pushing the curtain wall over and impacting um the the water. Uh it's it's negatively impacting the treatment process. So if you recall, last year and this year, we've run in a contractor to uh bring in a mobile centrifuge to pull outs, dredge out some of those solids, and we've been very successful in in at least um creating some additional volume for us um right now that will give us time to implement a a more permanent solution. And so right now, what happens is we dredge the uh solids out. Our dredge is pretty old. We need to replace that too. That will come um uh as a separate item uh in the future. But we send it to what's uh the belt filter press, which is actually a repurposed fruit press. Um it used to press fruit many, many years ago, and then the city uh repurposed it to actually press water out of solids. So it does actually functionally the same thing. Um and it and it works to a degree. Um it's just that it doesn't keep up with the rate of which we generate solids. So we generate solids faster than we can actually press the water out of them and haul them off, which is why it's slowly over time accumulated and resulted in in excess solids in the South Reservoir. What that does is, is South Reservoir is in the box there, and what you can see is the gray area is where it's, the reservoir is full to within a couple of feet of the water surface of solids. And there's a curtain wall in there that prevents it from getting to where it says wash water there. So that's supposed to be cleaner water. Well, that cleaner water is directly connected to the North Reservoir, and you can see that that set of arrows talks, basically highlights the short circuiting that kind of occurs with this, in that water will go from the South Reservoir to the North Reservoir. And it doesn't really have a lot of travel time in the North Reservoir, and then it just gets routed right back into the plant. And so because there's an excess of solids in that South Reservoir, we're somewhat creating ourselves a um an ongoing issue, which we think is contributing to the taste and odor issues because we're, we we don't have the, we don't have the volume in the South Reservoir to to collect those solids. So what we are proposing is to um in in addition to the work that we've done to gain that additional volume is a permanent solution, which is to um essentially design and and purchase and install a centrifuge. A centrifuge is actually what the contractor uses. They have a centrifuge mounted on the back of a tractor trailer. We also use three centrifuges at SBR. They've been used for two decades. These are very reliable systems. They essentially just spin the water out of the solids and then you pull the solids off. And so you get actually really good production rate out of a centrifuge, and they're pretty um, they're pretty simple systems. Whereas you can see that belt filter press has all kinds of angles and and belt and every, um it's it's more complex, got a lot of moving parts. Um so what this, what this scope is, is to size and um design, do the initial design to thirty percent for all the um necessary improvements to purchase and install a centrifuge in place of the, and decommission the belt filter press. Um we went out for an RFP on this. We ended up with two proposals. Um the selection committee looked at the two proposals, and you can see by the the pricing that uh Hazen and Sawyer was the the least of the two prices. And after some uh de-scoping and then some potential um additional services if we deem them required, the ultimate uh negotiated scope ended up with a fee of two hundred and thirty-eight thousand, seven hundred and twenty. We would propose a ten percent staff managed contingency and those uh owner-directed supplemental services of twenty thousand. That's if we need them, that would be something that we would uh include. So the total con- contract authorization would be for two sixty-two, five ninety-two. And again, this was brought to Water and Sewer Board and recommended for approval.
Thank you, Director. Mayor Protem?
Just one question about the dredging process, because I remember we approved dredging previously that hadn't been done for quite some time. And and what I'm confused on is what what exactly we accomplished with that. It sounds like we we took a lot of stuff out, but not enough.
We took a lot of stuff out, but when, so we took, so we, the original contract was two hundred thousand, this year's was four hundred thousand. We estimate that if we were to contract out the uh the pulling out of the remaining solids, which would take in excess of a year plus, um there would be over two million dollars to do that. So instead of paying a contractor to do that, essentially what we've done is we've, we've bought ourselves some additional time because we've given ours, we've given ourselves some additional volume. And so now we can use that time to install a permanent solution. It's more cost-effective for the city long-term, at which point then we will in-house basically run the centrifuges as much as we possibly can, improve our dredge. Our dredge needs to be, our dredge is pretty old, so get a new dredge. And then we'll take it out of the contractor's hands and into our internal hands. So the reason for the contractors was because we were, we were so far in terms of the ability to um so far beyond what the capacity should have been, that we needed to at least have a a quick response to to get some additional volume. And so that's where we, we went with those two contracts. And I remember when we first talked about this a couple of years ago, we said, well, if it's working well, why don't we just do the whole thing? It was working well. There was a lot of solids in there, and it was gonna cost a lot of, a lot more money that we thought would be better spent by building a permanent solution could be used for thirty years at the Allen Plant as opposed to doing this one-time removal and um through the contractor.
So we still be, will be removing them anyway, but we'll be doing it in-house once this project is completed?
That's exactly right. As soon as this is up and running, we're gonna, we're gonna remove all the solids from that South Pond.
Okay.
So we'll still be bringing to you a hauling contract. So what we'll do is we'll, we'll, we'll spin the solids out or spin the water out of the solids, and we'll let them dry. And then periodically, we'll bring uh hauling contracts to you so that we can haul them off and get rid of them.
Second question, I was at the K-9 Corral a couple of months ago, and uh there was some sort of conveyor operation happening at at the plant, which is directly adjacent to the K-9 Corral. And that thing was making a terrible racket. Will this process be quieter?
It is. It has more of a hum. It's a, it's a loud hum, but it's in the building. So if you're in the building, so um if you're ever at South Platt Renew, if you go to the second floor of the solids handling building, that's where the centrifuges are. It's loud, but you don't hear it because it's inside. That racket on the, when I first got to the Allen Plant and I heard that racket, I was like, is that, can we fix that?
Yeah.
And they said, no, because that's actually part of, that's part of the design. It bounces like that so that it knocks the solids off the conveyor. So that's actually the the design of the system. It's like, that is just, it's not pleasant. So this will be more of a hum.
Okay.
Will be protected.
Uh Member Russell, go ahead.
Thank you. So my question is, um that is where we were having, when I first got on council eight years ago, problems with radioactive sludge. And has that problem been solved? Or could that still be a problem when you start dredging and cleaning out the sludge?
So we are cleaning out the same solids that that I believe were being handled then. So what you're talking about is what's called T-norms, which is technologically enhanced naturally occurring radioactive material. So it's essentially the concentration of silts that are naturally have a low level of radioactivity that run off um and you know, are in many of the Colorado waterways. When you cons- when you concentrate them in a, in a solids process like this, you can get to a point where you trigger a T-norm rule. We went to our uh the landfill. The landfill determines whether these are hazardous waste solids or they're just normal solids. So we had them tested by the landfill, and landfill said that these can, or the la- the testing showed that we can dispose of these at a, at a normal landfill because they were below those limits. And so we will continue to um utilize a a a regular landfill because it's far less expensive and because our our levels are below what would have triggered that.
And how often do you have to test? Do you have to test every time you're ready to take it to the landfill?
I, I'm, I'll have to get you the exact number. I think it's annually. Um do you, do you know off the top of your? So we'll get you the exact number on that one, but I believe it's annually. Um so I think, so look, so we have a number of, so we had it tested last year when we sent several truckloads over. And we did one testing and then they took it through that entire round. I'm not sure if we retested it again this year or if they just accepted last year's tests, um but we can, we can get that answer for you.
Okay, and I, I guess what I want to make sure does not happen again, because I know it's a lot more expensive to take it to a special dump. Um but I think that's why we stockpiled it on the property for a long time, and that's why there were problems. And I I mean, there were some pretty severe problems. Um so we just need to make sure that we don't let that happen again.
I agree with, I, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead. Well, I'm just, so bringing some of this process in-home, will it expose our employees um to that?
No, nothing more than, nothing, there's no change in the process, actually. If anything, centrifuges are actually a closed system. So if if anything, really, they stay more closed as there, as the water's being spun out of them. And then the solids will, will end up discharged out. They'll end up drying in a drying bed space that we have. Um we're, we're intending to uh shrink the size of the drying space. We think it is far too big. Um and the space could be utilized better for other things. Um but I agree with you that we should never be in a position where we are building up solids to the point where we have mountains of solids. As soon as we get enough where it makes sense to do a, a day or two run of just trucks to haul it all off, that's what our system is now.
All right, thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Any other questions for members of council? Seeing none, can I get a motion to approve eleven C four?
I move to approve.
Sorry.
Eleven C four.
I'll give it to Member Russell.
Thank you, Member Russell. Could I get a second?
I'll take the second.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Any further comment? Seeing none, can we please vote?
Member Anderson?
Aye.
Member Noonan Kim?
Aye.
Member Russell?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Ward?
Aye.
Member Woodward?
Aye.
Mayor Sierra?
Aye.
Let the record show six ayes.
Thank you, Director.
Thank you.
Only twenty-five minutes. Good job. Have a good evening. Uh moving on to eleven C five, uh here's uh Director of Finance Jackie Lowe here to talk about the Q two twenty-twenty-three budget supplemental request.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm going to present to you the third budget supplementals for twenty-twenty-three. Tonight's presentation has two parts. First, I'm going to bring to your your approval for the third budget supplemental for twenty-twenty-three. The second part, we need um council's vote on the timing when to approve the final budget supplementals as discussed last time. So uh go over the budget supplemental approval process very quickly. Depend upon if the request involves personnel. If this include personnel, we need the City Manager's Office and Human Resource Department's approval. And this is the summary for the budget supplemental number one, number two, and number three I'm going to present to you tonight. The budget supplemental number one, eight point five million of that, two point eight million is funded by ARPA. The second budget supplemental is related to the two percent salary inflationary adjustments. The third one, um I'm going to review to you with three items. These three items will affect the general fund and capital project fund. First is the request council reviewed tonight for twenty-twenty-three special election due to citizen initiated petitions for council recall. The total estimated dollar amount is a hundred thirty-eight thousand. And two items related to the capital projects fund. One is we're going to allocate sixty thousand dollars from the contingency line item. We review um the financial on a monthly basis. That lion, line item also um funds some citywide projects and programs. We're going to allocate sixty thousand dollars from that line item to the capital projects fund for the P's, PC equipment for new staff FTE. The second one is police department. They receive a grant from the Rappahoe County E nine one eleven authority. So we're going to re, we're going to pay for the radio councils first, then we're going to get a reimbursement. The total estimated dollar amount is two hundred seventy-six thousand dollars. So total impact, four seventy-four thousand. Of that, a hundred thirty-eight thousand, we're going to use on assigned fund balance to pay for the special election. And additional, the balance will affect the capital project fund. So here's a detail to explain what we're using this sixty thousand dollars from contingency fund line item to the capital project fund. And this is for the uh new radio council equipment. We will pay for the equipment first and asking for reimbursement. And this is for the special election. And before I ask council's vote on the timing when to approve the final budget amendments, I want to give you a summaries of the types of budget supplementals we have submitted so far. First, additional revenues resulting in additional appropriations, just like the scenario we review. We receive additional grant from the Rappahoe County to purchase equipment, so we need to increase appropriations. Second, changes in estimates for new project. We submit to council next year's budget in August. Then after six months, sometimes the estimates for projects change, especially for a capital project fund. The third scenario is transfer funds to and from funds. Uh whenever we re- request the budget supplementals, we ask council to allocate funding from on assigned fund balance in general fund. That's our savings account to fund different projects, just like the special election we reviewed. The next one is allocation budget between departments. These allocation budgets are approved already, but we sometimes allocated funding. For example, we moved the mail service from Parks Rec to administration earlier this year. That allocation transfer between departments is included in budget supplemental one. And sometimes, like one time, we have to allocate funding from water fund to sewer fund. These are all approved. We're just moving uh funds between uh departments. And the the fourth one is timing issue of services. A lot of our contracts across fiscal years, so sometimes they forecasting if there's some changes, we just need to um roll over the allocated budget from the previous fiscal year to the following year. The last one is honest errors and omissions. And all the budget supplemental, I'm going to ask council to vote on the timing across all funds, not just general funds. But I also want to remind council, there are four funds in our city that have, that cannot be, that can be rolled over. That's, they are more like capital uh project funds. For example, the projects in PIF, uh Public Improvement Fund, projects in capital project funds, and also the projects in Conservation Trust Fund and Open Space Fund. These projects, if we do not spend down, the approved budget can be rolled over to the following year. But other funds, we cannot. We have to. But other funds, we cannot. We have to ask for appropriations. So we are pro- pros and cons when to present a year-end supplemental to council. There are two options. We list the pros and cons under each option. First is, I think council member requested, we present all the budget supplementals within the same fiscal year. Uh that will be December. The pros is we, all the authorization prior to spending funds. And we can review all the supplementals within a given fiscal year. What is are the cons? Sometimes estimates may be insufficient, maybe too low. Therefore, additional supplementals are still required for the following fiscal year for previous requests. Or if we do not allow staff to uh ask for a uh budget supplemental in the following fiscal year, that will affect their, like, next year's budget. For example, twenty twenty-three, we do not have enough appropriations and we we cannot um ask for budget supplementals in the first quarter twenty twenty-four, that will affect their twenty twenty-four budget. Then we need to request a twenty twenty-four uh budget sup- supplemental for twenty twenty-four. So if we estimate it's too low. Uh or if we say, to be safe, I want to estimate twenty percent for contingency. We have additional funding. I may choose to spend down additional funding. Why? Because I have the money I can spend down. So you can see the pros and cons under uh option one. The option two, just follow our current practice. Um this year, we submit to council the budget supplemental a little bit late, the first week of June. First, because this meeting was delayed several times. But remember, ARPA funding, the deadline to report ARPA funding to the Department Treasury is April thirtieth. So we have some different deadline other than the fiscal year ending on December thirty-first for our uh uh federal grant. So the current practice, the pro is, we can exact dollar amount based on actual year-end audit adjustments. After auditors review all the spending, we consider um all the invoices, even P car transactions. We depend upon heavily on P car and the P car transaction across fiscal year. So we can do a true-up in the probably first quarter, the following year, so we can get an exact amount. There's no guesses, there's no overestimates or underestimates. But the cons is, we delayed to submit a year-end budget amendment to council as requested last time. Also, approval is more like a formality rather than authorization prior to spending the third supplemental request across fiscal years. So we are asking council to vote tonight. Option one or option two, before we vote, do you have any questions?
Thank you, Director Lowe. Any questions? Go ahead, Member Woodward.
You know, I was thinking about this and I was thinking nineteen eighty-three, eighty-four, I think in the winter, Christmas, actually Christmas Eve, started snowing. During the day, people ended up spending their Christmases in shopping centers because they couldn't get home, they couldn't get out, the city shut down. Nothing obviously was budgeted for something like that. So a supplemental, I would think that the following year supplemental for April or whenever would be better for more desirable. Certainly for finance and for for the budgeting process. Does does finance have a recommendation?
Thank you, council members. I sent an email to the my fellow finance directors. Within twenty-four hours, I received eleven responses. So this topic is very near and dear to all the finance directors. So let me summarize the response I received. Uh for three cities, they submit their final budget amendment the following fiscal year. Uh Castle Pines, Frisco, and Sheridan. And these uh four cities, they submit their budget amendments within the same fiscal year. One is Manitou Springs, um Golden, Telluride, Arvada. S S Park also submit their final budget amendment within fiscal year. But their finance director just realized, oh, I realize our city, we are allowed to do the budget fun- fa- budget supplemental to the following fiscal year. I was not aware. Um so just want to give you the practice, our current pro- process is not outside acceptable practice um employed by um our fellow municipalities. So just want to give you a a objective uh response from other municipalities for your consideration.
Uh go ahead, Member Noonan Camp.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for this presentation and I just want to um thank you for all of the intentionality and thoughtfulness that's been in this presentation. I was just thinking about how much we've asked for a lot of clarity when it comes to budget supplementals and I see so much thoughtfulness in this. And so thank you so much. You're helping us um make wise decisions with taxpayer resources, which is very, very important to me. Um in the current process which we have now, and we just went through this recently, uh the question here around the con that you've listed, approval is a formality rather than authorization prior to spending funds. This was, I think, where we had some heartburn uh in the recent vote, and I want to make sure we're explicit about this. It's not that the city or the staff are spending money that council hasn't already approved, as far as like the project, right? That's already been approved in the previous year. This is just the final accounting that would happen in the next year, correct?
Yes, but the most recent case, one is the transfer um funding between one department to the other. So we did not overspend, but just within transfer between departments. And the full golf is a little bit different, is council approved the capital project the previous year, but timing, we did not spend this down. So but we cannot roll over this to the following year because it's not a capital project type of fund. Uh so I don't know, the delta is thirty-five thousand or twenty-five thousand. So that's two recent examples.
Okay, thank you very much.
Mayor Protem?
This goes back to my issue that I had in the previous supplemental, and I appreciate this question coming forward. Um because it it shows that you are interested in responding to the issues that we discuss on this dais. There's a reason why these things come to council, and it is because our authority is required to do them. And if they come to us when they have already been done, then our authority has been usurped. And that is not acceptable to me. I don't sit on this dais to rubber stamp decisions that are made by staff. I sit on this dais to have an effect on the way public policy operates in the city of Inglewood. And to the extent that our charter or our municipal code requires certain procedures to take place, I would expect that procedure to be obeyed. Um this is the source of my concern, approving a supplemental in April immediately prior to the audit being released. Yes, as we go through the audit, we know where the numbers don't match. So if we fix them before the comprehension comprehensive audit report comes out, then we look like we could have a clean bill of health. Um but in my opinion, those things should be fixed appropriately and approved appropriately during the year when the spending is incurred. Uh to speak to Member Woodward's scenario about snow removal, um there are a couple of things that that I'll say there. Uh first of all, i- it's understandable if we have to remove snow eh eh late in December around the holidays. And in January, uh an authorization comes to us to account for that. Um it's the separation between March of twenty twenty-two and April of twenty twenty-three that I had difficulty with. Um you know, the manager also has a certain emergency purchasing authority, so he could make an emergency purchase and we would be asked to approve it after the purchase has been taken place. Because we hire our city manager to protect us in the event of an emergency and to manage emergencies effectively. And we get grant him the authority to do that. Um so um the bottom line here is, uh I am all in favor of the December or as close to December as possible. Um I don't like being asked to balance the checkbook after the money's already been spent. And I feel like uh the purpose of granting this body the authority to vote on those matters is completely stymied, lost, um violated even um in in conducting it that way.
But um cause we have been, we have not received any proposed adjusting journal entries from auditor. But what if they did, they do propose a adjusting journal entry for twenty twenty-three and and bring to council twenty twenty-four, then we are still be forced to do a budget supplemental for twenty twenty-three spendings. Or in that case, we even cannot carry forward that to twenty twenty-four. How would couns- council handle that um exception?
Yeah, I think there are bound to be some s- there's bound to be some awkwardness, but I would expect something like that to show up in the audit report. Like, this is what we were supposed to be doing, this is what best practice dictated, and this is what we found when we opened the books. Um that's my understanding of what the purpose of an audit is. I'm not an accountant, but um you know, that's what I think of when I think of audit. You know, does what we say we we're going to do match the records that we have and and match what we actually did? Um so that's that's where I'm at. I think I've ranted long enough at this late hour, so thank you.
Uh Member Woodward and then.
Yeah, I, you know, I think one of the really hard parts is that we have to approve a budget in October for the rest of the year. Quarter of the year hasn't happened. And you know, hopefully, it's gonna happen real quick in uh in December, so you know it. But if it doesn't, we're we're in the same position again. So I dealt with a lot of budgets in my life as far as business and stuff for for buildings, for comp- shopping centers, uh things like that. And they're fluid. I mean, the that's how, that's how it happens. It's just like your personal budget. So I don't know, I I I still see the second choice would be my vote if you wanted to vote.
Thank you, Member Woodward. It's actually Member Russell. I skipped over you, but go ahead, Member uh Member Russell and then Member Anderson.
Thank you. Um so I actually have some of the same concerns as the Mayor Protem. And I definitely do not want to approve the budget supplemental within a given year crossing fiscal years to allow for a year-end supplemental true-up. The, I guess, my my one question that I had written here, if we do it by December thirty-first, does it mean that we will always overestimate to make sure that we've proved enough?
That's a very good question. It totally depend upon um each department, the directors, how to do the forecasting, manage the vendor relationship performance and also P car transaction. I cannot answer on their behalf. If I were in their shoe, to be safe, I'll probably inflate. So I don't need to come back to council. Then we just need to address the potential I don't want to say, potential results, uh yeah, as our dis- as we decide.
So my question is, on the budget supplementals we've already done, I mean, when did they start? Did they start before June? The first one, when did we do the first one?
The first one was February twenty-first. We really prefer not. Uh we have a schedule, we have a calendar when to do, we're thinking to do this on a quarterly basis. Uh the second one is will submit to council in May. This is scheduled for July seventeen to today. Then the next one are scheduled for um s- probably sometime in November. So we want to have this schedule, so it's not always the last minute. We want to plan ahead. Some department requires the potential, but I said, we want to see if you have some savings to ob- absorb that. Uh I know some departments are concerned, we don't want to submit a contract for council's approval until we have this done. But that's why we have the contract approval summary, we list very clearly where the funding will come from. If there's a potential budget supplemental, we just say, we may need to use unassigned fund balance. So we'll um document the potential funding sources very clearly. Um so department do not feel we are pushing a contract through without the funding identified. At the same time, we don't want to inflate a lot, do a lot of budget supplemental, then in the end we return like we did it for twenty twenty-two.
So if we vote on these two, one of these two options, does that mean we're gonna continue to do budget supplementals on a quarterly basis? Or no?
We may change this to only probably three, probably two or three, then do a final the fourth quarter. But probably need to cut down the number of budget supplementals.
But and I'm okay, I really, I want um you all to come to us before you spend the money rather than after you spend the money. I I do think we probably do need to do it maybe two or three times. Um because this should be part of our evaluating our budget process.
Yeah, these are the reasons.
Yeah, why we're not closer than than we should have been. I mean, because it seems like um we have extra money in in the unassigned fund balance, so we can just move forward and do it this way.
No, cause when we submit the, this is the question, when we submit a budget to council, do we want to stick to structurally balanced the budget? Or only use unassigned fund balance one time? Or that's just, do you want to have chicken first or eggs? If want to have very tight budgets, we may have more budget supplementals. If we have more flexibility and then we don't, we will not have. It's a philosophy. Um we can do both side, both ways. But I just want to have a clear conversation, uh we went through the the thought process and see what will the best way for council make decision.
Okay, thank you.
Uh Member Anderson?
Um yeah, I guess my vote would be for for the current year, though. I g- I don't know how long, much longer this discussion is going on, but I feel like we're getting more into something that maybe would be like a study session topic than than the particular agenda item that's here. But current year is, um just to make it quick, is kind of my, the way I would lean on this. And I think it's probably time to move on to the actual resolution.
Thank you, Member Anderson. Uh Member Noonan Camp?
I'll just weigh in quickly. I support following year, which is our current process. I think it's serving as well. I do think maybe we could have it be a little bit more explicit, cause then there was some confusion around no one is spending money that council hasn't approved, but there is sometimes accounting that we have to, just because we use fund accounting, we have to move the money and the funds. Um so I support our current process following year.
I I feel obligated to respond to what Member Noonan Camp just said. I was not confused on what was being asked of us. The question of our authority was the issue that I had. Why are we being asked to do something that's already been done or to approve something that's already been done? Um and and that was, that was the issue um that I had and the and the crux of of the problem for me. Uh moving on, um I I do have one question in regards to the currently proposed supplemental. Is now an appropriate time? Uh IT equipment, sixty thousand dollars. Um the staff that we are hiring i- is listed here. Um and we have uh uh what was it, four librarians and eight police officers? So twelve staffers, five thousand dollars apiece for a PC and a telephone?
Uh all the related equipment for new staff.
Which is typically a PC and a telephone.
Correct.
Uh that seems a little high to me. Um it also raises alarm in that, uh having been to our police department, I I know that many of our police officers actually share desks. Um or or they have some portability of of their desks. I maybe these are laptops or something, which would which would change the equation a little bit, but um and then the library, same thing, you know. Uh our librarians have have desks and then there are public areas which already have computers where the librarian sometimes sit. Um so I I'm curious if if we have some information about this sixty thousand dollar cost, it it just seems excessive to me.
I can try to answer part of that. I'm not specific to this request, um but I do want to give Director Lowe and her team credit um for trying to budget for these costs. Um in previous years, we had not done this. So I think about two years ago, um during the budget um, during the budget advisory committees that we do internally, um, in working with the IT department, we realized that we were not, um, we didn't have a good process of trying to budget for these items, um, I think, you know, in the next year, I think we can kind of figure out um, how to do this in in maybe a, a more nuanced way. Um, but we were kind of running into this issue where we were not budgeting for these costs. Um, and so that's why we created a flat five thousand dollar um per employee process.
Thank you, that clarification is helpful.
Yeah, more like a placeholder, cause we do have some remaining balance for our PC replacement, not only just for new staff, for some current. Uh, but at least we have a placeholder, we don't re, we, we will have enough funding for the new employees.
Thank you, Director Lo, yeah, I guess I'll weigh in, and to make this even more difficult, I'm actually s- uh, in favor of keeping it with the current process, so uh, in April. Um, just because I feel that there's things that, well, one, I just wanna just do it once in a sense, but I know that that's not always uh possible. But I ju- I just prefer to leave that flexibility a- at that point, but, so that's three, three. Uh, that's the problem with having six up here, so, um. But I'm not sure if we're gonna give you, well, we're not giving you any clarity, obviously, Director Lo, so, um. But any other questions, any comments, go ahead, member Russell.
So, the um ballot initiative that we passed for the police department, what is, is that, excuse me, is that only to pay for alternative policing? Or was it some of it to pay for the eight full-time employees?
Mayor, I can answer that, all funds collected from the about two million dollar um ballot initiative for alternate policing has been allocated through a budget amendment by this council to alternate policing services and programs.
Thank you.
All right, everyone, uh, are we ready to make a motion on the budget supplemental?
Need the council, yeah, to remove the budget supplemental number three.
And, uh, member Anderson, did you have the motion?
Yeah, I was, I was gonna.
Motion to approve eleven C five.
One question first.
Uh, sorry, go ahead, member.
Sorry, I just, really quickly, uh, because we were making a allocation of a hundred thirty-eight thousand dollars for an election that now has changed from the beginning of this meeting, because we will no longer have an at-large race, I just wanted to ask the clerk, do we anticipate the amount for the election to change with the recent resignation?
I would imagine that the cost would be adjusted to reflect that, yeah.
So should we table this item tonight?
I think that the proposal was an estimate based on the given, um, so yeah, I mean, I, I don't know what the philosophy on that would be, but I
Go ahead, Director Lo, if you wanna weigh in, but.
Oh, no, I was thinking if we allocate the a hundred thirty-eight thousand, this will be uh part of a city manager's, city clerk's office budget. Um, we'll make sure there's no over, yeah.
Not to exceed one thirty-eight, I guess is what you're saying.
Yeah, what if there are savings, we'll, we'll return the unused fund back to the unassigned fund balance?
Okay.
What's, would that work? So we don't need to table this.
Okay. I just wanted to clear down that, thank you, I'm sorry, member Anderson.
Member Anderson, did you have a question or?
No, I was just gonna make a motion.
There's a question still.
Um, and along with that same question, I noticed that on, it says, um, for the hundred and thirty-eight thousand, administration department, city clerk's office, two thousand and twenty-three special election due to citizen-initiated petitions and a potential city referred ballot measure. What is the potential city referred ballot measure?
That's, we did not know the referendum will be cured when we prepare the council, so this is just pure for recall.
Okay, so, but if the, if the, was the referendum included in there?
Nope.
Okay, thank you.
All right, member Anderson, if you're ready.
I move to approve eleven C five.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you, member Noonan Camp, any further comments? See, now can we please vote?
Member Anderson?
Aye.
Member Noonan Camp?
Aye.
Member Russell?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Ward?
Aye.
Member Woodward?
Aye.
Mayor Sierra?
Aye.
Let the record show six eyes.
Thank you, city attorney, late hour, I know that you mentioned that this is an item that we could possibly postpone, eleven C six. Members of council, we got into the late hour, are you fine with postponing this item to a later date?
I think this is a great way to end the night.
Anyone in disagreement? All right, so do we just take it, need to make a motion to, to move to, uh, what, next Monday?
Uh, I meant this, the item eleven C six, sorry, I wasn't clear on that.
You do wanna go forward with it?
Yeah, I'd like to go forward.
Okay, sorry about that.
Let's just resolve it.
Okay. All right, let's, okay, so eleven C six, city attorney Niles? You weren't clear about it, you were not clear about it. Go ahead, uh, city attorney Niles.
Let me get to that slide, there we go. Okay, as you know, um, the city is currently involved in litigation regarding the historic depot. Um, this was a property that in two thousand and thirteen, the city issued request for proposals, and um, we ended up transferring it to Thomas and Patty Parson for thirty thousand dollars in exchange for um some promises to remodel the depot, um, make it a, a community center and a museum um for Inglewood citizens. At the time, it was uh pretty controversial, and it did result in a ballot question designated certain properties within the city as park properties that couldn't be sold um without a ballot question. Uh, the building has been under construction since, and um, we concluded that the construction was proceeding very slowly. So to that end, um, of course, we had some executive sessions, uh, and discussed the status and the city's legal position uh, under attorney-client privilege, we had requested some status updates from the depot. Um, and, and we didn't get information that we deemed was satisfactory, because we had sold the property uh for only thirty thousand dollars, of course, it's a prime location um on Dartmouth, and um, we didn't feel that they had provided significant promises to ensure the citizens of Inglewood got the benefit of the bargain. Uh, once we determined that the depot was unable to um satisfy our demands, um, city council directed us to file a lawsuit, um, so we did so. Uh, we filed a lawsuit on September thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-two, in Arapahoe County District Court. We made quite a few allegations, um, based largely on their response to the city's request for proposal. Um, and we alleged breach of contract in the sales contract, unjust enrichment, and fraudulent inducement, claiming that they made all of these promises to the city in two thousand and thirteen, and it's still not open as a museum, still not a community center, and they couldn't tell us when it would be. Uh, we, in the lawsuit, we made a couple of requests of the court. Um, we asked that the court find that the defendants, which are the Parsons named individually, because they issued the request for proposal, and Inglewood Depot Inc., which is a nonprofit corporation that they formed with an independent board to oversee construction and presumably eventually operate a museum. Uh, so we requested the court specifically state they did not comply with their promises to the city, uh, and order the defendants to take specific action that we were asking them to make, to promise us before we filed suit. Specifically that they have to renovate the property within a reasonable time, transfer the property back to the city, or order them to pay us what they should have paid us at fair market value if they weren't going to follow through with all of these promises. On the litigation process, um, they did ob- obtain an attorney who's been very easy to work with, um, he filed quite a few motions. Um, well, first, before they retain an attorney, the defendants filed two motions to dismiss. Um, and we responded with a, some filings, a motion to strike, motion for leave to file an amended complaint, and a response to motion to dismiss, so in this process, they did obtain an attorney. Um, they challenged our motion to amend the complaint to add some additional claims and to fix what they had alleged um was a facial um omission. And um, after all of these motions and briefing, the court ruled in the city's favor on every single one. And that's when we started settlement discussions, so um, we, I, we do want to thank um their attorney and their board and the Parsons um specifically, because once um we did overcome that initial hurdle of all of those motions, um, then they, they were very open about what they could do, they are a non-private corporation that seeks grants, and so their um funding has been limited, and we do understand that. Um, but we were able to um send drafts back and forth of proposed settlements, and um, we were looking at provisions that um council had discussed with, with me specifically in executive session about what you were unhappy with, wh- what you wanna see this property become as an asset to the citizens. Um, we want a community center, we want um a historic building that's remodeled that um can be used as a museum, and that's what we bargained for. So in the settlement agreement, um, which is in the packet, uh, proposed for your approval, which has been uh approved by the Inglewood Depot Board and the Parsons, um, the defendants agreed to, one of the resolutions we were seeking from the court was that they would uh remodel the building uh in five years, that it will be open to the public in five years. Um, that they will operate a museum that's open to the public at the historic Inglewood Depot. Um, we also clearly define the city's right to reacquire the property, so if they don't follow through, we have a right to reacquire the property in five years. Um, or if they just can't do it and they want to sell it to a third party, then we also have uh what's called a first right of refusal, so the proposed settlement agreement clearly lays out when we can step in and buy it back. Um, and of course, they could sell it back to us at any time, um, that's always a voluntary option. So um protects the city and and our historic property um here in Inglewood. Uh, it also requires that the exterior um be landscaped, that's some um complaints that we have regularly received, it's, it's overgrown, it looks, it's just an eyesore in such a prominent location, and of course, the exterior of the building is in very good shape, it li- it looks really nice, but the, there's no um landscape to speak of and it can be overgrown, so they have agreed, yes, they will do that, they will take care of that, and in exchange, we will dismiss our lawsuit. Um, the final outcome is, uh, uh, Inglewood Depot has really good intentions, um, but they have just been unable to uh attain the funding that they thought they would be able to obtain at the time um they submitted the request for proposal and obtained title to the property. And I don't think they've had um ill will in their attempts to remodel, um, or completely renovate, I think remodel is uh not quite as extensive as as the work that they're doing. Um, and so they, they have tried to, COVID got in the way, further delayed their efforts. Um, but, but I don't think there's any ill will on their part, and and I don't want the public to have that be their takeaway, that I think it was just a much bigger project than they anticipated, um, and and they tried, but now if uh city council approves the settlement agreement, in five years it will be done, or there will be consequences. Um, and we also prefer that they can serve the resources they have on that renovation, instead of continuing to fight in the litigation. Of course, we did it in-house, so it didn't cost the city anything, but um when you have to pay lawyers to um handle litigation, it can get really expensive really fast. Uh, we also set out clear requirements for their construction with um milestones and completion deadlines. And um finally, the outcome that we are really happy with is the citizens of Inglewood will receive that community asset and benefit the city council um bargained for, for them to receive in two thousand and thirteen, two thousand and fourteen in this process to transfer title. And I'll, I'll just say, as the city attorney's office, um, we were really happy with this outcome, um, nobody ever wants to file a lawsuit, uh, it's a pretty extreme measure, and um, but we're all litigators in our office, so we're not afraid of it, but um, you're always better off trying to resolve things amicably, and um they have agreed to one of the resolutions that we thought the court could possibly award us, and so we think this is a good outcome for the city and the citizens.
Thank you so much, city attorney Niles, any questions for members of council? Go ahead, member Woodward.
Yeah, something that, while you were reading it, it just kind of shook me, it says they will complete it in five years, as opposed to within five years, meaning that what, they would be doing something and we would be able to evaluate how they're doing it.
Well, we, we do have that process because they are required to obtain permits, and so there, there will be city oversight through that. They obtain a permit, we inspect, so uh we will have oversight in that respect. Um, if, if they are not making that progress, we will know through that lack of permitting and inspection process.
Yeah, I, I guess I'm just thinking that we probably won't see that any construction happen, or any permits be pulled or anything like that until year four, if we see.
And that is a possibility, um, if so, I think we have to be prepared in year five to uh reacquire it. Um, or at that time, we always have the option, if they are making good progress, renegotiating to extend the time if they need certain construction milestones. Um, an earlier draft provided very specific construction milestones at very specific deadlines, but um, we believe the, the way they receive funding from grants, it could be twenty thousand and they could do a little bit, could be a huge amount, and then they, they do a lot. But um, five years for, for a renovation of this magnitude, we thought was, was very reasonable, and I'm a former construction lawyer. So, uh, I was looking at construction schedules and milestones, and and I just don't think that was feasible based on how they anticipate their funding coming in.
Okay, thank you.
Member Russell?
Thank you. So if there is any signs like on the outside of the building that are indications of there's problems, would that give the city recourse? Um, are there requirements for them to keep up the outside of the building and the landscaping even before the five years?
Uh, yes, so um, first of all, they're required to comply with our nuisance codes and things like that, there have been issues in the past, but they resolved all of those um very quickly upon our request. So um, if, if we um do see a violation of anything but the construction, we provide them notice and and they will correct it within a set period of time. Um, but it also falls under our nuisance code too, if there's trash and debris, we could also follow that process.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions? See, now can I get a motion to approve eleven C six?
I move to approve eleven C six.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem, could I get a second?
Second.
Thank you, member Noonan Camp, any further comments? Go ahead, Mayor Pro Tem.
I just wanna thank you and your team for your work on this, uh, I'm very happy to see this coming to resolution and to see a date certain arriving for either completion or reacquisition of the property, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem, and with that, can we please vote?
Member Anderson?
Aye.
Member Noonan Camp?
Aye.
Member Russell?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Ward?
Aye.
Member Woodward?
Aye.
Mayor Sierra?
Aye.
Let the record show six eyes.
Perfect, thank you so much, city, uh, city clerk, and we are now on to mayor's choice, I'll keep it brief. Uh, cocktails with council, I will be at that event tomorrow, I'll try to be there between the uh five and seven. Uh, between five and seven as, as currently on the calendar, so it is at Western Sky, so I hope to see some of you there. Uh, I won't be in attendance next week, uh, on Monday, and then we have a fifth Monday, so I'll see you all again on the seventh. Um, but Mayor Pro Tem, thank you very much for picking up in my stand while I'm on vacation, so appreciate it. Anyone else, um, now moving on to council members' choice? Go ahead, Mayor Pro Tem.
Member Woodward and I are supposed to give council reports on CML, but owed to the late night, I think I will defer mine until the next session.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem, anyone else? Go ahead, member Russell.
Um, I, I have a couple of things, and I don't know if city council can weigh in on planning and zoning, limiting public comment to two minutes. Um, I, I mean, can we make recommendations, um, to them? Or do they have the authority to do that? I mean, I, I think what's annoying the public is they've spent three years on this project, and now they're trying to limit the public from commenting.
Go ahead, city attorney.
So, um, I, I would suggest that we reach out to P and Z. So I, I would suggest that we reach out to PNC and, and request that they reconsider that policy. That said, council does have legislative authority where we could legislatively mandate it. But I, I think I would recommend we start with just, just discussion with them, with, for those very reasons. I think they would be receptive.
Okay, I appreciate that and.
Thank you, Mayor, I think.
Okay.
Just on this topic, I think. Something is, okay, go ahead.
Well, I, I don't, just to be clear, I, I watched, I did watch the PNC meeting and they did take, they had, I think, an hour and a half or more of public comment for that public hearing and then continued the public hearing so that they could get some more information. And I, my understanding was that they, they took full, I think they had three or maybe three minutes on that first, first time around and they could have just closed the public hearing at that point. So I feel like the, my understanding of it is they were just, this is a one-time event where they decided to limit it to two minutes so that they didn't push the night so late so that they could actually get into discussion and, and discuss the actual legislation in front of them. So I, I think it's a reasonable decision and I, I trust them to, you know, if they want to add, you know, add on another minute or whatever, but I don't, I don't think it's something I would want to try to direct them on.
Go ahead, Member Russell.
Okay, and then there was an, another question about doing live video on quasi-judicial public hearings. I know that planning and zoning normally, I know they're in council chambers. Is there a reason we don't? I think we only do audio recordings. Is that correct?
Thank you for the question, Member Russell. We do video recording as well, but the issue is that basically their setup is the same setup as City Council when they meet here. And when they were asked to come back in person, then they, we lost the ability to do the, you know, call-in Zoom calls like we had been doing and we would need to get Big Bite as well as our two IT staff members here. And that isn't in the budget at this time. I have asked Community Development and IT to work on a solution that will be a workaround. Hopefully, we can get something and, and we're working hard to do that so that people can call into those meetings.
Well, and I think it's, um, wasn't really only the call-ins. I mean, people, there were people at home that wanted to watch it and, I mean, it was, it was delayed. But it's posted now. It was a video, correct?
Correct, and it was actually posted the next morning.
Okay. And is that, before COVID, did we do it just like a council meeting or no?
Before COVID, there was no hybrid or call-in option or live, live streaming. We've never had live streaming of PNC meetings just because of the, the staffing and technical requirements for that to occur.
Right, and I think that one thing that we do probably need to do on a big thing like Code Next, I'm not saying we would need to require it all the time, but I think it might be a wise idea to do it there. And then I actually have something that maybe we should talk about later and that is changes to room rental policy that occurred. I think that is something that we maybe need to have a study session on. And, I mean, it's concerning to me that I, I did a council request for the contract with Inglewood Arts and the council approval process, but in the meantime, the policy was changed on ru, uh, renting the rooms. And I don't know if those are tied together, City Manager, because Inglewood Arts was giving, was given the authority, excuse me, was given the authority to rent rooms, is that correct? Or were the policy changes just for city rooms?
Yeah, so, uh, Member Russell, the policy that's now posted on the city room reservation website, that was adopted about a little over a year ago in June of twenty twenty-two. That's specific to city rooms. I have to go back and look at the specifics of the Inglewood Arts contract, but I believe that the ability for Inglewood Arts to be able to let out Hamden Hall is someone that's been in their contract for a while, for several years.
Okay. Thank you for that right now. And then just the one other thing that I asked for the executive session for legal advice on the intent to sue, is that something that is not imminent? I mean, we wouldn't necessarily have to do it tonight, but I do believe that we need to do it.
I wouldn't recommend we do it yet until we know more information. Because the norm, I would expect it to contain additional information if it's a notice of claim under CGIA and it's not titled as that. So it appears to me this may be a heads up that they're going to file a judicial appeal of the referendum outcome. But I'm not exactly sure. If it's a judicial appeal, it would likely be defended by the other side. But, so I don't know. I need to get more information. But then I would suggest I schedule an executive session once I have that and we, when we need direction from City Council and I can give you a full legal analysis about what this means and what the allegations are.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thanks so much, Member Russell. Anything else? City Manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor. And to just complete the question from Member Russell, on February seventh, I learned that Inglewood Arts was allowing some users to utilize rooms in the former MOA space, which they had had kind of free rein on when MOA was there. MOA frequently allowed Inglewood Arts to use their space. And I asked them to please discontinue that until we had a contract. So we do have many indications that there were a few users, including Sacred Grace, that were allowed to use rooms in that space, but those were not authorizations made by us. And it's my understanding that they did discontinue that after my February seventh and all the way till February ninth conversations with Mr. Bortolucci. I'm gonna forego my three reports for you all tonight and focus on what I think is the most important one. And that is the fact that on Friday, we released bid documents and a bid package for the South Inglewood Flood Reduction Project. And so this is the first of a twenty-six million dollar spend of funds to really address flooding in the south part of the city. As you know, we've only spent about a tenth of that so far with the improvements that we've made on inlets and pipes in the center, central part of the city. And so now we really turn our attention on getting the water to the, to the Windermere area where a new regional detention pond will be. So it'll be a number of improvements made. Those improvements will be, excuse me, those bid packages will be due back to the city on August tenth. And we are hopeful for a good number of contractors will be willing to construct really the most significant stormwater improvements this city has seen in more than thirty years. And I'll be glad to answer any questions about that. And thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Don't see any questions. City Manager Lewis? Go ahead.
I do have one. The company that was going to take away the improvements that were on there, the metal buildings and stuff, when are they doing that?
I was under the impression that they were already clearing that land for the pond, but we can get that answer for you.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Anything else, City Manager Lewis?
Thank you, no.
See, now, all right, meeting is now adjourned. I'll see you all in a few weeks. Have a good evening. I'll see you tomorrow. All right, bye.